Good evening, everyone, and welcome online and those who are present in the boardroom to Volusia County School Board meeting. This is Tuesday, July 27th. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce to you everyone at the dais. To my far left is Mr. Carl Persis, school board member representing District Four. To his right is Mr. Ruben Cologne, representing District Five. To his right is Mr. Ted Doran, he's our school board attorney. To my far, to my far right is our school board agency clerk extraordinaire, Ms. Erin Leibin. To her left is Mrs. Anita Burnett, representing District Two. To her left is Ms. Jamie Haynes, our vice chair, representing District One. To her left is our superintendent, Dr. Scott Fritz. And I'm Linda Cuthbert, I'm your chair, and I represent District Three. We are meeting today at 5:30. We have not met for almost a month. It's been a long, very nice break away from the business of the school district, so tonight we have an awful lot to do. This is the meeting of the school board. We meet in the sunshine, we invite the public in. We meet, but there are a lot of controversial issues. We respect one another's professional opinion and we agree to disagree. Tonight, because it could be a very late night, during public participation, which is at 6:30 times certain, we're going to limit our public participation to 15 minutes, which is what normally we, that is on the books, that's our policy. So we have, that's time for five speakers, three minutes each. If you belong to a group, you might want to select a spokesperson for your group, or we will choose the first five people, first come, first served. The mask policy is not on our agenda tonight. We already voted on that last month. So that is not part of really what can be addressed to the board, because it's not on our agenda. We are tasked, we tasked the superintendent in our policy 503, in our optional mask policy that we adopted last month, to come before us if a change in the positivity rate or the situation of COVID-19 changed. And it has. So that is the purpose of Dr. Fritz's presentation tonight, and he has invited Mrs. Patricia Boswell to speak on behalf of what is happening concerning our schools and the county before we start school in a mere three weeks. So that is his duty towards the policy that we asked of him and we passed last month. So we will go ahead and continue our board meeting. We will all work together. Most of us at the dais have been educators for a long time. We will conduct the board just like it would be in a classroom. We expect respectful behavior from our audience. There will be no outbursts, there will be no clapping. You will be able to participate quite a few different times with participation, public participation. So items for approval on this agenda tonight, 1.03, 5.02, 20.01 through 20.05. Public participation times on the consent agenda. One is at 6 o'clock, public hearing on the tentative Volusia County Schools operating budget. If it's all right with the board, I would like to move that until after the presentation on the budget. That way, the public can hear what's being presented to the public first before there's public comment. So the public comment is much more knowledgeable. If that's okay, is that all right with the board?
Yes.
We also have it for 6:30, of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. Time will be provided for public comment on any action board item that we have. Before we call the vote, the public will be invited to speak to that item. Time will also be provided at the end of the meeting for public comment for items of general interest pertaining to public education for Volusia County Schools as well. 1.02, district vision statement and board member comments. Would any board member like to begin? Mr. Cologne?
So, board, I want to share with you, we have a reason to celebrate. Ms. Farrah Johnson, who is the FFA, or let me take that back, she is the FFA teacher at Deltona High, but she teaches in the Academy of Food and Agriculture, was awarded the Teacher of the Year for Florida's Career in Technical Education for the whole entire state. So of all the CTE teachers, she was selected as the Teacher of the Year. So Ms. Farrah Johnson, thank you. Thank you for all you do for our students, and tonight we recognize you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and great, great, that's so awesome to have a teacher from our school district win an award like that. And I know Ms. Haynes is going to talk about one probably in a minute, but I wanted to just say that yesterday, Monday, we, the district welcomed back all the assistant principals, principals to the school district. Really nice training session, I think, that went on there at the Plaza Hotel, so I wanted to thank Dr. Fritz for that and for all of your staff that helped put that on. As a former principal, no, that's a, that's a real adrenaline rush when you come back af- after the summer, and you meet your assistant principals again, and you sit around a table, and you start just brainstorming about all the great things that you're going to do for your students and staff, and it's just a super time. So, welcome back, assistant principals and principals, yay, it's good.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Jamie Haynes?
I want to piggyback off of what Mr. Persis said and also thank, like, all of the sponsors of that event yesterday. You know, all of the community members and organizations that sponsored it, that was so wonderful that they stepped up to do that, because it is a nice thing to be able to have all of our leaders come back and be able to spend some time together, especially after the year we've had. But last Thursday night, Mr. Cologne, Mr. Persis, Dr. Fritz, and I had the opportunity to go down to Orlando to the Rosen Shingle Creek Resort and just help celebrate Mr. G. I mean, so he made the top five finalist for Teacher of the Year for the state, and it was, the excitement in that room last Thursday night was just unbelievable. All of the people that came, you know, because they had all the Teachers of the Year there, and they introduced every one of them from each of the counties, and, you know, some of them, they shared some stories about, they also handed out some additional awards and honors, but it was really, it just, it just made you walk away and say, you know, this is why we're here, because there are such dedicated people that make a difference every day in the lives of children. And I know that, you know, in our heart, we'd love to have seen Mr. G. be the winner, but at the same time, I know that he was struggling with the thought of taking a year off and not being with his students, because he loves teaching. And so I think, you know, I think it worked out the way it was supposed to be. He got honored and a nice big check to go, you know, with everything, and he's now part of a group where he's going to continue to grow and develop. And he's back, and he'll be back for the first day of school for his students, and it was, there's nothing better, and it was a great evening, and so...
First class.
It was, it was first class, and, and I thank them for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. Burnett?
Well, hello, everybody. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that, but I did watch some of the videos, and it was very nice. Ms. Cuthbert and I, we all kind of divided and conquered, and we were able to attend something with the, with the Volusia League of Cities, where I think it was nice that we were all coming together as a community to try to help each other and work through problems and problem solving, and try to just mend fences or build a relationship. But it, what a great opportunity to even have a teacher from the Volusia County area in the top five for the state, that's just fantastic, so, thank you, and congratulations to him.
Yes, it was a toss-up for what, so we were all busy last Thursday night, and it was wonderful to be a part of the League of Cities. And tomorrow, I think most of us will be at Pine Ridge High School, first thing in the morning, for ribbon cutting for the Edge Vac Academy, so we're, I'm looking forward to that. And then next week begins our new teachers returning for training, so a lot of us will be going to breakfasts and lunch and welcoming our new teachers. And then our returning teachers, veterans, will be coming, and also the new ones will be joining them on August the 10th, and that's when our schools completely reopen, at least to faculties, on Tuesday the 10th, two weeks from today, so they have two weeks left of vacation. And then school will begin that following Monday on August the 16th, and those buses will be running one more time. And also, I'd like to welcome special guests tonight. I'm sorry, I'm all choked up, I was surprised. I have three of my four grandchildren here tonight. Stan? And then, you can stand, it's right, we have three from the class of 2020 and one from the class of 21, and then the real tall one in the middle is Caitlin's very bestest friend, and they're all going to four different universities in Florida, and this will probably, the days are waning that we're all together again, so thank you Caitlin for coming, and Nikolai, thank you for ushering them all getting here, Damian, it was wonderful, he's off to Florida State. Aiden, thank you for coming, they're all off work today. So Aiden is going off to Florida Gulf Coast, Nikolai will go to UF, and Caitlin's going to UCF. So we have quite an array of colors in the front, so thank you for, it's nice to have Kudas in the audience. It's a great day to be a Kuda. All right, and thank you so much, I appreciate you guys coming. 1.03, approval of the minutes. This is the minutes of June 22nd, 21st, it's our workshop and work session, as well as our regular session from June 22nd. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Carl Persis.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Jamie Haynes. Any comments or questions about the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. The minutes have carried, thank you. We've, I've already announced one agenda change, so is there a movement, is there a motion to approve?
There's one more agenda item.
Is there one more?
Yes, there's a removal of 1302, that's the ERP software implementation contract that we'll be bringing back later in the month of August.
1302?
1302.
And that's for maybe August, our August 10th meeting?
We'll bring that towards the second board meeting in August.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, the agenda's been changed, in which we will have 6 o'clock public hearing right after the presentation on the budget, and the agenda's also been amended to remove 13.02. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, it's been, motion has been made by Mr. Cologne to approve the amended agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Burnett. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is carried, thank you. 3.01, recognition of Community Information Department, Dr. Fritz.
Chair Cuthbert, I'd like to ask Kelly Schultz and any of her communication team that's available to come forward. Folks, I'd like to share with you that just good things are happening in Volusia County Schools. You know, earlier last month, we were honored as the number one Cambridge District for the nation for our performance with our students, and today I am very, very happy to share with you three awards that our communication team won. And you know, part of this work that we do with our communication is under Goal Five, and so I'll share with you that we are, we are part of the NSPRA Publication and Digital Media Excellence Conference, and part of that, there are 2,400 school districts that participate in that. And there were entries for three different awards, and I will share with you, there were over 800 entries. And today, we are going to honor this communication team with some first place, did you hear me, first place awards out of 800. So very, very excited. The first award is an Award of Excellence for African-American History Video. And the second award is an Award for Excellence for the VCS website redesign, and I know that you all and I have had many conversations about what that should look like. And then, the third one is an Award of Merit for Special Purpose Publication with our own strategic plan. And I got to tell you how proud I am of this team. We all know the work that has been done over this last year, and the challenges that we've had, and the social media footprint that we've had, so I turn it over to Kelly to make some comments for her team. Kelly?
All right, it's great being up here. Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Fritz, thank you so much. This is such an honor to be recognized by the board, and my team works so hard, they work together, only about half of them are here right now. It was a whole team effort, and I've said this before, we might be a small team, but we're mighty, and I'm so happy to, to be able to accept awards from the, this national organization. There's, there's, as Dr. Fritz said, thousands of school districts from across the country, and it's very competitive, so it was really an honor to be able to get the letters in the mail, and we were hooting and hollering and jumping up and down, and we were so excited. So they played a role in all three awards. In addition to our Community Information Team, we also had help from other departments, including a student named Xavier from Mainland High School. He's going to be a senior this year, he was in the video. And school board chairman, Ms. Cuthbert, who is a former English teacher, if many of you don't know that, we had her proofread the booklet, the VCS Strategic Plan booklet, and thank goodness she did, because I think that brought us home a win as well. And, yeah, and also, we have, I think he's in the audience, Mr. Nick Prince, who was in our video, which hopefully we'll see here soon. The publications in the video can be found on our district website, which I plug every time I get a chance, vcedu.org. And Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, we'd like to share the African-American history video that won the award right now, if we can.
Please show it, yes.
Okay, all right, hit it.
Cue that, cue that video.
At Volusia County Schools, we're observing African-American History Month at every grade level. We're celebrating the many important contributions African-Americans have made to the fabric of our great nation. We have about 10,000 African-American students in Volusia County Schools, which is 16% of our enrollment. In a resolution proclaiming February as African-American History Month, the school board noted how our quality of life is enhanced by the richness and beauty of African-American history.
This special month also gives us an opportunity to showcase Volusia County's year-round commitment to multicultural education. Diversity is infused into our curriculum, and we provide resources and multicultural trainings to all new teachers in schools and at special events such as our recent Principal's Institute. We're working diligently to address factors that create gaps impacting minority students.
For the first time ever, seniors are able to take the SAT college exam free of charge during school. Our high schools are enrolling students in the most rigorous academic programs that's right for each student.
We're using a program called Restorative Practices and Restorative Circles to build community in our classrooms. Our PAST program, which stands for Positive Alternatives to School Suspensions, uses curriculum to help students restore relationships and move past problems in a positive way. These efforts are embedded in our new strategic plan to make sure that all our students reach their full potential. Already, we're seeing success. Enrollment of minority students in our advanced high school program is growing, and our graduation rate for African-American students has increased by nearly 10 percentage points in the past three years.
And we collaborate with community partners for all sorts of projects. Some of these projects include VCAN's 32114 Prosperity Initiative and the United Negro College Fund Drive. Avid students attend a financial aid scholarship forum each spring through UNCF and NASCAR. This spring, we're partnering with local leaders to develop a history and civics lesson related to Bethune-Cookman University founder Mary McLeod Bethune, and the statue of Mrs. Bethune will be added to the National Statuary Hall in the US Capitol Building in Washington, DC.
All of these efforts make our celebration of African-American History Month even more special. The importance of the commemoration is reflected in the special activities and academic lessons in our schools for this month.
Give me that freedom, give me that freedom.
Everything from performances and trivia contests to art projects. We've created displays and invited speakers to share with students virtually.
The month has been packed with meaningful educational activities. We're posting pictures on the social media pages, and we invite you to take a journey through the African-American History Month with us. There's so much to celebrate.
Together, we're stronger.
And he's very modest, but Chad Goodman in the corner over there is the one who actually shot and edited this video. He's running the audio tonight. So thank you very much, it's, it's an honor to be here and to be recognized.
Thank you.
Well, we definitely want to give some awards out.
Okay. Board members will not be responding at this time. Are there any cards, Ms. Schultz, for the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. 5.01, are there any board members, do you have any items to be removed from the consent Hearing none, 5.02, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion has been made by Mr. Persis to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burnett has seconded the motion. Any more concerns, questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The, the board has approved the consent agenda. Okay, 6.01, we don't need that one, because we have already received it. 16.01, superintendent's announcements and comments.
Board members, you'll remember last year that we started a summer graduation, one on the east and one on the west, for our students that were going. The West Side Schools will graduate on Thursday, July 29th of this week at 12:30, and the East Side Schools will, and that will be at University High School, and then the East Side Schools will also graduate that day at 4 o'clock at Atlantic High School. The first day of school for teachers is Tuesday, August 10th. The next school board meeting and workshops will be on August 10th as well. The workshop will be at 10 o'clock in the morning here in this complex, and the board meeting will be at 3:30 also in this complex. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. West to come forward, or Chief of Human Resources, to share a brief update on vacancies. Mr. West?
Thank you, Dr. Fritz. Good evening, board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you just a brief, quick talking under, about Goal Two. I wanted to give you a little more specific and targeted information, and it's going to be very similar to the information that, that we actually collected last Thursday based on the last day for our transfers for our teachers. So, just a couple of things, this, this information is based on classroom vacancies, because that's what we're targeting right now. We want to make sure that there's a certified teacher in front of every student on that very first day of school, so it's not necessarily going to include our non-classroom allocations such as class counselors, coaches, or intervention teachers. We still are actively hiring for those positions as well, though, but what we're really looking at in this particular set of data is the classroom vacancies. And just want to remind you, this data is good as of last Thursday, 3:00 PM, July 22nd, so that's changing every day, every minute. And so we're closely monitoring our vacancies. We've actually identified some schools that are, have a few more vacancies than others, and we've actually met with those principals and the administrators there to see what the needs are, to see what we can do to assist those as we're getting very close to that time. But I think as Ms. Mahaney even mentioned earlier today, those numbers have changed just since last week. We went from over 188 to over 200 that we've hired from the job fair as of today. So I'm going to give you the, the update, and this slide is just a sample for District One specifically, but I'm going to go through all the districts just briefly to share with you the total number of vacancies shown here. As of the 22nd, it was 103. Actually, I just got the data before I came in here, and now we're down to 94. So we've, we've been working and processing that and getting those vacancies filled. And you're going to notice that if we look at it district-wide, and of course, this is not going to change across each slide that we look at, that averages out to 1.4 vacancy per school. So that just kind of gives you the context of, really, when we're looking at the number of vacancies that we have school district-wide, which it sounds like 94 is a lot, and it is, obviously, we're, we're working on that, but when you really break it down, that average number of per school is 1.4 vacancy per school. And then we have a number of schools over on the left-hand side that actually have no vacancies at all, and we actually have about 20 district-wide. And we actually have about 20 district-wide that have no vacancies at all. So, that's kudos to those principals and administrators who have been working there. And we know, teachers, when they come back from vacation or when they have things that happen over the summer that are unforeseen, they have to take leaves, they have to resign, or possibly even consider retirement for circumstances that occur. So, we recognize those things are changing constantly. So, that's where we are right now. In District 1, you see we have 29 total vacancies. And I'm just going to flip through these kind of quickly. District 2, as a comparison, we have approximately 20, well, we have 20 classroom vacancies there for an average number of 1.5 per school. And by the way, over on the right, you see the total percentage or percentage of total vacancies across the district. And then compared to District 3 there with 12 vacancies, they only have 11% of the total vacancies in the district. And District 4 has 21 vacancies with representing 20%. And then we also have in District 5 there, and I think it might have been left out of your, on the paper there, but District 5 has 19 vacancies. At the average number is only 1.2 vacancies per school. So, we're really excited about that information and just kind of wanted to give you a brief update. Remember, the next two weeks is when we do our big push. That's when we really are looking, we've stopped the internal movement, which means we're just moving vacancies around, and now we're really focusing on getting folks from outside to fill those vacancies. So, we're working on that. I will tell you, obviously, I mean, I think most of us know our highest area of vacancies is ESE. And so, we will continue to, you know, monitor that and do everything we can to get those vacancies filled. So, just wanted to give you a brief update, and thank you very much for the time. I don't know if you have any questions, but I know we asked a lot.
Any questions from the board for Mr. West?
No, I told you earlier today, I love it.
Thank you.
I loved my chart because it broke it down by school.
There you go. Yes, yes, ma'am.
This is new, reporting it by district, which is lovely. And also, when you put down the percentage per school, per school, it's, or per district, like mine is 1.0, it's, it makes it less drastic, so.
Thank you.
But next time, when you come back, you'll be letting us know the categories, how many science teachers, math teachers.
And we'll, because it'll be the first day back for teachers, this is our next board meeting. So, I'll have actual data of how many showed up the first day of pre-planning. So, yes, ma'am, we will do that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roy.
Dr. Fritz?
I'd like to ask Ms. Boswell, Administrator for the Florida Department of Health, to come forward to provide the board with an update. Good evening, Ms. Boswell. Thank you for being here today. Yes, ma'am, wherever you'd like. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Boswell. Thank you for coming tonight and just speaking to the microphone so people at home can hear you as well.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Fritz, Patricia Boswell, the Administrator for the Volusia County Health Department.
Can you hear her? Can she be heard online? Okay. Doing just fine, thank you.
So, as we all know, students benefit from in-person learning and safely returning, and remaining in school is our priority. As this new school year begins, there needs to be a continued focus on keeping students safe since not all students will be eligible to be vaccinated before school starts. Variants have emerged that are increasing the risk of transmission and result in worsening illness to our younger people. At this point in a pandemic, given what we know about the low rates of in-school transmission when proper prevention measures are used, together with the availability of effective vaccines for those 12 years of age and up, it is vitally important for us all to take all the necessary measures to limit the community spread to ensure schools can be safe for all of our students, faculty, and teachers. Our interventions can greatly reduce the risk. All eligible individuals should receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy we have to end COVID-19 pandemic. The other prevention strategies for safe in-person learning recommended by CDC include universal indoor masking for all teachers, students, staff, and visitors to the school regardless of vaccination status. CDC also recommends maintaining at least a three-foot distance between students in the classroom. Hand washing, we know that hand washing, staying at home, getting tested, and contact tracing are also important layers of prevention to keep our schools safe. Again, we're emphasizing the implementation of layered prevention strategies, using multiple prevention strategies together consistently to protect those students and teachers that are not, and our staff not vaccinated, and as well as some members of their household. So, where are we in Volusia County? We've had 51,812 reported cases of COVID since the beginning of this pandemic. 907 individuals have died, including four young people in their early twenties. There have been 3,095 cases in children between the ages of five and 14.
How many again between five and 14?
3,095.
Thank you.
We are seeing increased infection among our youngest. 820 school-age cases have been reported to us so far in the month of July. So, let's go back. We've had 3,095 total since the beginning. Just in the month of July, we're not done with the month, we've had 820. Total cases from the beginning, which was March of 2020, to August 9th of 2020, so last year when we were talking, we had 544 reported cases in children under the age of 18. The state of Florida recently experienced a 61% increase in cases, jumping from 45,585 cases two weeks ago to 73,199 cases in the last seven days. In Volusia County, cases have increased 75% during the same period, from 1,705 cases to 2,976 cases. So, last week, almost 3,000 cases were reported to us. Our current seven-day average is 425, and the 14-day average of cases is 334. Our current seven-day positivity rate is 22.75%. And our 14-day average positivity rate is 20.54%. 96.5% of cases reported this month are within our unvaccinated population. The remaining 3.5 cases meet the criteria of a breakthrough case. This month, vaccinated residents are nearly 20 times less likely to become infected with COVID than the unvaccinated residents. So, to put that in an attack rate, unvaccinated attack rate is 81 per 100,000 population. Vaccinated attack rate is 1,662 per 100,000 population.
Okay, go back and state your percentage again on that. You said this month vaccinated residents are, what was your percentage?
96.5% of the cases with the unvaccinated. The vaccinated was 3.5%.
3.5%?
We are seeing an increase in infections among younger residents. The average age of an unvaccinated case reported this month is 39 years of age. The vaccinated case average is 63 years old. Presently, 54% of Volusia County's eligible population is vaccinated. That means they've received at least one dose. 89% of our residents that are 65 and older are vaccinated. Only 15% of children aged 12 to 4 are vaccinated, and 24% of our 15 to 19-year-olds are vaccinated. Our most recent report indicated-
Ms. Boswell, could you say that one more time? You said 15% of what age?
12, 12 to 14-year-olds.
12 to 14.
And what did you say about the younger group?
15 to 19-year-olds, or 24% of them are vaccinated.
Do you, do you have, is this typed out or is this handwritten, what you're reading?
Typed.
Hmm?
Typed.
Is there any way we can have a copy of it? Because each time that you come, Ms. Boswell, you read this data and you read it very quickly, and we're caught having to try to capture it and write it down so that we can have a discussion about it.
You'll receive, I'll send Dr. Fritz a summary tomorrow, if that's acceptable. Okay. Our most recent report indicated that 3,323 individuals residing in Volusia were vaccinated during the week of July 16 to 22nd, to the 22nd. So, in the last week that we had a report of the number of people vacci, you know, getting a vaccine, 3200, 3300.
That's Volusia County?
In Volusia County. We are currently investigating 58 active outbreaks, 30 of which are in our long-term care facilities, 6 are in our summer camps. There's other outbreaks, of course, happening in businesses, church groups, and other settings. I'm particularly concerned about our long-term care residents at this point with the number of outbreaks that we're seeing and the fact that immunity wanes as you age. So, they are, continue to be our most vulnerable. So, I want to end by just saying, the presence of these variants and the large number of unvaccinated residents, the substantial community transmission, those are the factors that's contributing to it. So, when you think about substantial community transmission, the definition is 100 per 100,000. We're at 545 per 100,000.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Cologne?
So, is it the position of the Florida Department of Health as a body that we follow the CDC recommendations? Or is that something that locally, your department feels is? Because as we know, there's a lot of pressure from the government right now as it relates to this topic. And so, is this the conversation that's being had across the state? That's going to be applied basically are the same recommendation to most of the districts who are in a similar situation? Or is this a Volusia County summary that you feel is appropriate?
This is a Volusia County summary.
So, the Florida-
But I will say that our Surge in General has said that we should be following CDC recommendations and the American Academy of Pediatrics, and their recommendation is universal masking in schools.
So, since this surge, has there been any direction from the, because this surge came, you know, when we spoke about masks the last time, we were at 3.0%, which is when we made that decision. However, has there been a position or any statement, and I realize we're only 10 days into this last surge, has there been any position from the Florida Department of Health formally to make these recommendations?
Other than the Surge in General saying on a call this week to follow the CDC guidance and the American Academy of Pediatrics.
Is that in writing anywhere that we're aware of?
It was on a call.
Great, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. When you, when you talk about the cases, when they were testing, is it the point-of-care testing or is it the three-day testing?
Antigen and PCR tests are both reported to the Department of Health.
Was there a recent study that stated that the PCR testing was giving false positives?
I didn't bring any of the rates in terms of the, you know,
Okay.
False positive rates for that. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that with me.
That's all right. And how do they test for the variant?
It's geo, geo-sequencing testing that's being done at labs throughout the nation, and CDC is leading.
So, most of the positives right now are the variant, or are they mixed?
So, up to probably a week ago, it was the UK variant that was predominant variant. That was really what we were seeing in the cases, and that's now changing, where the Delta variant is not quite the predominant, but there, it appears that that's a real risk for us because it's more transmission, higher transmiss.
How many hospitalizations for pediatrics? And their age group, please.
Okay. I think this month, and I want to make sure I get it right. All right, so hospitalizations. For the year of 2021, we've had, let's see, 25.
And what age group was that?
That's 19 and under.
19 and under.
And did you want it for the year or for the month of July?
If you have it for the month of July, that would be great as well.
Okay, so the breakdown for the month of July, where we had six hospitalizations, we had two under the age of one. We had one in the ages of five to nine. We've had two in the ages of 12 to 14. We have one in the ages of 15 to 19, which gets you to the six. Now, there's something about hospitalizations you need to understand. That is just what we're aware of. Okay, so we may not have a complete picture of hospitalizations, and we certainly don't have a complete picture when it comes to recent hospitalizations. So, as of, you know, today, what's been reported to us are those six hospitalizations. I will caution that that's probably a low number.
Thank you.
And one thing to know about the numbers, like, we had yesterday 536 new cases reported to us. The impact on the hospitals is two weeks out.
I'm sorry, I did have one more question, too. I apologize. You mentioned that you had six cases in summer camps when you did the-
Six outbreaks.
Six, okay, six outbreaks.
Six outbreaks and six, there were six summer camps that experienced outbreaks.
How many, how many of the kids had, became positive, were positive in those six outbreaks?
I didn't bring that. I just brought the outbreak information.
So, do you know by the tracing, they were all related to the summer camp? Or did they come, did they get it from home, or how did we trace those?
So, basically, a case is reported, and when the case investigation happens, we find out that kind of information, what kinds of activities and places that particular case has been engaged in during their infectious period, and it's linked back to the fact that they were in a, working in a long-term care facility at the time. They're working in a summer camp, they're working in a daycare. And then we begin to see reports coming from other cases that are also in that same facility during that period of time. So, when we have two cases or more in a facility, a congregate facility of that nature, it's considered an outbreak. We see a lot of that in the jail. Usually, the jails are listed on the outbreak list on a pretty regular basis.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
Good evening, Ms. Boswell.
Good evening.
So, I want to piggyback off of part of what Mrs. Burnett just said and what you responded to her. So, you said we have currently six outbreaks across the entire Volusia County that have taken place in summer camps. Correct?
Today.
Today?
Today.
Okay. You said an outbreak is, it's considered an outbreak as long as it's two people?
In a congregate- In a congregant setting.
Okay, so it could be two people out of a total of five people. It could be two people out of three hundred students that are there, correct? So, so it's, it's an outbreak if there's two, regardless of how many people.
Two or more.
Two or more. All right. So when you were here in March, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when asked about the number of individuals, whether they were adults in the school setting, you know, staff or students, if I remember correctly, you said, under contact tracing, you could only trace back the possibility that thirty-four individuals may have come into contact with it in the school setting. And of those thirty-four, only four were possibly traced back to sports, correct?
Possibly, but-
Okay. And when I asked you about what was the criteria at that time that we should have been following for sports, you read me off a list that said students should have been masked while playing sports and all of that. And we talked about the fact that none of our students were masked for sports. They played football, they played basketball, they played baseball, they did wrestling, they did all of that. Nobody was masked, and we could maybe, for the entire district, for the, for the whole last school year, all the way from August to March, only possibly trace back four students, poss, or no, four individuals. So it could have been a coach, could have come into contact with it at school playing sports. Here's where I'm at tonight. I, I heard you make a comment about the virus is waning in older ages. So let's, let's talk about this virus.
The effectiveness of the vaccine, I'm sorry.
Sorry, effect, effectiveness of the vaccine. So let's talk about COVID from when it started. Because COVID actually came into the United States, if you look at research, in the fall of 2018. It was approximately February of 2019 when the United States government identified principal investigative research doctors to start researching it. And companies such as Pfizer and Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson started on a vaccine. My question to you tonight, I have a lot of questions for you, so I apologize, Ms. Cuthbert, but please bear with me, okay? My first question to you tonight is, here in Deland, we have our own clinical research facility. We have two certified principal investigative research doctors that are involved with that. They started researching this in February of 2019. I have been in direct contact with them from the time we sent students home that spring break for, you know, in March. I have had long conversations with them, I have seen the research that they've done. My question to you is, have you spoken to any of the doctors or researchers involved here in Deland locally? They were selected as the first group out of Florida to do the research on this, on COVID, and to administer the Pfizer and Moderna shots. They are now doing the antibodies. Have you had any communication with them?
No.
Okay. So can you describe for me the difference in symptoms? And what happened to an individual that contracted the original COVID versus the UK COVID versus the Delta variant? Do you know the difference in the symptoms or what it did to individuals' bodies?
It depends on the individual.
Okay, do you know any of the signs, though, of the original COVID and what it did?
The symptoms that people, yeah, they were coughing, sneezing, sore throats, headaches, fatigue, diarrhea.
Okay. When people were first hospitalized with that, what was the immediate response that most hospitals? What did they do first?
They had difficulty breathing, so they were looking at the oxygen levels.
Okay. And what did they kind of jump to? If they were struggling with breathing?
Well, incubating in the vent.
Okay. So research on venting individuals, whenever you go to the point that you vent someone, you basically have reached a point where a ventilator is going to harden their lungs, and it's not necessarily going to make it better. I happen to have spoken also with local respiratory therapists, as well as some respiratory therapists, actually a head of respiratory therapy out of another state. And this is what they said to me. The first inclination of what we were told was to vent people. What we quickly learned is that in the original virus, the mucus was heavy and thick. And by venting someone, you basically were pushing them to the point that they may not recover because of what a ventilator does, and also because that heavy, thick mucus then blocked their lungs and made it difficult to breathe. So what they quickly learned, and why we took a turnaround and then stopped seeing as much ventilating going on, was they learned, you've got to thin the mucus out and keep it going and not vent. And that's how we turn people around. What do you know about the symptoms right now for the UK variant or the Delta variant?
They tend to be more severe. So people, the Delta, they're going into the hospital much more sicker.
That's interesting, because in speaking with these research doctors that are local here, what they've said to me is, they tend to mirror a cold or a sinus infection. The mucus is not as heavy in the Delta variant at this time as what it was in the original variant, because it's a mutated piece. It's no different than the, when the flu mutates. Like, all of a sudden, we'll get a very bad flu virus one year, and then the next few years, we've got mutated viruses off of that that are never as strong. They're always weaker. And you realize, they build the flu vaccine each year off of the variant from that year and give it to people for the next year, not knowing what the variant's going to be. So here's where I'm at on this. We already chose for masks to be optional. I'm not changing my mind, because number one, children do not belong to us. We may have children, I have children, I have grandchildren, okay? But my medical, the medical decisions for my own children when they were of school age, and for my grandchildren at this time, belong to the right of their parents. Parents, I, I'm not in the position to make medical decisions and to enforce medical decisions upon children. So by making masks optional, we've given every parent out there, every staff member and every student, the right to make the choice that is best for them. So I'm standing by that. American Academy of Pediatrics, who's their number-one funder? Do you know?
No.
Let's try Pfizer. So here's what I've learned. Didn't want to get into all of this, but I've learned, and I'm researching, and I'm continuing to ask questions of those people that are dealing with this and tracking this on a daily basis. What I want to ask you about is, not once does anybody ever talk about antibodies. Do you know where we stand with the individuals that have already had COVID and where their antibodies are?
There is some CDC information out there, that's, that's my source, that is suggesting that over time, your, your immunity may wane if you've had a prior infection, and there are cases where people have been infected for a second time.
Okay, so, all right, you opened that. So yes, I happen to have talked to the researchers that are local here that have been tracking people since February of 2019, who got the original case of COVID. We are now a year and a half out, and those individuals still have antibodies. I have personally a seventy-eight-year-old mother and a seventy-nine-year-old father who last August got COVID, and I have their permission to share this information tonight. They have been tested four times since then, checking their antibodies, and their antibodies are still strong. So what has their doctor told them? There is no need for you to take the vaccine, because the vaccine's not going to give you anything that you already don't have naturally in your body. So how come we're never talking about the people that have already experienced it? And the antibodies that, like, there's no discussion about antibodies? And I'm sorry, but naturally, antibodies, I'd much rather have antibodies because I took it. I mean, why do we draw people's blood at other times to make sure they still have antibodies to, if they'd had chickenpox, or if they took the MMR? We don't automatically demand everybody be vaccinated. We, we draw their blood to find out what they still have. So when you said the vaccinate is waning in the older, who was the first group that we vaccinated here?
Our older folks.
Okay, so explain waning.
So there is some evidence that the immunity of some of our older adults may wane from the, from the vaccine, and they may not have the level of protection. And that's the discussion that's happening around boosters right now.
Okay, so let's go back to this. Do you have any research that shows that if you, because you talked also at one point about one shot of the vaccination? Where we know if it's Pfizer or Moderna, it takes two shots. Only J and J, Johnson &amp; Johnson, is a one-shot. Do you have any research or data that tells you if everyone that was vaccinated, whether they took the Johnson &amp; Johnson, the first shot of Pfizer or Moderna, or both shots, did they all develop antibodies?
Do I have that for the, the people that we vaccinated? No, I don't have that, but that's, that's, you know, what you're expecting.
You're expecting?
Sure.
Would you like to know what the real numbers are? Nationwide, for the research that's being done, in every state that is fed into one database, shows actually that everyone that was fully vaccinated, approximately fifteen percent of them develop no antibodies. But yet, if they are carrying around a card and says they're vaccinated, we're good to go, right? But if we've had COVID and we have antibodies, whether we're six months out or a year and a half, we don't want to talk about it, we want you to take the vaccine. Okay, do you know what the research says right now for how long the antibodies are lasting in the individuals that have been vaccinated?
No.
Three months for some, six months for others, and they're still following on. All right. My question here to you tonight, because obviously, you know, you're going to quote the CDC guidelines. I'm doing research, I'm asking questions, and, and I'm getting the research directly from people following all of this. When we were still in school, we, yeah, we had precautions. And you know what I think of the masks, because at the elementary level, some of those masks were absolutely filthy that those children were wearing. Now, let me go back and ask another question. Do you know what the numbers are on the, in the zero to nineteen or zero to twenty-five age category of children this past year that lost their life due to pneumonia? Not COVID-19 pneumonia?
No, I don't have that with me.
Okay, so I have it, and I can share it with you and email it to you. It's a whole lot more than what your COVID numbers are. More children died this past year of pneumonia. In previous years, more children have died of flu than they have of COVID. How many children have died in Volusia County of COVID?
None.
None, correct. What's happening right now? Let's think about this. We've been an open state, and the entire world's been coming to Florida to summer vacation. Our beaches are full, our amusement parks are full, families are here together because they can be here together, and there's no restrictions. Kids are at summer camps, kids are going to youth camps, kids are hanging out. And guess what kids are doing? Because this is what children do. Children hug, they touch each other, they hold each other's hands. We got teenagers out there kissing. Teenagers were kissing even during the school year when we made them wear a mask, but trust me, they took it off, and they were kissing. But kids during the summer share food. Mom cuts up a watermelon, sticks it in a bowl, and they all reach in and touch it, and they share food. They share drinks. I mean, I got a two-year-old and a four-year-old. The two-year-old picks up the four-year-old's cup all the time, thinking he has something better to drink than what she has, and he takes a drink out of it. Right now, we're not comparing apples to apples. So my next question for you is this. The numbers that you sent in the report over to Dr. Fritz and said, here's where our positivity rate is. The way you calculate the positivity rate, and I'm going to make it just very simple, is, so if last year we had one thousand people, like this week in July, that were tested, and fifty of them were positive, that's how you calculate your positivity rate. Well, if this week in July, this year, only a hundred take the test, and still forty of them show up, all of a sudden, our positivity rate's way up here, because a lot less people got tested. Because that's how you calculate positivity rate. So positivity rates don't mean anything. What means something is, last year, if you say to me, last year on this date, Ms. Haynes, there were seventy-two positive cases, positive, people that tested positive. And you tell me there's a hundred and seventy-two this year, then yeah, I've got to wake up and look. But your positivity rates are based on how many people test versus how many test positive. Less people are testing. And we've also talked about them having to test and retest and retest. And look, I appreciate what you do, but the bottom line is, if we've got right here in Deland, doctors that have been researching this and involved with updating the research, and, and they're tracking people for three years right now. Because remember, this is still not approved. This is still under an emergency order, okay? Why is it still under an emergency order? Because we don't have enough data on it. We don't know the long-term side effects. We don't know how lo, will, will you get antibodies? How long will, will your antibodies last? Now, I can tell you, if you got it, you're, if you've already had COVID, you're truly in better shape than anybody else, because you've got antibodies.
Except for the nine-hundred-and-seven individuals who've lost their lives.
Okay. I don't want anyone to lose their life, but the reality is, every day, someone loses their life. People lose their life due to cancer. People lose their life due to so many contributing or comorbidity factors. We don't live a single day that someone doesn't lose their life. Answer, by saying that, were the flu deaths larger than what COVID's been?
Not this past year.
Okay, no, 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 no. The year before, were they larger than what?
Yeah, because-
Because we're labeling everything COVID that we can label COVID, because there's money attached to it. So were they, were, were the flu deaths the year previous to COVID coming out higher than the COVID deaths?
I don't have that number with me.
They were. They were higher. And I'm telling you that this year alone, the deaths to pneumonia were higher. And you know what strikes me interesting about pneumonia? I had pneumonia six years ago. It was one of the worst things that I lived through. But here's what's interesting, nobody said I had to take the pneumonia shot. Nobody said, you've had pneumonia, or wait, all of us could get pneumonia. We've got, you've got to take the pneumonia shot, because you're not going to live through pneumonia. So thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being gracious and kind, thank you for answering my questions. But the, you know, when this all started, we were told, stay home. Stay home, don't go out, don't talk to anybody, don't have contact, don't hug anybody, don't kiss anybody, and we'll flatten the curve if we stayed home. Well, we stayed home and we didn't flatten the curve. Then we were told, now you all need to mask up, stay six feet away, you know, quarantine, all that. We didn't do it. Last year, one of my schools quarantined the entire seventh grade twice, because you told them to. And each time you told them, they had to send every seventh-grade child home from that school. The first time was fourteen days, the next time was ten days. It was due to an adult that, and if you remember, at least I remember, when we started this process, you said, if you put them in seating charts, and they wear masks, and no one that tests positive is in their space, less than three feet, for fifteen minutes, longer than fifteen minutes, those kids won't have to quarantine. Well, my question was this, typically, a seventh-grade class period lasts forty-five minutes. So I really struggled with how a single teacher in that room, with the, because I went to the rooms, with the kids spread out, sitting behind plexiglass shields, wearing masks that the- that the entire seventh grade had to go home, because I couldn't figure out how that teacher, what, and, and before it was, if they had masks off, I couldn't figure out how that teacher spent 15 minutes or more in close proximity to every one of those kids. And I followed up, and not a single one of those children ever got sick during both of those times. So they missed 24 days of instruction. Prior to this past year, when a kid misses five days, parents are given a warning. When a student hits 10, they're given the second warning. At 15 days, they receive a letter stating they may have to appear before a judge because their child's not in school. We, no, now I'm not accepting responsibilities. You and your team sent some of our kids home last year, and they missed 40 to 48 days of school. We're not under an emergency order anymore. In my opinion, if they're out five, they're going to get notified. If they're out 10, they're going to get a warning. At 15, they're getting a letter home. So how can we be the ones sending them home? What I want to say to parents is this, as we've always done, if your child is sick, please do not send them to school. If you, as an adult, work in a school system, please do not come to work sick, okay? I believe if we do that, if we continue to say, you want to wear a mask, you want to wear a mask and a face shield, please do so. As long as we continue to stock soap, paper towels, hand sanitizer, and we continue on the path that we've done with these kids about washing their hands, not touching their face, not putting their fingers in their mouth, if we continue on the path of them not sharing food, not sharing drinks, wiping off their desk area, wiping off tables where they've been, we're going to be fine. And if they get sick, they're going to go home, because you just, you just told me, we, we've not lost a child, which is a blessing, because I've never known a year that we've not lost a child to something. Because we've lost children in so many things. So, thank you for coming tonight, but I'd like to suggest you may want to reach out to our local research facility that's here in Deland, and have some conversations with medical doctors that not only have medical degrees and practice as doctors, but they've gone on and taken the additional coursework and everything to be certified to be principal investigative research doctors, and they've been doing research now for probably a minimum of 15 to 20 years. They're located here in Deland, and they are a part of this nationwide project, doing all of this research, and they have access nationwide to tell you where we're at. And the last time I spoke to one of them, they said, actually, nationwide, we've had less than 600 children, and when I say children, I have to preface the age they told me, zero to 24, okay? And let me tell you, what, what 20, young 20-year-olds are doing is a whole different thing than what little people are doing, all right? That have died, where it has been coded as COVID as part of one of the things. But when you break it down, you have to look at the comorbidities and what contributed to that, because there's not very many, if any, that can be strictly a straight COVID death. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. That will not, I'm sorry, I asked you in the very beginning of the meeting, there is no clapping and there's no response, this is the school board's meeting and it's not yours. We will not, no. Ms. Newman? No, no. You, this is our board meeting, this is the school board's meeting, you are invited, it's, we meet in the sunshine, you're invited in. We are not going to discuss this. Ms. Haynes spoke her mind, she's a board, she is a board member, she represents District One, she has every right to say what she has, as an elected official. We will not have this hijacking of our meeting. We will not have it. If you would like to say anything, please say it to the media outside, but not in here. There will be no clapping, there will be no response. You have public participation for that measure. Thank you. Mr. Persis, excuse me, it is your turn to speak.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Ms. Boswell. Madam Chair, I didn't really expect tonight for us to get into any kind of dialogue. I thought we were just going to have a presentation of the information, it's not a board action item.
Correct.
There'll be a time if and when it will be, and then we'll have a chance to debate.
If it is the board's pleasure to bring it before-
Right.
On the agenda, that is everyone's, we have five board members in order to bring that up. What Policy 504.3 says, and what we put into the policy when we drafted it two months ago, and we advertised it for 28 days, and we approved it last June 22nd, was in the minutes that we approved tonight. We asked, and this is what I asked to put into the policy. If, and of course, we had no idea that this would occur at this point in time.
Right.
Just in case, if we saw any change in what's happening with COVID-19, we asked the superintendent to bring that information before us.
And that's what we're doing.
And that's exactly what Ms. Boswell is doing here tonight.
Okay.
It's not, there is no vote, there's no agenda, it's a mere presentation of the, of the information.
Then I don't have any comment, I don't have any comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boswell, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your facts.
I appreciate it.
And we look forward to those-
Summary of the information I presented.
And we, I'm sure we'll get a copy, you can send it to Dr. Fritz-
I will.
I'm sure we'll get a copy. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We, it is now 6:45, we are 15 minutes past the 6:30 certain public participation. And what this is, we are not going to comment at this time, this is based on concerning any general items that are benefiting the Volusia County schools. Do we have cards? We have five, we have five cards. I'm going, you have an opportunity to come to the dais, please speak into the microphone so we can hear you here in the boardroom, as well as at home. You will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the dais, please state your name and the area in which you live in Volusia County. The board members will not be responding at this time. I'm going to announce the first person, and then the second person, so that second person is ready to come, so there's a better flow and we have more time. Jerry Kenny is first, and then Elizabeth Albert is second. Come on up, sir. Good afternoon, or I should say, good evening, sir. Any seat you would like, right there is fine, thank you for coming this evening.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you, it's only been about 20 years since I've been here.
That's okay, we'll welcome you anytime, sir.
My name is Jerry Kenny, I live in Port Orange, I'm the father of two sons who are grown adults, graduated from the Volusia County School System. And I'm here today to talk about another deadly virus called critical race theory, that many of you may have heard a little bit about. In my employment, over the last seven years, I've, I've, I guess you could call it an opportunity, I've had the opportunity to be exposed to critical race theory teachings, and spent a lot of time researching it, and that's why I was kind of surprised when several weeks ago, the Florida Board of Education was having a hearing in Jacksonville on, on the governor's proposed rule change regarding critical race theory. And as I was listening to the public comments, with, with each individual that was speaking in favor of critical race theory, it generally took about 30 seconds to figure out that they didn't know what the heck they were talking about, they, they had no idea. They thought that, that people that were opposed to critical race theory didn't want accurate history being taught, when in fact, you know, critical race theory, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it branches out from Marxist critical theory. And Marx had a, a philosophy of ruthlessly criticizing things that, that they wanted to destroy. It was to change public opinion, to make people very, very much upset with what they've got, and to, to create chaos, if you will. It's a revolutionary tactic, is literally what it was. If you couldn't fight a war, if you could fight a war, then they would, they would do it the other way. But anyway, it kind of prompted my attention, so I got in touch with the school system, and I wanted to see our textbooks, to see if, if any of that was, was in there. And other than finding a whole lot of love letters to Karl Marx in our history textbooks here in Volusia County, I really didn't see anything that jumped off of the pages. And then I had requested, what I found was, that where the critical race theory is making its way into the system, is through what they call supplemental materials, things that necessarily are not approved by the state, or not approved on the local level. Give you a good example, there's, this is from Volusia County, this is what I got from your school system, this is for African-American history, it's an e-dynamics course, I believe it's an online course, but it's a supplemental course. And it talks, it says African-American history in the early 20th century. It says, "By the turn of the 20th century, African-Americans found themselves once more under the thumb of a white population that was violent and angry. Though it began with a southern backlash against the policies of Reconstruction, the trend toward white supremacy and anger toward blacks began to spread across the entire United States." Now-
Sir, I'm so sorry, you're, you're starting so well, but your three minutes-
It's up?
It's up already, it goes fast, doesn't it?
Okay, let me just say this.
All right, please conclude.
Critical theories is a book that I would really love to encourage all the board members to read, so that you, you really will be able to identify this, because the buck stops with you, you're the ones that approved this material.
Okay, would you put the, take the title-
Okay.
And the author's name and the ISBN number, and hand it to Ms. Lieben before you leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you for coming tonight. Ms. Albert, and then Jessie Thompson afterwards.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Fritz, members of the audience. Well, I hope that you all have had a good summer, it was an interesting time away. And yes, Mrs. Haynes, or Ms. Haynes, the Thursday Night Gala was wonderful to celebrate Mr. G last week, that was super fantastic for Volusia County Schools, a victory for us all, absolutely. Today, earlier in the board, board workshop, I very much enjoyed the presentation on the strategic plan, and yes, you are right, there are many wonderful and good things that are happening within our Volusia County Schools, due to the hard-working, dedicated men and women who work for this county. And so, although things are a little bit different than a year ago, there are some very unfortunate similarities, and so I just have a couple requests for your consideration tonight. I know that although masks are optional, some are choosing to wear them, so my request to you is that if there are masks in the warehouse, we make those available at our school sites and our work sites for those who choose to wear them, so that they do not incur any expense in buying them for themselves. Hand sanitizer, always a good item to have handy, particularly on our classrooms, everyone benefits from a clean set of hands, so if we could continue to supply that, we would be very grateful. And then, as we know, quarantines are eventually going to be a necessity, it's undeniable, no matter which side of the fence you're on, it's going to happen. We would ask that, as much as we can, we afford our employees the ability to work remotely. We know that we have moved to a situation where we are one-to-one with devices. We heard earlier today the wonderful things that are happening with the Canvas platform, and that our resources, resources are now available digitally. So I'm asking for the ability to work remotely, so that the business of learning and running our educational institution can carry on. We cannot endure another year of learning loss. And so if we have the way to do it, I'm urging you to consider allowing that to happen, everyone wins that way. Also, I'm asking for the consideration of reinstatement of COVID leave, I hope not to have to ask for that, but here we are. And so, we are absolutely all in this together. I'm hoping that we've learned some things from the last year, learn how to work more efficiently, more effectively, so that everyone, our teachers, our staff, our students, our parents, and our community can win. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Albert is president of you.
And one more thing, what a testimony to you, Mrs. Cuthbert, that your grandchildren showed up on a Tuesday night to hang out at a Volusia County-
Thanks, those are graduates for you. Thank you, Ms. Albert. Ms. Jessica Thompson, and then Adrienne Andrino is afterwards. Good evening, speak into the mic, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
State your name and the area in which you live.
My name is Jessie Thompson, I am from New Smyrna Beach, Florida, one of the greatest beaches there is, with all due respect. I know this wasn't on the agenda tonight, I know you're not voting on it, but I would be remiss if I didn't bring up masks. I know on meetings where people aren't voting on them, it's still brought up that they should be here, so I'm going to speak on the other side, although Ms. Haynes took away literally any point I could think of, so I'm going to come with this. I have two small children. Every morning I make them breakfast, sometimes my husband helps, I make their lunches, I cut up their apples, sometimes I give them pancakes for dinner. Not once has a doctor come to me and said, maybe you don't give them pancakes for dinner. Not once has their teacher called and said, maybe, maybe you send more fruits in their lunch. Although with all due respect to their teachers, I do send way too much fruit, and that's probably why they go to the bathroom as much as they do. My point is, as parents, we have the option of what we put in our children's bodies. We have the option of dressing them every day and taking care of them, and it is an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. So all I ask of you, who take care of our children's needs as far as schooling goes, is whenever you do vote, if that time comes again, that you'll make it optional for parents to choose whether they want their kids to wear masks to school, whether they want their kids to not wear masks. My daughter's a little person with very, very small nasal passages, and she cannot wear a mask. And for kindergarten, she couldn't see her friends' faces. And that was heartbreaking. So please, for all of the kids, please give them the option to see each other's faces, and maybe to eat too much fruit in their lunchboxes. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Adrienne Andrino, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, and then last tonight is Jessica Hathaway. Good evening. State your name and the area-
Adrienne Andrino, I live right here in Deland.
Okay.
My son attends George Marx Elementary School, and he also has a diagnosis of autism. We were out of school from March of 2020, all the way till April of 2021 because of COVID. We live with my parents, who are elderly, and myself, I wasn't vaccinated either. Once we were all vaccinated, we felt comfortable sending him back. Two weeks in, was his very first and only exposure to COVID. We credit mask-wearing for protecting my son from COVID exposure or infection. I'd also like to mention that I'm a nurse for 15 years and have worked directly with COVID patients, and a lot of the information that was just spewed out here was definitely inaccurate, so I would like to see some sources from that information. I know that, we have discussed already, that the CDC has changed their guidelines on everybody wearing a mask indoors, either vaccinated or unvaccinated. My children don't have the option, I have a two-year-old, an almost-two-year-old, and my seven-year-old, they don't have the option of, of being able to become vaccinated. And I would, I know that some people might not believe the positivity rates of COVID, but June 24th, by the Florida Department of Health, the positivity rate for children under 12 was 3.7, and then the last report date was on July 22nd, that positivity rate was 15.4%. And that is because of the Delta variant, which is extremely transmissible, and we're seeing increased hospitalizations, including pediatric hospitalizations, although the Florida Department of Health is not reporting that information anymore publicly. I just want to be the voice for my son, I want to ask for you to reconsider your mask mandate. Masks aren't something that's being put in your body, it's a tool for prevention and protection for the children, and I would like for you to follow the guidelines of the Medical Experts Academy of Pediatrics, CDC, which it also states on all of your emails that you will continue to follow the CDC- you will continue to follow the CDC guidelines on the last, voluntary masking. In that email on the bottom, it says you follow CDC guidelines. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. And last is Ms. Jessica Hathaway. Good evening, talk into the microphone, state your name, the area in which you live, and you have three minutes. Thank you for coming.
Hi, good evening, I am Dr. Jessica Hathaway, and I am a proud Volusia County parent of three school-aged children, the daughter of an educator and a veterinarian with 21 years of experience practicing in Volusia County. My degree is from Cornell University, which at the time when I attended was the number one veterinary university in the United States of America. And I am here, first of all, to thank everyone for taking the time to express views on all sides of these concerns, to thank the Public Health Department for coming and clearly and concisely stating the data we have on a local level, and for everyone being willing to listen to facts and also have a good educated conversation about everything. Ms. Haynes, in particular, I'd like to offer to you, anytime since you said that you'd like to speak with doctors, veterinary medicine has lots and lots of experience with infectious disease because we don't have vaccines for a lot of the issues that we face, and I would love to talk about antibodies and titers and vaccines, and you're right, sometimes you shouldn't vaccinate, and sometimes antibodies for natural immunity last longer, but other times they don't, and we, in our practice, actually use titers to help make sure we're vaccinating appropriately, and I think that that all comes into play, there is middle ground here. I also wanted to mention Delta was not in play last year, this is a new strain, and please keep paying attention because it will be different, okay? Briefly, I just wanted to state that I am not rabidly pro or anti-vaccination, that I actually have three children that needed medical exemptions for a long time for vaccines in schools, and that I was grateful that they could get those, and that also I was grateful that I was told that they would be asked to stay home in the event of an outbreak. So what we have now is an outbreak of a disease where there is not an approved vaccine for children under the age of 12. This is a new situation that we, as the adults in the community, are required to act on. No, they are not all of our children, except they are all of our children. We need to have face-to-face education. My children suffered greatly because of their dyslexia and ADHD not having face-to-face education. There is not a vaccine, again, I reiterate, for children under 12, how do we keep things safe for them? In the instance of COVID-19, studies are showing that viral load shed for the Delta strain is high, even in asymptomatic vaxxed individuals who may not be outwardly sick. This is new data because it's a new virus, we have to keep learning, we have to keep asking. This strain is unique because it's striking young children and young to middle-aged adults, and they are now making up a larger portion of hospitalized cases across the country, but of course in Florida, than in other times during the pandemic. The transmission or spread and severity of viral diseases like COVID-19, so not all viral diseases, but like this one, is decreased by reducing the viral load that individuals are exposed to. Universal masks are the most effective and reasonable way to keep the viral load and exposure lower in our schools, and to protect our young children, especially those under 12, where there's not even an unapproved vaccine option for them to get. The teachers and their vulnerable families at home while still allowing the much-needed face-to-face education.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I-
Three minutes.
Wow, that was unnecessary. I apologize, I got caught up in what you were saying, I did not, there's no bell or anything, and I didn't keep track.
I just want to say really quickly-
So your three minutes are up, if you would conclude.
I'm just asking members of our community to please come together-
Please conclude.
-for the safety-
Thank you.
-of all until the cases drop and there are vaccines available-
Thank you.
-for all the students, okay? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you very much. It is now the conclusion of public participation, I think we're going to take a 10-minute break. I'll see you back again around 12 minutes after 7:00, thank you. Welcome back at 7:15, we're at 18.01, presentation of the District Advisory Committee Annual Report, Dr. Fritz.
I'd like to ask Ms. Kelly Schultz to come forward, and Ms. Jennifer Marinasio. Hey Jen.
Good evening, it's nice to see you again tonight, and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Chairman Cuthbert, members of the board, and Dr. Fritz, I'm happy to introduce with me tonight Ms. Jen Marinasio, did I say that right?
That's correct.
Yay. The District Advisory Committee President. As part of the DAC bylaws, every year the president presents to the board what it's about, what DAC is all about, and what happened in the last school year. So we have a very short presentation, and I'll let her take it away.
I am Jennifer Marinasio, Madam Chair, school board members, superintendent, friends, thank you for having me. And yes, on behalf of our Vice Chair, Angela Kupnicki, and the rest of our DAC members, I present our District Advisory Committee Annual Report for our 2020-2021 school year, which is always very hard for me to say. So this presentation aligns with the strategic plan of Goal 5, communication and community engagement. Our DAC members are comprised of school advisory council representatives from each school, and appointment of additional representatives such as school board member appointees, Futures Foundation, ESE Department, federal programs, and union members. Our DAC members can be asked and do serve on other school committees such as the Teacher of the Year and School Calendar Committee. We hold eight monthly meetings, the first week of every month, September through May, excluding January, and we, as a District Advisory Committee, serve in an advisory capacity to the school district. Our monthly meeting topics this year included our back-to-school opening plan, our Schoolway Cafe presentation, we had an operations update, our budget presentation, we had a presentation on one-to-one technology, our restorative practices, a presentation on the strategic plan, and our new Advent Health cardiac screenings. In preparation for the 2021-22 school year, new officers were elected at our May meeting, which also was our first in-person meeting as we met virtually all through the past year. Were there any questions?
Any comments or suggestions, questions for Mrs. M? I'm not going there. Yes, Ms. Haynes.
I just want to say thank you because I love how you bring, you know, the people together, and the topics that you cover are relevant topics, and you're just gracious, and I know that this past year was kind of fun doing some of it virtually, but it was nice that that last meeting was in-person, and I'm looking forward to next year's meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Anyone else? Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Ms. Haynes said, you run a great meeting, even virtually, and you are such, and Dr. Fritz, you should know this, they have been strong supporters of Volusia County Public Schools, she and her husband, Lenny, are just fantastic people, I can't keep up with your children now, where are they now?
Oh, well, since you wanted me to brag, they are wonderful.
They are amazing children.
I have three children, I have two COVID graduates, one graduated in 2020 from Seabreeze High School, and she is a rising sophomore at Florida State, and I have a 2021 graduate, and he is an entering freshman at the University of Florida, and then, we have a mixed marriage, we each got one. So the third one is up for grabs, and he is a rising junior at Seabreeze right now.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you so, so much for everything that you've always done for Volusia County Schools and now taking on this role. And do you have, are you the chair for next year as well or how does that work?
I am, yes. And Angela Cuthnicky is graciously also going to be the Vice Chair for next year as well.
Good for you. Okay. Well, let's hope that we can do them in person. Yes.
Anyone else?
Ms. Burnett? I'm pretty new to all the meetings, but I have been attending. I'm the member for the East Side, so I appreciate you helping me along and I look forward to meeting in person over the next school year. Thank you.
I was very grateful that most of your meetings were online because then I could attend. Between my fractured foot and being confined to treatments, it was wonderful to be able to be comfortable and look in. I thought you did just fine on, you know, and you had people muting and unmuting and you were right on it. So you welcomed, we got your meeting started. It was a very, very pleasant experience. And DAC is very important, I think, to our county because each parent from each school gets to participate, get district information and send it directly back to their schools. And that is so important in our communication. And there's nothing like meeting other parents from across the county going, you've got that problem too? We do too. And you just don't feel so much alone and then you can problem solve all the challenges you might have. And it's nice because there's always a time in which people get to brag about all the good things that are happening in schools and that's always nice. And everybody can steal ideas of fundraising and activities for Parents' Night or something. So thank you, thank you for all your volunteerism. We're very grateful.
Thank you.
And here's to a new successful year, twenty-one, twenty-two. And maybe, maybe there's going to be a nice grab bag that's going to come out to be the best package you've ever had. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And if I may say one last thing, I do want to say thank you all so much. Usually we have school board representative from the East Side attend the East, West Side attend the West. It was very nice virtually to have as many of you there as possibly could. And you're right, DAC is an unusual animal in that it's not a school board meeting, but you're there as a resource. And it isn't a district meeting, but you're there as a resource. So I want to just give a thank you to all of you for continuing to make the virtual meetings happen and be there also. But just to comment on the membership, I just want to say thank you because when Mr. Cologne was at our May meeting, he did say, a comment on something that happened at a school board meeting, he said, I don't know how many of you attend or listen to our school board meetings and every hand in that room went up. And so these are those people. And so I actually know they're listening now and I just want to say, you know, how wonderful it is to serve with such a dedicated group of advocates and volunteers who even with the crazy year, continue to make virtual work, came back to the in-person meetings. So thank you all for helping support that.
Thank you. And Mr. Cologne, are you the West Side rep or is that Ms. Haynes?
Actually, I think we all were.
We rotated.
You rotate? See, I'm the East Side rep, which is why I wasn't there. But I'll be there. When's your first meeting? September?
Yeah, we usually start the first Wednesday, yeah, the first week of September.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I guess this is a question for Kelly. Have we put any consideration of transmitting the meetings? And so we had quite a bit of folks be able to attend from either side of the county because they didn't have to travel. And so I don't know what the bylaws say or if maybe they could be, maybe they're non-voting because they're not in person, but they at least can hear the information firsthand when they can't travel from one side of the county to the others. I think that would be helpful for everyone. I mean, this is a new tool that we didn't know we could use and all of a sudden, you know, again, it doesn't take the place of being in person and I don't know what your bylaws say, but at least everybody can get the information.
Oh yeah, we can definitely look into that and I'll talk with Dr. Fritz about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Thank you and have a safe trip home. Eighteen point zero two, presentation and demo of Let's Talk.
You know, Board, we talked about this tool and approved this contract in the past, past board meeting. I'm going to have Kelly and Joe Sutta come up and I want to share a little more about what this platform is as we go through this. This is a way for our community to build a, send a communication to the district and specific departments and to be able to get a response back and to even send a general statement if they're unfamiliar which department it would go to to be able to help answer those questions. So it is aligned to goal number five in our communication. Ms. Schultz?
Okay. Exciting to be up here again. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Fritz. Ms. Cuthbert asked that we give a demonstration, give a little bit more about Let's Talk from our last board meeting. And so it's a digital platform. It's part of Goal Five Strategic Plan. And Joe Sutta, our Web Services web developer, is here with me. He is the point person in my department who's been working on this and it's perfect because there's some backend stuff that's definitely his language. The rest of us go, oh, okay. But, so we'll go through, we'll start through this. This is part of Goal Five to strengthen communication and community engagement. Let's Talk, it's a digital customer service platform that will allow the district to track incoming communications. And it's really a neat system that allows us to analyze and get some analytics on how well we're responding. And this will help with our strategic plan where we engage how well we're doing and communicating with all of our stakeholders. So the communications come in through so many channels that, you know, it can be very hard to track them. We email, text, phone calls, voicemails, in-person meetings, letters, social media. And there's a communications hub. It collects communications and allows employees to collaboratively formulate a response or redirect that communication to the appropriate team. It reduces the amount of time customers spend being transferred from department to department or person to person, getting them information faster. It reduces instances of lost communications. And it's a tool for gathering topical, timely feedback. Trending topics can be added to our contact page where we can allow customers a way to easily register some thoughts and have them routed automatically to the right person or team. And there's an FAQ section as well. Some of the key features include the website widget, which provides a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five way for customers to contact the school district. The communications are automatically routed to the right, the appropriate team based on the topic that the customer selects. There's a chatbot. This provides a way for customers to receive answers to common questions after hours when district offices are closed. It allows customers to ask questions in natural conversational language such as, what's being served for lunch this week? Or who do I contact for help with my teaching certification? It's also available twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five and will be available on the district site and on the school sites, the school websites. It's designed to help automate answering common questions without having to involve a district employee. That's a nice feature of it. And if it can't answer the question, it offers to let the customer send a message directly to the district department. And we can monitor what gets asked and train it to answer new questions or refine answers and help with the flow. All right, let's go back one, yep. If you go back one slide, we have a video, very short video to show you. Let's Talk has been really good working with us and implementing this. And we thought, wow, they already have a video created. They, I think it really spells it out and it explains. It's a quick video highlighting some of the key features. So we'll play that real quickly.
Let's Talk is a cloud-based customer service and communication tool that connects your community with your schools. Community members start a conversation by clicking the Contact Us tab on your school or district homepage. They can identify their topic, who they are, the purpose of their message, and more. Our universal inbox lets administrators instantly assign messages to specific team members for more efficient and accurate responses. Let's Talk allows you to easily manage critical messages and health and safety concerns. Messages are marked as critical and keywords that you choose appear. Receive instant alerts right to your phone. A real-time data dashboard helps you track response times, see what issues are trending, and measure customer satisfaction. Let's Talk is a simple way to streamline communication and build and nurture community trust. Try it today.
So that's what it will look like and it's directly tied into our school district website and it'll be on the school sites as well. And I mentioned before and I'll mention it again here, we did quite a bit of research before going with this. And Let's Talk has launched in three hundred school districts and eight districts in Florida. And we've reached out to the communication teams there and they love it. And Dr. Fritz comes from a district that had it as well in Osceola County and I've been in direct contact with them and implementing and pushing this through has been great. So if you want to go to the next slide. And Joe's going to take it from here with a little more technical talk and then it'll be back on my end.
Not too technical, I promise. So what you see here on this slide is a demo version of what's going to replace the Contact Us page on our website. This is how it's actually going to look. I wanted to actually show you our page rather than a demo page. At the top of the page is just some introductory text. It's actually just below the Let's Talk with Volusia County Schools at the bottom of the slide that establishes the goal of our use of Let's Talk, how to use it and what customers can expect from the district by using it. Below that are buttons that correspond to district divisions, departments, and teams. We've worked hard to ensure that the topics are worded as clearly as possible to ensure that customers can easily find them without having to dig through jargon. Let's Talk is mobile-friendly, so if someone uses it on a tablet or a phone, they should have exactly the same experience using it as someone using it on a desktop or a laptop. Our Contact Us page will also be available in Spanish. And as we move forward, we plan to ensure that not just the Contact Us page itself, but the form and as well as any elements that can be translated are translated. And we can also translate into other languages as needed. Members of the community can send dialogues directly to us by clicking the button that corresponds most closely to their needs. So for example, we have a back-to-school button on the Contact Us page. So if somebody needed help with back-to-school, they would click that button, fill out the form, and it would go directly to a team that's specifically assembled in order to be able to most clearly and most correctly answer those questions. Okay, this is an example of the Contact Us form itself. As you can see, the form only has a few fields on it. Its focus is the subject and description fields because those are the most important. In addition to the subject and description, it asks users to identify the type of feedback that they'd like to submit. That's up at the very top of the form, as well as tell us who they are, whether they're a parent, student, community member, or somebody, or another group. And what that does is it helps us with metrics. We want to understand who is trying to contact us and why. And down at the bottom, it allows them to provide information so that we can respond, their name, email address, or phone number. I should point out that none of those fields, those contact fields are actually required, but we do ask that people fill those out if they want a response. Down below the contact information, customers will find a checkbox to allow them to hide their contact information from the district. In cases where safety and security are concerned, we, I should say, administrators do have the capability to reveal that information, but it's very closely guarded because we want to protect people's privacy if that's what they choose to do. Certain words and phrases, this was something that was shown very briefly in the video, will trigger what are called critical alerts. These are primarily related to safety and security as well as mental wellness, but they can also be configured for other topics as well, like back-to-school or the half-cent sales tax or other topics that might be hot in the district. These messages will automatically be assigned to district employees most qualified to respond to them quickly and effectively. And then lastly, this is the chatbot. And this is probably the, what I think is the coolest feature of the entire platform. It's basically an artificial intelligence-driven FAQ. So think of a typical frequently asked questions page. It's a long wall of text. The questions and answers are usually filled with jargon. It's a lot of information that you have to dig through and if you don't know the trick, Ctrl+F and then type what you're trying to find. You might spend a while digging through it and trying to find exactly what you're looking for and depending on the wording, the clarity of the wording, you might not actually find it. The chatbot will allow people to ask their questions in their own way. So in a natural conversational way and receive the correct answer back in the same natural conversational language. We've preloaded the chatbot with about thirty questions and answers. We plan to make changes to this list over time to ensure that the answers stay accurate and to add new frequently asked questions as they come up. This will ensure that the chatbot is as useful as possible. So just a couple of examples. When is the first day of school? Where's my bus stop? How can I access my child's grades? Those are three questions that we've actually preloaded the answers to. So if a customer asks a question that the chatbot then can't answer, it allows them to create a dialogue and send it to the district. It doesn't just leave them hanging. And then lastly, the way that the chatbot learns is from feedback from customers. It asks the question, was I able to help at the end of every single interaction? And what it does is it uses that feedback to tweak its accuracy and what phrases and words that it listens for. So Kelly's going to share some information about our implementation timeline now.
I also wanted to mention Tracy Carpenter, a public records custodian, has been working with Joe directly on this because I wanted to make sure to pull public records in and make sure that, you know, some of the things that you answer, you need to make sure that you're not violating any privacy laws or anything like that. So here's the timeline. Pre-launch July fifth through the twenty-ninth for planning, training, and customization. Beta testing, the week of July twenty-sixth, that's this week. And we've already started working on the backend, Joe has. And our first test will be HR, Mr. West? Tomorrow. Maybe I shouldn't have told him. And district employees will see and respond to these dialogues. We're going to do some beta testing behind the scenes before this goes live. Make sure that we're all set up because there was a lot of backend work that Joe and Tracy worked on to get in touch with every department and say, who is your point person that's going to be monitoring this and who's the backup? So we're talking schools, departments, across the district. So they've been working on that and they have that list. Community information staff will monitor and assist this beta testing as we've been doing. The soft launch will be the week of August second, the widget added to the district homepage and the Contact Us page. And then the back-to-school launch, the real launch will be the week of August sixteenth where additional topics will be added and communications to customers to inform them that Let's Talk is available. And I know, Ms. Cuthbert, you asked about the rollout plan for communications. We will be sending this out and notifying all of our stakeholders that this is available, how it works. We're going to have a click sheet available and we'll send as much information as we can to let them know that this is available and how to use it.
Okay, are there questions of these two very knowledgeable young people?
Thank you for your presentation. I remember you pointing this out at the last board meeting where you were discussing it and I was excited to hear about it because I think communication is something we can always have an opportunity for an improvement. So what I would ask is, would you be able to come back at a future board meeting after it's been live and schools back in and give us some updates on how it's working out and how you've modified the questions that you've added for the frequently asked question sheet and just how it's working out?
Absolutely. And it's also part of our strategic plan, so we will have some updates in our stock takes as well and we can pull the analytics and it can narrow it down to the departments and schools. So we'll be on it and we'll work with them and make sure that it's running smoothly.
Thank you. Thank you for that request. That was very good. Ms. Haynes?
So first of all, I want to say thank you. And Joe, I know that all that behind-the-scenes piece you're doing is not easy and it's very detailed and you're great at it. So I'm happy to hear that you're doing that piece. But, so it's going to be posted like on our site. So is it going to be posted, or I think you said this, on every one of the school sites also?
Eventually, yes. The plan is that as the new school websites start to roll out, the sixteen that we've already launched and then the remaining twenty-ish of the elementary school websites, as they launch, we'll add it to their new websites.
Okay, so then they can then share that with parents as like, because the whole idea is, it seems, you know, everybody goes to a variety of locations and there's just no way to monitor every location to be able to get people an answer. So I like the fact, you know, this looks simplistic on the front side, not on the backside, you know, for people to be able to do it. But we want people to have accurate information. So thank you for the work that you're doing on this.
And I think this will help alleviate a lot of the phone calls that the front desks are getting at the schools once this gets up and running. And I've actually helped and assisted with some schools in the front offices on occasion, you know, to help answer phones and bless their hearts. It's a lot of work and there's a lot of calls coming in and parents walking in all at the same time. And so hopefully this will help with them too, once everybody gets up and rolling. And so hopefully this will help with them too, once everybody gets up and rolling with it, so.
Mr. Cologne?
No, I'm ecstatic because this is exactly what we've been looking for and just to expand that communication and allow more avenues where we can go to parents rather than waiting for parents to always come to us. And so is there the ability to tie in social media to Let's Talk? Is that, is there something in there?
There is, yes. It has the capability to tie into Facebook and Twitter.
Great. Because again, it's, you know, a lot of times, you know, folks go to other folks because they have to come find the answer. Where if we're able to come to them, that will definitely make it easy and I'm all about that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That was a, you guys have such good questions. Mr. Persis?
Yeah, no, I just want to say thank you for doing this. I'm thinking with the start of the school year, it's like transportation can have their own Let's Talk. Because that's what it is. I mean, it's just unrelentless, just calls about where's my bus?
This is a game changer. This was something that we implemented in Osceola County. And the exact example you gave is the number one area that we noticed the first improvement.
Yeah.
The other, the number two area that we saw was ESE.
Yeah.
And because when parents had questions about IEPs, we were able to get those answers very quickly back to them. So we're excited. We went out on a limb on this one after watching another district perform and do well with it and change the game. And they also have a communication goal. And so we feel very, very encouraged that this is going to be good for us. But it does have a reporting mechanism. So for example, you can see which departments are getting a certain number of hits. And so that'll be part of our stocktake that Kelly brings forward and that when we report out to the board at mid-year and at the end of the year.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Good luck. And as Ms. Burnett said, it'd be great to hear how it goes after about three or four months in, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait, I always go last.
Sorry.
I guess I'm from an old school where, you know, you have to write and answer. How can, how much time will this consume an individual in all these departments? I mean, you're dedicating one employee to all of this, correct, answering questions?
It's actually not just one employee in each department. It's usually a team of two to three. They're not being devoted to it full-time though. We anticipate that the volume of messages that come in at the beginning will be fairly small and then grow over time. But the idea in involving more than one person is to spread the load. So it shouldn't ever take over anybody's job full-time. I can't see that happening.
And also, I know when you were talking about transportation, there's Where's My Bus app. Is there a place on our district website, a list of all the apps that are beneficial for parents or community members where to check? I mean, all the different things that we offer, because we've been doing that a great deal in the last year or two, developing apps and adopting and purchasing licenses for something like this, like Where's My Bus? How many parents know that we have that app? You can track your child's bus to see where it is and if your child's been dropped on or dropped off yet. So do we have a list of all the different?
We do not, but I really like that idea.
Ah, yeah, okay, good.
I think by the end of the week, we'll have that.
That's one good idea. All you guys had all these great ideas. I was going to ask.
Yeah. And that will definitely be part of our communications and back to school. But I like that idea as well. We can have one spot where parents can find all of that.
And also not only put it on our website, but to deliver it to all the PTAs, especially the Volusia County Council PTAs and to DAC as well. So they, we can spread it around as much as possible. And it would be nice on some of the school marquees, because more and more of our schools are getting digital. And I saw the new one that New Smyrna High purchased. And I also noticed that there's digital in front of Chisholm Elementary now. They can say, you have a question? Contact Let's Talk. You know, we can advertise some of those. And as parents wait in the pickup lanes, you can have that stuff scrolling or signs on the marquee, especially the first week of school, instead of saying, school opens, you know, Monday, August 16th. Everybody knows that, but they don't know, have you tried Where's, you know, Where's My Bus? You know, you can put those signs where the bus picks up, so.
That's a good point.
Okay, all right. That's wonderful. Thank you and thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
I truly am marvel because I cannot do what you do. So, and I'm glad you can. So thank you very much, Sarah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. 18.03 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ESER Funds Update. Dr. Fritz?
Ms. Sneed is down for the next four items.
Okay, you're getting a supplement for this, correct?
Good evening. Let's, Let's Talk ESER.
She passed that one up real fast.
All right, I will be brief, but hopefully give you a high level overview of what we are doing with the ESER funds as I had promised at the last meeting that we had. ESER funding aligns with strategic planning goal number four, resources and operational processes. And to recap, these are numbers you've seen before, but just to put them back out there. We received elementary and secondary school relief funding, which is ESER. In two phases, phase one was 15 million, which we have almost completely exhausted. Phase two, 64 million and phase three has not been awarded at all. That's just a projection of 149 million. Of the 15 million, the funding period for that was March of 2019, which was the start of COVID, through September of 2022. However, we have primarily spent all of that money and will, with a goal of fully exhausting those funds by the end of September of this year. Of the ESER II funds, we have a total allocation of 64 million. It was awarded on May 7th of 2021. The funding period was June 1st through, of 2020 through September 2023. However, you'll recall that we got a little memo saying that we had an advanced allocation that needed to be spent by September 1st. And so that, that's the money that I was discussing earlier today in the strategic planning process that we've worked diligently to try to allocate and especially to try to help the general fund with. And that money must be spent by September 1st. That, they might back off a little bit on that, we're hearing, but we haven't heard official word on that, so we're moving forward with that.
And that's what this is?
Yes.
Okay.
And we also just got a memo, I believe it was last week. And that was regarding the second phase, phase two of ESER II. And there are four grant applications that are due on August 12th. So we're working diligently on putting those together as well. I just want to remind everyone that as far as spending the ESER dollars, there's assurances that have to be met and they all pretty much tie back to education and the impacts of COVID on education to address learning loss, protection of children, protection of special needs, you know, groups of people, mental health services. And also the last assurance, the 15th one, is to maintain operations and continue to employ our existing staff. So the assurances are very broad and we have a process, basically, when we are looking at spending these dollars, that everybody has to go through. They have to fill out a detailed kind of application explaining how this, you know, was an impact related to COVID, how we can tie it back to one of these assurances and all of that documentation exists. So basically with the advanced allocation, we received 29.6 million. A million went to charters, one and a half million went to indirect cost, leaving the district with 27.1 million. Of that 27.1 million, we used 12.3 million to help the general fund. And the other 14.8 was used to address all of those other COVID-related issues. And so therefore that leaves us with part two of the 64 million, which is part two ESER. And that's the one that I'm discussing that we need to put four grant applications in by the 12th of August for. The breakout of that is 34.4. Approximately 3 million goes to charters and this is going to probably be a little bit less because we just received information since this was put together. So a little bit less will go to charters than what we were estimating here. The indirect cost of 1.9 million. 2.6 has to be used for finding missing students. 12.9 has to be used for academic acceleration. 3.2 must be used for technology. And that leaves us with a balance for the district to also utilize on other things that meet the assurances of ESER of 10.8. So what, again, just like with the advanced allocation, what we were planning to do is we're planning to use that 10.8 million to help the general fund. And when I show my budget presentation next, I'll kind of show how that models into the full picture. And then again, as I stated, the last component is ESER III, which is at this point not awarded. We don't have a whole lot of information on it, but we are expecting that we will get word on that hopefully sometime in the next several months. One of the things you all had asked me to do at the last board meeting was let you know of the money that we're using for ESER, how much of it is going to continue to be an expenditure to the district after ESER goes away? And so everybody that's applied for any kind of ESER funding that we've utilized has modeled that out to determine over the next five years what it looks like. And this is just the recap of that. So essentially, most of the ESER, the phase one or phase, sorry, ESER II, phase one funds, most of those funds, so we spent about 27 million and most of those are reoccurring costs. So there are things that once ESER goes away, we're going to have to figure out as a district how to fund. Because we truly are using ESER to help us with funding our services in the general fund at this point. That is all that I have for the ESER presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And if not, I can move right into the budget presentation and answer all of your questions at one time.
Any questions from Ms. Sneed?
Not yet.
I mean, this is exquisite. I mean, this is so well detailed, the yes and the no and every year recurrence, reoccurring costs of the department contact, estimated expenses, I mean, everything. And I, I mean, it's very transparent.
Okay, great. And that's what we meet on weekly as the team with the grants. And Lindy from Grants and Dolly Viederman in my office worked really hard to put that together and make it very clear, along with all of the people throughout the district who are utilizing the ESER funding. So we ranked it from high to low, so it would kind of be a quick snapshot.
And especially it's very transparent of what we did over the summer. So I had a grandson who did the Algebra I class and he took the EOC, so fingers crossed. But I mean, I remember teaching summer school very long time ago. And we, and then all of a sudden we cut it out because we couldn't afford it and we only had enrichment programs. So this robust summer program was wonderful. I did ask how many students were in that Algebra I class at New Smyrna High and there were close to, I think, 60, 60 kids attended. And that was, at least I think I remember correctly. But I mean, wonderful turnout. So I think in the future, I would like to know, maybe the end of August into September, is there a way, Dr. Balgobin, we could find out what our enrollments were over the summer?
I can actually give that to you this week at your weekly.
Oh, okay. That would be wonderful to see how robust, what effect we had on students.
And I do want to mention that the document that you have, that's the plan. And again, it's what we're tracking towards, but it's not actual yet because we're not complete. And again, we're meeting weekly to look at summer programming, like where are, where are we versus our plan versus the actual? And we're just constantly trying to make sure we utilize every single dollar so we don't leave any funds on the table.
Also, excuse me, Ms. Haynes, I just had a thought. Would you send this and the PowerPoint copies that you gave to us to each of our state representatives?
Okay.
And also to Michael Waltz, who is, at least he's my representative at the US Congress? Because these are federal dollars and I think our representatives need to know what those tax dollars went for, especially at the government. At the Congress, US Congress level, our US House Representatives and maybe our Senator. But especially to all of our state representatives throughout Volusia County. It's transparent. What it does, it shows them, look at the money we received. Look what we spent it on. Look how wonderful, what service we did for our students and all the way up to year 26, 27. Look how much more we could do for our students if we are funded. So quit, excuse me, I'm going on my tirade here. No more DCD baloney and quit cutting us money every year, like the 10.8 million dollars they cut us for this year. So just think what we could have done with that 10.8 million. And then of course, recurrence costs for 22, 23 is 13 million. We'll probably use, lose that in the DCD. So this maybe helps them fight for us a little bit more in Volusia County. Is that okay with you, Dr. Fritz? Okay, good. That's great. Okay, I, I'm sorry. I got a little excited there. Anyone else would like to speak? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
The only question I have, and I've had it from day one when we knew we were getting this money. You know, my biggest concern was that we would place items in here that would basically be reoccurring because it's just a one-time pot of money. So I think, Dr. Fritz, what I'll need to know, and it can be in one of our one-on-ones or whatever, is for everything in here that's reoccurring, what are we going to do when this money is gone and how are we going to?
I want to be very transparent. I'm not sure yet. I need to be very transparent with everybody here. This is a budget workshop meeting. The ESER monies are keeping us afloat. And so, you know, right now, we've not been able to, you know, lay up, we have not had to lay off any staff. We've made sure that we've kept things consistent. And, you know, when we get down the road, I hope we don't have to make hard decisions. But there may very well be that time that would have to happen. The goal for us going forward, that's why we do the things that we do with the allocation meetings. That's why we do what we do with the position review committees. And we're looking at utilizing entitlement dollars wherever we can. But you bring up a really, really strong point that, you know, if some of these concerns are there and some of the ESER is certainly keeping us afloat. If we didn't have it, we would be in a pickle. So good, good point, Ms. Haynes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Haynes, I'd like to also echo Dr. Fritz on that, that I received an email tonight from the Council of Greater Schools. I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. And it was to come to a session in November where the first topic is, how are we going to fund everything after ESER goes away? So it's not only a Volusia County schools problem, it is a problem for all schools, especially schools, you know, with, that may not necessarily have growing numbers of students with all of the concerns with empowerment scholarships, charters, everything like that. It's every, it's a global problem really. So very good question.
Yes, because from day one, when, you know, it, we found out we were getting it, my first thing was, it can't be things that are going to reoccur because we can't rely on this. It's a one-time pot of money. And what I know about a one-time pot of money is you enhance something, you actually put together something that is sustainable. You just can't, you know, you can't move salary. I mean, I understand right now we're doing some shifting, but you can't hire additional people when you don't have the support out of your general fund to pay them when the money goes away. And so I know that I've said that before and I'm going to keep asking because I just, I don't want to be in a situation a year from now or two years from now and it's, and then it's doom and gloom and what are we doing? I mean, it reminds me of when we hit the recession and we had to pink slip everybody that was less than three years' experience. I don't want to be there again. So what I think we need to do, and I think Kelly's team is doing a great job, we've got to get the positive message out of all of the wonderful opportunities in Volusia County. And, but I will say, I talked to the VOL group the other day and VOL, you know, we sat here last year and they had over 12,000 students and elementary was like 5,000 and I think elementary's down to around 300.
About 1250 total for K-12, 1250.
Yeah, so 1,250 total. So we went from over 12,000 to 1,250. And, you know, like I said, elementary went from 5,000 to I think like 300. And so our kids are coming back, you know, and they've been coming back ever since, you know, like January and December of last year. But we just, we can't, we can't lose any more of the children, especially to other options like private.
Which is why I suggested all that information go to those who make the decisions about funding.
Yes, I agree with you. Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert.
Ms. Burnett? Ms. Burnett?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen? Either one? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will continue then to 18, oh, I'm sorry, are you finished? You're done?
I'm done.
Okay, I just didn't want to cut you off. Thank you. 18.04, Presentation, General Fund, Tentative Capital Budget, Fiscal Year 2122. Dr. Fritz?
Hey, Ms. Snead, let's just jump right on in. This is our tentative and capital budget for your review.
So yes, this is our first public hearing, and we, I mean, we'll actually adopt a millage rate, tentative millage rate, and budget this evening, and then I'll come back to you on the 14th of September to do the final adoption. So after tonight, the millage rate that you adopt will go into the tax bills for the citizens, and then it'll be finally adopted. But just to give a real quick highlight from where we stand from the last time we spoke, again, we tie back to strategic plan, Goal Number Four, Resources and Operational Processes. Quick recap of the past two years, last year's budget dollars versus this year, we're now, you know, moving from the million-dollar budget range up to the billion-dollar range. And the growth there is primarily attributed to the issuance that we did for our certificates of participation for capital projects, and also the infusion of those dollars that came in from SRR. Again, I've mentioned before, but I just want to put it out there again, that for every dollar that we spend in the general fund, the majority of it goes to salaries and benefits. For every dollar, 80 cents goes to salaries and benefits, 13 cents goes to purchased services, 4 cents goes to materials and supplies, and 3 cents goes to energy. So we are heavily a organization that is people-driven. This slide you'll remember seeing previously, which just shows the impact of COVID on the number of full-time equivalents we have. Full-time equivalents is basically the number of, it's enrollment, but it's not exactly individuals, it's how it's being enrolled full-time. And we were at 62 pre-COVID, we dipped to 60, and we're projecting out to 61. Earlier, I had told you that that resulted in a loss of 11 million. It's now going to be a $10 million loss, and that's because we did have abhorrent tax growth in the community, and that helps offset some of that state revenue that we're losing because of the reduced students. However, we still do have, you know, declining enrollment and unfunded mandates. So again, the FTE loss of 10 plus the FRS rate increase, which I had mentioned was 2 million before, it's now coming at 2.5 million. And then these empowerment scholarships are estimated right now at 12.5 million. And those are basically children who are leaving and going elsewhere instead of to our school system. And we are projecting that the numbers there could potentially double. So that's a big hit on our budget. And all of these added up are $25 million hit. So modeling that out, essentially without using any SRR2 support, what that would mean is that we would have way more expenditures than we have revenues, and that would really drive our financial condition ratio to a dangerously low level of 1.98%. So what we did is, we decided that we would go back and look at those SRR dollars, and we would take that 10-point million that exists, 10.8 million that exists on the bottom there, and we would basically go back and scrub the general fund, remove expenditures from the general fund to try to help that situation. And what that ends up looking like is that we then still have a deficit, but it improves our financial condition ratio to almost 5%. So the tentative budget that I'm proposing to you tonight, which I'll bring back to you when I bring a final budget, I'll bring you a budget that at least has a 5% financial condition ratio. But tonight, I've got a budget for you at a 4.28, and that's primarily because really we didn't have any information on SRR2 until after we put this together. So we're already working on the second phase of it, but this was a conservative best approach that we could present to you tonight for the tentative. So lastly, if I were to look at all of the money, so the whole 34.4 million instead of just the 10.8, and I were to use all of that to help the general fund, I would, our budget would look a little bit better. It would be an 8.25% financial condition ratio ending. And still though, we're still in a position where we have more revenue, or, I'm sorry, we have less revenue than we have expenditures. And so what that means is that our financial condition ratio declines still. So we're going to have to really kind of look at that and figure out what we're going to do about that. So just to highlight, the FY '19 and '20 numbers are actuals. Those are ones you do an audit and you close out your books and you really know what you have, what it truly is. It's not a projection, it's actual. FY '21, that fiscal year has just ended, however, we're still in the process of cleaning everything up, and we'll have those final numbers for you by the time we come back in September. But we're estimating to come in, basically ending FY '21 somewhere between 8.8 and 12%. And that is because we took that money out of the general fund and put it over in SRR to build up our fund balance in the general fund to try to help with these losses that are going to occur. So we're trying to pre-plan and position ourselves in a better position. And then again, the budget, as I'm presenting it for the tentative, was, is reflecting a 4.28. So that's just, but I put the three scenarios there. I put the really worst-case scenario, the moderate scenario, which is what I included, and then the best-case scenario, if I were able to use every single penny of SRR to help the general fund, what we would look like. So, and then lastly, I just wanted to update you on the capital budget from the last time we presented it. We've removed the Career Center from the budget, and we've added some classroom additions to the budget. Other than that, the capital plan remains basically the same. So with that, I would like to entertain any questions you have. And then after that, I will move on, I think, to the formality of the resolutions that we have to read and adopt.
Where is the, I know I saw it before, the millage rate suggestion in the DCD?
It's the next.
It's the next one up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read those as part of the resolution.
Gotcha.
But just for the DCD, because that was something.
Well, I can wait, that's okay.
You can wait, okay.
Oh, sure, sure. I do have one question for you after the board members speak. Mr. Cologne?
So, can we go back a couple of slides? Let's go back, one, two, next, that's a good one, let's go to the next, no, one more over, to the right. Oh, that's the next one? We're going forward, forward. I'm sorry, forward.
Forward.
Forward one, 14, one more.
Keep going.
I love that. Keep going, next one over. And so what I want to highlight on this is, and yes, there were numbers on there, and we know that COVID has affected schools, has affected learning, has affected enrollment, and that's the reason the federal government put together these SRR dollars. You know, we went through something. And so while the budget is denoting, and mind you, we can't speak of money we don't have yet, but we know there's 100 and, there are about 100 and...
49 million is what we're estimating.
149 million dollars that are coming that are not a part of this equation because we cannot budget for what we don't have. But we know that money is coming. So despite the fact that, you know, we don't have that money in this calculation, we are technically, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, this is based on what we have in our pocket right now, knowing that 100 and some odd million dollars is coming to help close some of this gap. So if you notice, and then I say this for the benefit of the public, what we're, what you can see here is that our fund balance is actually going to end up being, after SRR is actually going to go up. Am I wrong?
If we use SRR to help our general fund, it will help, it will improve our fund, our financial condition ratio.
So our savings account's actually going to get, you know, potentially bigger. So while we are, we don't have the money in our pocket right now because SRR is a lot of after the fact, but I say that because, you know, I could already see tomorrow morning, oh, school district is in, and then they're going to need, I mean, that's what this money is for. It's designed to help us get through what COVID was. There's a reason why it's coming. So I am grateful for the fact that the federal government has stepped up, and they have done what's right in order to keep school districts, you know, going. Because the reality is that it's not only the money that we're, that we spent, it's the money that we're going to spend to close the gap that was created through this pandemic. So again, I appreciate the presentation, and, you know, like I said, I just want to be clear that, you know, this is not doom and gloom, we're going to be okay. You know, in fact, we're probably going to be better than we are today. But it's definitely not, this is not easy because, as you all saw in the presentation, there are buckets of money. One bucket can't be used for the other, can't be used for the other, can't be used for the other. And so while you have a lot of bucket, like one of the buckets was, you have $2 million to go find your missing kids. Well, I think we heard that our missing kids are, and so if you have $2 million in that bucket and something doesn't change, and there's not any loose language, guess what? You probably won't use those $2 million because it's in that bucket. I mean, am I wrong?
No, you're right. So, but we are trying to, since we've already done some work on that, what we're trying to do is say, well, the work we did on that already now applies to that.
Right.
And then there is some discussion that after you meet those requirements, if you haven't utilized all the money, that you may be able to use it, which is why I'm modeling, like on my bottom-line thing here, best-case scenario, that's why I'm modeling that I could actually improve the general fund more with that. And my, I'm not trying to be gloom and doom at all.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate what you're saying. I just want to make sure that we are kind of reflecting the reality of the situation, which is that SRR is helping us right now, but when SRR goes away, we're going to need some other kind of changes to have happened. It's either going to be that we're going to have had massive student enrollment growth that brings in lots of revenue that we don't have, or that, you know, the funding formulas change or something from a legislative standpoint. Because the FEFP, the funding formula basically is set up to be based on number of students and not like number of schools that you have and your operating cost. But some of the things that happen, like for example, with the empowerment scholarships, we might have two kids in this school who leave us and two here, and just like Mr. West pointed out to you, individually per school, it's a real small number, but collectively, it's a big number. Well, you don't get those economies of scale where you can shut down a school now because you've lost 100 kids, and that hurts us. And the FEFP formula is based on weighted FTE. So those are the kind of conversations that you, you all as a legislative body, you know, as a, as a governing body can have with the legislative people to kind of have those conversations.
Great. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Persis?
Now, I appreciate the fact that you do these individual teams' meetings with us, so she's answered all of my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Burnett?
Same with me. She, we spoke last week and answered questions. Thank you.
Ms. Haynes, thank you, Ms. Burnett.
I also appreciate the time that you take to meet with us individually and go over and answer any questions that we have prior to us getting here. And I also want to thank Dr. Shanoff for answering one of my questions about like the added space going in at Citrus Grove, because I didn't know about that. But really, you know, and I appreciate too that you're being honest with the numbers and showing us exactly where it's at. And, you know, I agree with Mr. Cologne, except that having been on the side where you're responsible for federal dollars, I don't ever trust them until it actually arrives because I've seen too many times that they put out what a number it's going to be, and then you don't get that amount. So I hear what they've said, but until it actually arrives here and it's in the bank for us to be able to spend, I'm not banking anything, so I appreciate your honesty in showing us where we were. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and it's in our budget book. I already asked, I already told you I was going to ask you. You know, that way she could have a good answer. It is in the all-fund summary, or even in the general fund. I guess it's probably a good idea to just go to the general fund. It's on page 10 of our booklets that we received. I just have a question. Most of all our expenditures are increased, which I can perfectly understand, but there's one decrease that I'm somewhat puzzled, and that's student services, transportation services. Because in the actuals 1920 school year, it was 16,275,586, and then the adopted budget in 2021 was 15,203. The actuals we spent was even less, 15,045. And then this year, our tentative budget is for 14,558 million. So I just wondered why, when gas is going up and mechanics and we're still purchasing buses, what, 20 per year, 15, 20 per year, why students, transportation services are going down in expenditures?
Okay, I'm going to get you that answer. I don't want to speculate tonight because I'm not 100% sure, but there are rebudgets and rollover encumbrances that impact the numbers sometimes. So it could be that, but I'll get back with you with an actual answer, and I'll share it with the rest of the board. Great question.
Thank you. And can I ask another question that I don't know has been resolved? I've asked, I've discussed it a couple of times, but I don't know. Are there bonuses for hires in here?
The bonuses?
Are we going to give bonuses for bus drivers who? Oh, is that, that's bargaining? Okay, thank you. Okay, I apologize, it's part of bargaining.
Yeah.
That I understand. Okay, thank you, Ms. Snead, I appreciate.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Now, what we did is, we took care of 1701. Remember, we asked to put 1701 after 18.04, which was what Ms. Snead just took care of. Ms. Schultz, do we have any cards on, from the public about our general tentative budget? Okay, thank you. So 1701 is, is, all right. 18.0, we have no 1805. All right, 19.01, oh, that was our certain, time-certain. Let's see, or is that the second one? Erin, is that the second one?
2001.
Okay, thank you very much. See, I told you she was extraordinary. 18.01, we are now entering our board action items in which we will have public comment before we vote on each action item. Board action item resolution, 202122, levying the tentative district ad, I never pronounce it correctly.
Abhorrent.
Thank you, thank you. I'll let you do that for me. Property tax millage rates for the fiscal year 2122. Dr. Fritz?
Ms. Snead, take it away.
All right, I'm required to read this resolution to you, so bear with me as I read as quickly as I can.
We know, we know.
All right. A resolution of the School Board of Volusia, Florida, levying the tentative abhorrent property tax millage rate for 2021-2022, required local effort, required local effort prior period adjustment, discretionary operating, additional operating for the general fund and district discretionary local capital improvement for the capital funds and debt service for the district debt service funds on all taxable property with in Volusia County, Florida for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022, stating that the percentage by which the millage rate to be levied is higher than the rollback rate, repealing all resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for a severability, providing for an effective date. Whereas the School Board of Volusia County, Florida is authorized under the Constitution and laws of Florida to levy a tax upon non-exempt real property lying and situated in Volusia County, Florida for public school purposes, and whereas the required public notice has been given and the public has been given an opportunity to be heard and to ask questions concerning the tentative millage rate for fiscal 2021 fiscal year, and whereas all matters required by law pursuant to the adoption of the tentative millage for 202122 have been accomplished, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Volusia County, Florida, in official session duly assembled in Deland, Florida this 27th day of July 2021 as follows, that the following millage rates be tentatively adopted for potential levy upon all taxable real property lying and situated in Volusia County, Florida for the fiscal year 202122. The, A, the required local effort millage of 3.59, the required local effort prior period adjustment of .005, the discretionary operating effort of .748, the discretionary local capital improvement of 1.500, and total millage rate of 5.802. The total millage rate for fiscal 2021 of 5.802 mills, as calculated excluding debt service rate of 0.000, is 2.51% higher than the rollback rate of 5.6598 mills computed pursuant to Section 200.0651 of Florida statutes. And that is the first resolution, and if anybody would like to know what any of that means, I'm happy to try to answer.
Mr. Cologne? Thank you, Ms. Snead.
So we go through this every year, and so the... And so the required local effort, is that something we set or is that set by the legislature?
That, that's a combination of property tax that we're required to impose in order to get the FEFP revenue, which is the Florida Education Finance Program revenue, so.
And so the reason this is a tax increase is not because we're taxing higher, it's because we're expecting that the property values went up. However, the rate of the local effort is actually set forth by the legislature, correct?
Correct. So if you look at our tax rate last year versus our tax rate this year, it's a decrease. However, as you stated, because the property values go up, there's a slight increase in taxes.
So am I hearing you say we decreased the taxes? But it's, we decreased the tax rate, however, it's going to be considered an increase because the property values have increased.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
I think we actually figured it out. It's about $27, didn't we?
Yes. It's on the average home. It's $27 for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Excellent point. Anyone else? Ms. Burnett?
Was there a specific reason why we're not going to rollback?
Specifically, I would say it's the deficit situation that I presented to you. You don't have enough revenue right now to fund the oper, the operating cost of the district. So rolled back would put us in a worse deficit situation.
Have we exhausted all of our, have we improved all of our efficiencies to, in order to, um, have we improved all of our efficiencies so that we could exhaust the money that we have first?
We are constantly working on that. I'm sure that there's efficiencies we can still recognize and we will continue to work on that. So the answer is, it's a continuous process of trying to improve. But again, going back to the 80% of our budget, you know, you can only squeeze so much operating money to try to deal with the, the heavy lift that we have, which is funding people and funding benefits for people.
Thank you. Ms. Burnett. Ms. Ms. Haynes?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So the 5.659 mills is from last year, correct? When it says, uh, the rollback rate of 5.6598 mills, that was 2021?
The, the millage rate this year that we're adopting is 5.802. And that, that is the, the one that we're proposing as the tentative millage. But if we were to go to rollback, in other words, if we were to cut ourselves back to the level of revenue that we had last year and not have the advantage of any of the revenue property value growth, that millage rate would be 5.698.
6598, yes. Okay. And the only way a school district can raise its millage rate of anything is to go before the voters. We are unlike the 16 municipalities that can set their own millage rate.
Absolutely.
School districts cannot do that.
Right. Right. If you compare our millage rates to the municipalities, like if you look over the past five years, our rate is just steadily declining.
Yes.
You probably won't see that with municipalities and local. It'll always be steady. The tax rate will stay steady.
And plus, they have different kinds of revenue that, that we do not have. They, um, the county council can collect beach, you know, tolls, and that's revenue. We, we can't do that. We can't even have a bake sale. So I always thought it was a good idea, let the Air Force have a bake sale and then we can collect the money when we sell the airplanes. But anyway, um, and also one thing, I didn't know if you knew, and I learned this a couple of years ago, that when we collect the taxes, it's collected by the county and then the county delivers it to us. But it's only the money that's collected. And sometimes, and last year, we were very concerned about this time last year, about the amount of people who would be delinquent in their taxes or would have lost their homes or had to vacate because of, of COVID and, and everything. So do we happen to know how we, what kind of percentage of the taxes?
That was, it, we, the, the collections were good. It wasn't really an issue.
Okay.
But the, the second item on here, the required local effort for prior period adjustment, that is, um, that is kind of a millage that allows us to make up for uncollected taxes from the previous year. So that's what that .005 prior period adjustment millage is.
Okay. So when the county collects the taxes, we get our share. Maybe they were able to collect 96% of the property owners. We then distributed the tax revenue to the charter schools, correct?
Yes.
They get 100%. So we even get the, we even lose more money because they get everything and we don't. So again, it's, it's always the shaving. And then when you take that and add in the DCD and then you add in a lot of the unfunded mandates, like the, I think the, um, the little things that the teachers are gonna have to, the alarm that teachers are gonna have to wear. I mean, that's an unfunded, unfunded mandate. Didn't we have to spend 1.8 million on that?
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that is why the school district is in financial difficulty. So, um, we just don't have the flexibility that municipalities have, correct?
Well, I was just gonna say, uh, you're gonna need two separate motions on this.
Yes. But I just wanted, um, to contribute to help, um, Ms. Burnett. I'm sure she knows a lot about, you know, the Port Orange and municipality and taxes, you know, through your, your husband, Mayor. And of course, you know a lot of that because you were on the county council and your wife's on a, on a Orman Beach Commission. But school districts are run so differently and, and that's much to our chagrin.
So may I ask another question?
Sure, certainly. Please do.
So if we were to go to rollback, is, just hear me out. If we were to go to rollback, how, how would that affect us next year when we brought this budget towards us?
How would it affect next year?
For the same proposal next year. How would it affect our proposal next year for?
Well, you would, basically, you're setting a lower tax rate. So your rollback would then probably be the same situation where if next, so if you set the lower tax rate, the rollback rate, and next year you have property tax growth, in order to go to rollback next year, your rollback rate's gonna even be lower than rollback this year. So you're, you're kind of, I mean, you're, you're cutting your revenue growth that you, that you legally have.
But if, if we're not allowed to set our rate, how, that's, that's more of where my question is.
We do have some, we have, do have some discretion to set our rate. There's some discretionary millages that we have. So that's where you can cut it back to rollback to, to basically reduce your revenue down to the level of last year. But I, I don't know if I explained that right. But so if you reduce it though, it's, it's not like next year you're gonna come in and be able to keep rollback and bring the same revenue unless you don't have any property tax value growth, which hopefully isn't gonna happen and there's no indications of that right now based on, you know, the, the growth in the real estate market, the values of real estate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Nead? Okay, thank you. Dr. Fritz?
I have a little paragraph I get to read too. Not as long as yours, Ms. Nead. Superintendent recommends the approval of resolution 2021, 22 of the School Board of Volusia County, Florida, levying the tentative ad valorem property tax millage rate for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Requiring local effort, requiring local effort prior period adjustment, discretionary operating, additional operating for the general fund discretionary, or district discretionary local capital improvement for the capital funds and debt services for the district debt services fund on all taxable property within Volusia County, Florida for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent for resolution 2021-22, levying the tentative district ad. Say it again, Mr. Penley.
Ad valorem.
Ad valorem. Thank you, Mr. Persis. Uh, property tax millage rates for the fiscal year 21, 22. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
The motion has been made by Mr. Persis. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Cologne. Any further discussion? Thank you. Uh, Ms. Schultz, are there any cards?
No.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
It has passed four to one. The nay vote is Ms. Burnett. Thank you very much. 20.02, board action item, resolution 21, uh, 2021-23, adopting the tentative Volusia County Schools' operating budget for the fiscal year 21, 22. Dr. Fritz?
And Ms. Nead, why don't you just keep going?
Alrighty. Resolution 2021-23, a resolution of the School Board of Volusia, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year 2021, 22 for the general fund, capital projects fund, debt service fund, special revenue fund, food service fund, special revenue fund, other federal programs, special revenue fund miscellaneous, and internal service fund of the School Board of Volusia County, Florida, repealing all resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Whereas the School Board of Volusia County, Florida is, is authorized under the Constitution and laws of Florida to levy a tax upon non-exempt real property lying and situated in Volusia, Florida for public school purposes and adoption of a tentative budget. And whereas the required public notice has been given and the public has been given an opportunity to be heard and to ask questions regarding the tentative budget for fiscal 21, 22. And whereas all matters required by law pursuant to the adoption of the tentative budget for 21, 22 have been satisfied, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Volusia County, Florida hereby adopts the tentative budget, which contains the following funds and appropriations for the fiscal year 2021, 22. General operating, $5,433,138,879. Capital projects, $345,855,437. Debt service, $51,203,364. Special revenue food service, $44,513,337. Special revenue other, $45,383,08. Special revenue miscellaneous, $45,303,694. Internal service fund, $13,515,991. For a total of $1,888,849,010. Passed and adopt, well, I don't say that last part. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Fritz?
Superintendent recommends the approval of resolution 2021-23 of the School Board of Volusia County, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 for the general fund, capital projects fund, debt service fund, special revenue fund, food service fund, special revenue fund, other fund, and internal service fund.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent for resolution 2021-23, adopting the tentative Volusia County Schools' operating budget for the fiscal year 2021, 22. Is there a motion?
Can, before we make a motion, can I just let you know that my staff is listening and corrected? Uh, I verbally read 5.59 on the millage rate for the previous resolution. And it's written, and it, I should have said five, I'm sorry, I'm saying five, I really meant. I said that it was 3.59, but it should be 3.549. So I need to make that correction. And I don't know, um, Attorney Dorn, if we need to have another motion. But the millage has to be adopted before the budget. And since I made an error on what I stated, I just wanna correct that for the record.
But it's correct in the document.
It is correct in the document.
Okay, we don't need to.
We're good? Okay, cool. Thank you.
The fact that you pointed it out, we'll cover it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nead, for your transparency and your department who always backs you up. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, uh, it was moved by Mr. Persis and seconded by, uh, Mr. Cologne. Remember, this is tentative. It's a tentative budget. Uh, Ms. Nead, before we vote, when will we vote for a final budget?
On September 14th.
September 14th. Thank you. So we have a period of time to analyze it for more public input. Okay. Ms. Schultz, are there any cards for this? Thank you. And the cards I'm asking for is for public participation, if anyone wants to discuss it. Okay, any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is carried five to nothing. Ms. Nead, we greatly appreciate your participation tonight. Couldn't do it without you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, 20.03, board action item, contract purchase of Trinity Methodist Church. Dr. Fritz?
I'm gonna ask Mr. Penley to come up and kinda go through the action. Board members, as, as you know, when we've toured the facility with, with some of you, the Trinity Church adjacent to our property, um, it was listed for sale. And so we did tour that. And for reasons that I'll share with you and publicly, um, I have Mr. Groob up here as well. As we have, as we have grown, our staff at the DAC building has also grown. But you gotta realize that the, the original DAC building was, was staffed for a much smaller school system. So when we look around, um, we have an IT department that's pretty crammed together. We have district employees that are in portable buildings all over. And when I say portables, I mean portables, um, all over the district. And as we move in and we saw like with the DOJ right now, we do believe there's gonna be an importance with our ESC to keep that very centralized and have our folks here. And so the challenge is always space. And so we did go forward and walk the building and felt like since it was so close and it was right here, that it would be something fruitful. But I'll let Mr. Penley go through and give some more specifics. Mr. Penley?
Thank you, Dr. Fritz, Madam Chair, board members. To give you a little background on the proposed contract, we were approached in April or May of this year by our contiguous neighbor here at the corner of Wisconsin and Clara, a 1.3 acre parcel adjacent to our parking lot and to the Brewster Building comprised of the church building and offices of the Trinity Methodist Church. The church at that time was interested in pursuing purchasers and moving their location at some point in the future and offered the property to us unsolicited at that time for consideration if we might want to. Within a couple of days, not even a week, they had two other offers on the property. And there was concern at that time about what other ventures might be located adjacent to our property here at the Deland Administrative Center, causing us to, uh, begin preliminary negotiations with the church body. It took some period of time because the, uh, local congregation and the district administrative staff for the United Methodist Church Florida Conference had an opportunity to, to look at, uh, making a, a proposed offer. So the contract that is before you for purchase and sale is in the amount of $995,000, including all of the buildings and appurtenances and the 1.3 acres. The buildings, uh, comprise approximately 26,000 square feet. There is a 90-day contingency in the contract for due diligence of inspection and suitability. We can, uh, with permission of the seller, go in, conduct necessary testing and suitability measures from the facilities department. But based on that preliminary negotiation, uh, the, and those provisions in the contract, the seller has issued a draft contract executed on their part. So it's up to the board to make a decision as to whether it wishes to accept, accept that contract and move forward. Mr. Groob has done some analysis on space requirements and that sort of thing and could answer any questions in that regard.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Burnett?
Um, sure. And, and I know Mr. or Dr. Fritz and I spoke about this a little bit. But how, how does the purchase of this relate, affect with our strategic plan and our, and our mission as a school?
Well, I'll tell you, it's, it's, it's space. The really, you know, if I had to say it was tied to any part of our plan, it would be goal four, um, for our efficiency of use. Portables, for example, are extremely expensive. One of our goals right now is to get rid of all leased portables. It's something that we, uh, we pay for. And I gotta tell you, it's one of those things that you pay for that just irks you. I mean, when you pay for a leased portable and a leased space, you end up paying more than the, the portable's ever worth over time. And so we're trying to get out of that business. Dr. Shanoff is doing a really good job of condensing portables. We'd much rather have more permanent space for us and our folks. And, and here's the reality, um, we're not getting any smaller. You know, I, our county is gonna continue to grow. We see the construction. It's gonna be requiring more schools at times. And for us to build a centralized staff, I, I think of the area around Atlantic High School where we have so many, um, district staff and employees. Right now, Amanda Wiles, for example, Right now, Amanda Wiles, for example, is-- she doesn't have it, she's the executive director of RESE, and she sits at a table in a portable, surrounded by other people, and there's about 12 people in this one portable that are sharing a space. It's very collaborative. However-- Look on the bright side, right? Yeah. However, you know, there's a need for us to build, to bring people together, to be more centralized, and to take the portables like that and be done with them. I mean, there's no value on a portable over time. It's very much like a mobile home, it depreciates over time. So if you ask me where it would go, it would really be go for, and for us to look at savings of having a more permanent structure.
Thank you. I have a couple more. And so when you talk about getting rid of the portables and trying to centralize people together, what is the dollar amount of savings that we're going to experience from the purchase versus getting rid of these other portable?
Well, we are still analyzing the portable situation. I would love to give you a hard answer, but I don't have it. You know, you'll cut the electricity and the utility expenses that you have in the portable, plus you'll cut that facility completely out. Dr. Sanoff is going through, he's looking for that, I've asked for a report from him to take all those extra portables and determine which ones we can actually start just cutting out. We can come back to you for certain on that, as far as what kind of savings it's going to be, but I don't have it this evening.
Okay. And how does this affect our current projects with repairs needed at schools and other buildings that are drastically needed?
Well, the other projects that are part of our five-year plan we're continuing. Tonight, for example, you saw the career-- that we had budgeted for a career center that was about $15 million, and we decided to go a different direction, which is why we have the partnership now with ATC, and we're starting to use that facility and that partnership with Daytona. So that's $15 million going back into that. It is-- this is a $995,000 hit to the capital budget. No school projects will be delayed because of this, I can assure you that school projects are the priority, and that's why we have that five-year plan and the Oversight Committee as far as helping us gauge what the priorities are. But you know, this would be one that, you know, we would go through and with the 90-day appraisal for-- or, sorry, the 90-day inspection, we would look at that, and we would, if there were blatant concerns, we would come back to this board and let you know. I mean, we're not going to-- if we have to go in and throw millions into a building, then we don't really want to proceed. But what we want to do, though, is build to make sure we can get that inspection going. You know, the ideal location of this is, you know, what everything you're going to do is save fuel on individuals. Realize when our employees have to go from one facility to another, we're having to compensate for that. If we can have a 26,000-square-foot facility right here next to Brewster and DAC, and we can start to centralize and bring some of those people in those remote areas here, it's going to be less travel time on the road, too. So, you know, I-- the board, you know, it really is your pleasure. I mean, we were approached, it wasn't anything that we went and did. You know, we walked it, it seemed like a good idea at the time, as we walked it and realized our situation with our space, but ultimately, it is your decision.
And did the Oversight Committee, were they involved in any of this, or have they been asked to be involved?
No, I don't think so, because this was new-- this was already established property in that they usually work on the renovations and new properties. But Dr. Sanoff, maybe you can answer that. I don't think the Oversight Committee's been involved in any of this.
It's not Hafnsen Sales Tax.
What's that now? It's not, right?
The proposal would not include the use of the Hafnsen Sales Tax.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're good. We got it, thanks. Just giving you some stretch exercise.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Cologne?
So, I have a question, and I asked this earlier, and I didn't follow through and ask again, but do we have an appraisal for this property?
Yes, there was an appraisal completed in May of this year.
Can you forward, because again, not having walked the property, and I understand Ms. Haynes did, but you know, it's very hard to say, okay, let's vote on something that I have not seen an appraisal on to know what it's worth, number one, and number two, I am very, very, very concerned on the condition of the building and the amount of money in addition to the million dollars that it's going to cost. And so between seeing the appraisal and really, really relying heavily on that inspection to determine what, I mean, as we know, we just talked about, what was the school we just talked about? Bonner? Which is the one we did for the-- it was Bonner, that we talked about, it was such an old building.
Oh, the Child's Academy.
Yeah, the Child's Academy, it was Bonner. You know, and so that church is an old building, and so what would it cost to make it? You know, churches enjoy exemptions for ADA, if it's a historic building, what would it cost for us to, because we don't enjoy those exemptions, and that would change. So, you know, there's a lot at hand here, but you know, again, I really, really like to see the appraisal, and then again, I weigh heavily on that inspection, and that if we're going to spend a crazy amount of money, then, you know, as much as it sounds like a good idea, it may end up being a money pit, which I'm not in favor of. So if someone can forward that to me, that would be awesome.
It was my understanding that you had, but I'll be glad to make sure to get another copy.
Please, yeah, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Mr. Persis?
Yeah. Reuben said many of the things that I was going to say, the same concerns I have about it. So I think on the plus side, it's in a good spot, because it's close to everything here. But I would be concerned about the money it would cost to repurpose it, and, you know, how we are going to repurpose that church into something that we could use, and the cost, the cost of doing that. But if you're just looking for us tonight to vote, to kind of get the process rolling so that you can take a hard look at it, and then I guess you would be coming back to the board and then saying, well, this is how much it's going to cost for us to use it, is that?
Yes, that's correct. This will start the 90-day discovery period for us to due diligence.
Okay.
We have toured the building, we've taken a cursory look at everything, obviously we didn't do an in-depth inspection, that would be what we would do next.
Right.
And determine just what the extent of the issues are and what we would have to do to bring it up to code and to bring it up to repurpose it for our use.
Yeah, my-- the city of Ormond Beach just went through something like this with the church, and they decided no, because it was in such terrible shape, so, and it was going to cost so much. So I want to just be assured that if you come back 60 days from now and you tell us it's going to cost, you know, whatever it's going to cost, and we decide that's too much, we just can walk away from this without any cost to the school district.
That's right. This is a 90-day contingency inspection period in the contract.
Okay. Then I'm fine with just finding out more.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Haynes?
So I've had the-- prior to even this happening, I had been over there, because the church, you know, ran a pre-K center, so I had been in and seen that in recent years. I'm also very familiar with, you know, our Brewster facility, I've been in that on all levels, and every little nook and cranny, which is kind of crazy if you've never been over there.
There are a lot of nooks and crannies.
Yeah, there's, you know, because that, as well as this building, are old school buildings. I mean, 35 years ago, when I came here, DAC was actually run out of a portable down the street.
That's right, me, too.
Yeah, Stone Street, well, the Stone Streets were the first.
Yeah, I mean, that's where you went and filled out an application and got fingerprinted and everything. So when this topic came up, I did ask to go and tour the current facility to just see what had changed in the facility from when I had been in it prior, and Mr. Penley was gracious enough, you know, he met me over there, and we walked the whole thing. So to go back to what Mr. Cologne said about like what we just did for Child's Academy, the Bonner facility, you know, I've been in the Bonner facility many times, but I have to be honest with you, I was never allowed upstairs from the first time I went there. We were able to walk this entire, like, it's night and day, okay? We were able to walk this entire facility, there was no part that they said, oh, you can't go into that part because it's not safe, or whatever, unlike the Bonner. I, too, though, said from day one, you know, what does the appraisal look like? You know, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a corner lot piece of property right here in downtown Deland, and if you've kind of been around downtown Deland, there's not a lot, I mean, look at where they built the Marriott, you know? There's not a lot of space left here in downtown Deland, and if we even look at what pricing is right now, I'm just going to use an example of a neighbor that's down around the corner from my home in DeBarry. It was a 1959 home, so it was built in 1959, which they did build, you know, homes really well at that time. He and his wife bought it in 1972, they paid $27,000 for it in 1972. They just put it on the market two months ago, they listed it, and keep in mind, it's 1,049 square feet. They listed it for 225, and it sold for 245. That's kind of what's happening with property right now. So my interest in it was, it finishes off our area, because it's sitting on, I mean, it's just right there. We've used their parking, you know, at times for years, and they've been gracious enough to allow us to park there. They've even allowed us to use the facilities to do some trainings and things like that. Yes, I want to know what the appraisal is, I'm with all of you on that, because property does keep going up, but I also need to know, like, if they can do a thorough inspection, come back and tell us, you know, is it stable, is it sturdy, what will we have to do? So I'm open tonight to just seeing all of that, especially since there's a clause that says we have 90 days to do this in, and then if we see that it's not viable, we can back out without any penalty. I mean, even if you go right now and you put forth money in the thought that you want to buy a house, nine times out of 10, you don't get that money back. So, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Penley's done and set it up that we can do this, and I think it's something that we need to take a long, hard look at, because some of us have been around long enough to know that the original plan was when they were shutting EDC down, which was behind Campbell and Turi-T, we were going to build out here on 44 across from the Daytona-Deland campus, which we own that property, but all that got axed, and we're paying leasing on portables that, you know, aren't even in great condition. I mean, we've got some, we've got some of our employees in spots that are not great, so I just would like the chance to look at it. That doesn't mean that I'm sold on the fact that that's what we need to do, I think we just need to gather all of the facts.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, you know, if you've lived in a subdivision or a neighborhood, and there's a lot next to your house, and someone knocks on the door and says you want to buy it, that's where we're at. We weren't looking at it, they were good neighbors. But, you know, one of the things that I've noticed is the need, you know, we have a need, and we have people all over the place. If I need Nancy Wade, I got to give her a good hour to get here, because she's all the way over on the other end of the world. And so, I mean, it's okay, and listen, you know, there are bigger fish to fry.
Needed the golden port orange the other end of the world.
I hear you.
There are bigger fish to fry for me as a superintendent. Goal number one is way more important, but I will share with you that, you know, the first question I had asked Kevin, too, was, you know, do we have a time period to be able to get out of this thing, and that's when we got the 90 days. So, you know, if I had to make a decision right now and it was a done deal, I wouldn't be so easy to come to you all and say, let's do it, but my thought is, let's just get in there and really analyze it. I did walk it with Kevin, and I saw that there was possibility for space, there were some meeting areas for folks where they could come together, there were some suite areas that we could bring people together, so, like I was talking about earlier, and so there was some functionality of the building. But, you know, again, goal number one is way more important to me.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Penley, for researching all of this, taking care of all the legalities of it, because your hours are very precious to us that you devote to this. And, Mr. Groob, I trust your expertise implicitly in your staff, and I think when you are in there and looking at it, I think you'll give us a realistic view. He can say, no, it's not good, correct?
Yeah, in fact, that's what I want him to do, I mean, we've all owned properties. You want someone to walk in there and tell you exactly what's not right. If plumbing's not right, if there's something, asbestos in the walls, if the AC unit's bad, I want to know it.
Yeah.
And then I also want to know how much it's going to cost to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it could be three times, four times, as much as the property itself. And who knows? It's very important for us, the structure, the engineering, and how much it costs to heat. I mean, it may not have a whole lot of insulation. And I know through walking through a lot of your renovations, you have great ideas going through, was it, Pathway-- no, Pathways, Pine Hills? Pine Hills Elementary? Is it Pine Hills?
Pine Trail.
I don't know.
Up in Ormond?
Pine Trail.
Pine Trail, I knew there was an L in there. Pine Trails. I mean, the renovations at that school were marvelous, and I toured New Smyrna Beach Middle School last week with Mr. Groob and his staff and Welbro Construction Management, and it's just awesome. So our staff is very, very equipped, their expertise is there, so I trust you very much to give us a very accurate, worthwhile.
Why don't we do this, full transparency? Why don't you come back and bring the inspection report to this board table?
We'll do that, yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be marvelous.
Fully objective, we'll lay it out the way we see it.
Yeah, because I, too, think about our employees over at Brewster and a lot of portables, because I've been here 35 years, and when I moved here from Cincinnati, portables up, well, we called those big things colonies, okay? And then when I called the portable to find out, and it was Mr. Persis who was working there, that's when I met Mr. Persis, that was the very first time, to turn in my teaching information, and I said, this is called a portable? Because we call those toilets. Those little square things, those were called portables. And so when I applied to Volusia County Schools, I thought, portable? And that's where I had to turn in all my paperwork? Oh, my gosh, the vision. But anyway, I just want to say thank you, and that's how important vocabulary is. So, thank you for your expertise. So I guess I'm in favor of moving forward so that we can have an inspection in order to give our employees a little better space. They, too, just like our teachers, just like our students--
We have public input.
--are there as well. I'm sorry, sir, yes, sir?
They're gone.
Okay, all righty, thank you. But we will do that, okay? And I'll-- okay, thanks.
I have the Hafnsen recalc.
No, no, that's our good slide. Okay, okay. All right, so, Dr. Fritz, you have a recommendation?
Do you want-- is the comment for this?
We don't have a motion yet.
This comes after the motion has been made.
Okay. The superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of the 1.3-acre parcel adjacent to the DAC building for the purpose of administrative office expansion.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the purchase of Trinity Methodist Church. Is there a motion? You've heard the recommendation, the superintendent?
So, Madam Chair, before I vote, I've got to see this appraisal, I can't vote on something I have not, don't have the information.
Appraisal for 995.
I understand that, but again, not having been there, I'm very challenged with saying, you know, I trust you, but I would like to see the appraisal, and we've gone through this before, thankfully you weren't here, Dr.-- Mr. Groob, back when, but we said with any new property, we would like to see the information, and so I think that's the responsible thing to do. Again, I just, this is a million dollars. So, I mean, I don't know if anybody else wants to see it, if I'm alone, then I'm alone, then--
That'd be great.
If they could just forward it to us, if we could see it, look at it real quick and--
I'll get that.
That's my thought.
Okay, the document that's before us, that was loaded up on Board Docs, it says that we have to have an answer by July 31st to them?
That's the current contract, yes.
Okay, so if we do not have the appraisal, and if we don't have enough votes, and, you know, to make a motion or to second it, do we lose that opportunity to purchase?
I don't know the answer to that. Right now, it was drafted for this meeting and went to, as I said, this has been through some effort with their church council and their conference council as well, and this, I got it back and put it on the first agenda after receiving it.
I just want to see the appraisal.
Okay. Mr. Persis?
I was just going to suggest, Madam Chair, maybe we could hear the public comment, and then maybe by that time, we could have the appraisal.
That's fine, if you would, I don't mind. Usually, we have the motion, the second--
I understand.
--and before we vote. That's okay, if that's, is that all right with you, to hear the comment? Absence beforehand. Okay. Okay, I'll call. This is Ms. Kim Short would like to come down and have her three minutes. Gentlemen, we'll be right back with you.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. So just a couple of facts because I had a chance to talk to some people. This is not the first time the church has approached the district. In fact, over the past 20 years, the, this church has actually approached the district several times. And every single time, under every administration, they have turned it down because they've been smart enough to recognize that getting in the business of buying a church is going to benefit the church. And the drama that's going to be associated with this is only going to hurt you. The historical people are going to go nuts if you try to rip it down. It costs two and a half to three times what it would cost to just build new, to renovate and make it what you need. And I know that because my whole family is a family of people in demolition. Ms. Marnasio and I, I'm sure we're on the same page here. This is one of the worst ideas I've ever heard come before any board. And I've been listening to board meetings and attending them since November 2012. So I need everybody to like, let that sink in for a minute because I've never been so frustrated with an idea as I have with this one. You all need to say no. We are on, we are in declining enrollment. We have no idea what's going to happen. I don't care what anybody says. We have no idea if the kids are going to return or what's going to happen. I understand adults are uncomfortable. I've been over there to where, where Ms. Wiles's office is to talk to Lita Grillo this summer. So I get it. It's, it's not, this is not ideal for anybody. It's also not ideal for any of our children. And, and I sat there in a workshop, listening from home on 67, the whole tentative capital budget workshop. Everybody here has projects extra to the five-year plan that they want to see happen in their schools because we've got, we want a brand-new enterprise. We want this, we want the, everybody wants everything. There's wants and there's needs. We are, we are way worse, if you talk to people like Pat Drego, than we were 20 years ago in enrollment and in the quality of where our buildings are and our facilities. This is not something that we want to go down. And I, I would also say to you guys, you know, I went through the strategic plan. I think it's a stretch to say that it's somehow related because it's not. You know, we, we've got, we're, we're talking about wanting people in offices. When I'm listening to, when you guys are talking through the goals today, we're, we're rating right now where we only have 1% of our teachers that need improvement. 57% are effective, 42% are highly effective. Yet when our staff is out reviewing them, they're saying that only, what, 67%? Is that where my number is? 67% of them are, are doing it where it's aligned to instruction? As far as I'm concerned, nobody should be sitting in an office. We should all be out in the schools and figuring out what's going on. So, yeah, I'm, I have to say, I haven't been this mad in a long time. Terrible idea.
Thank you, Ms. Short. Thank you very much, Ms. Short. All right, gentlemen, come on back. How are you feeling, Mr. Penley? You all right?
I'm sorry?
Okay, you have heard the comment from Ms. Short. You've heard Mr. Cologne's concern as well as Mr. Persis. You've heard from Mr. Penley as well as Mr. Groob and Dr. Fritz. What is the pleasure of the board? Okay, I can back up. The superintendent has made a recommendation. I asked for a motion that, and Mr. Cologne spoke. He said he would prefer not to have a motion at this point because we do not have an appraisal. Is there, are any more comments?
Are we able to get it?
Did you get an appraisal? I mean.
I'm sorry, sir.
Is it just a matter of an email being forwarded to somebody?
That I, I don't know. Is there paperwork for an appraisal?
Mr. Penley has the appraisal. He can certainly email it to the board if you guys like to look at that first. So be it.
We, we have an electronic version. We're happy to provide.
Please.
Yeah, I'm looking for it right now. I just need, I just need to find it. It's not popping up here, but we do have the appraisal. I apologize. I can't put my fingers on it right at the moment.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to the next one and come back to that one.
Is it okay? I mean, it's, it's a little after 9:00. Can we take a 10-minute break while you locate that?
Perfect.
For us, and we'll come back at 9:15. Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome back. We took a little extra five minutes to have more conversation. So what we're going to do, we're going to pull this board action item for right now, 20.03, for further review. So we will not have it brought forth tonight. So our district's going to do a little more research.
Do we need to vote on that?
I'm sorry?
Are we voting to table it? Is it basically tabled?
Uh, yes, we're tabling it. We can table it.
Yeah, you guys want a formal vote?
Well, it's on the agenda, so we have to vote.
So, and there's no mo- no motion has been made yet, so we're okay.
You're making recommendations, so either way, I'm good, but...
It's on the agenda, so we do have to...
Yeah.
All right, make a motion to table it.
Should I make a motion that we table this item?
Is there a second?
Yeah, are we saying until August 10th?
August 10th.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Okay, a motion's been made by Mr. Cologne and seconded by Mr. Persis to table this mo- uh, this board action item 20.03. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The, the motion is carried, so we will table it this time. Thank you, Mr. Penley.
Thank you.
20.04, board action item, request to advertise policy 521 Wellness Policy. Mr. Fritz, Dr. Fritz.
Well, we'll turn it right on over to Mr. Penley. Mr. Penley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Fritz, members of the board. This is, we're bringing forward as advertised, policy 521, the wellness policy, the updates and revisions required annually on this. It simply addresses the nutrition and FDA requirements, updating our policy to be in conformance with FDA standards for nutrition. It also includes revisions for fundraisers, school-sponsored fundraisers, physical activity requirements per updates in the statutes over, and regulations over the previous year, including physical education in high schools, and a recommitment to a tobacco-free campus. Ms. Fisher is here with Ms. Rowland's staff if you have any specific questions about these requirements, but there have been no changes made since this was first read as a revision to the policy 521 and has been advertised for the required statutory period.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Rose Rowland.
Hi, how are you? This is a policy that has to be re-submitted every year, and what each district has to have is a wellness team. And each school has their own wellness team, and right now, those teams have not been completely established. They open it up for new members each and every year, and they monitor the sugary drinks that are, they cannot be sold at school. They host physical activities, they host physical events and walks or runs to keep the staff and the children healthy. So each school has their own wellness team that they have at their personal schools. Also, there's a community-wide wellness team as well. It's called the School Health Advisor Committee, and this includes community members, our staff members, it includes students, and so it is a community-wide effort. We have community members that apply. They don't apply, they volunteer to be on this team. We even had a student from New Smyrna Beach High School, that was in 11th grade, that wanted to be the president, but she wasn't old enough. So it does involve students, community members, and staff. From Halifax Hospital, we had Department of Health members that are on those teams, so it is a community-wide effort. So we have a school health advisor committee, and we have a school base and a countywide school health wellness policy committee members.
What we were thinking about, Board, just like we've done many times when we've asked you to put together a committee for us, is we were looking at you for recommendations, and we would come to you and ask for three representatives, and then we would also have our, several district representatives as well. And so if this policy gets approved for this advisory council, then that's where we would go with it.
On that advisory council, we now, we have Hilda D'Amelio, Debbie Fisher's on there. There is Grace Kellamore, that's on there from our district. Evelyn Kekamonas, let's her name up, she works in our Volusia County School Ca- Caf- Wait, Caf- Wait, Schoolway Cafe. Diane Martin Morgan, she's our school social working coordinator, she works there. Mary Alice Myers, who's retired, she was on the committee. Nick Prince is on the committee. Jose Rivera, who's no longer with us, he was on the committee. So we do have quite a few of our staff members that are on that committee. And we have like three individuals from the Department of Health. We had a guy, Steve Parrish, that was on there from Halifax Health. So we do have a wide range of community members that are part of this committee, and it's opened up every year. And they're in a rebuilding phase right now, because Steve Parrish was the president, and he resigned at this point, but they have met since he left, and they're going to reestablish this committee, will find a president for this committee beginning, beginning in the new school year. But anybody that wants to join, feel free to let myself know, or Mr. Ruben Cologne, since you're in the medical field, feel free. Any board member that wants to join us, please do. It is open to the community at wise, at large. If anyone wants to join, you're free, you feel free to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rowland.
Okay.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Cologne?
You mentioned three members from each of us, is that what I heard? Was I understood?
Yes, yeah.
So we will get to that.
Okay.
You know, I would just recommend, when you think about the members, either, you know, they don't have to, but something you may want to consider is somebody at an elementary, middle, high type of level, or you could even go with folks in the community that have medical background, that's fine too. It's just, if you're thinking of school personnel, the reason we ended up on three is we just wanted to give you that option.
Okay. How often do you meet?
Say that again.
How often do you meet?
The school kind of established their own, their own timeline for meeting, but the community-wide committee meets once a month.
Okay.
Cool.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Burnett?
You, when you were speaking, you mentioned about it was open to the community and they just needed to apply, is that going to be...
Not necessarily apply, they can just make, they can come join the meetings, um, once they get it advertised online on our website, they can come and just join the meeting. It's not, where you apply, it's all voluntary.
Okay.
So it's not necessary that you apply, it's voluntary.
I apologize.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to say apply, but you can join the committee, yes.
I just want to make sure that people are aware it's out there, and they have the opportunity to, to come forward and be part of this. As we've learned over the last year, there's a lot of people who, who now are trying to become more involved in the community than our schools.
Right, being healthy.
And then, in, in the policy, I noticed too, that it said that there was health screenings that are, that are done. What are the health screenings that are performed?
Um, we do vision, hearing, we do scoliosis exams, we do weight and body, BMI screenings, so there's several screenings that we do. And we do flu shots at the schools, and so there are several things that go through this committee that we take care of.
And are all of those advertised and permission slips?
Yes, they're advertised, yes.
And permission slips are sent for everything?
Yes.
Even the, the eye screenings and...
Yes. Each school gets, we put flyers with each school, each nurse at the schools when the kids come in. If there's a child that continuously is ill, that nurse will give that parent a referral to go to a doctor free of charge, to make sure that child is seen if there's a medical issue. But when we have screenings, we do put flyers in every school, um, to make sure that it is known that, you know, the vision bus is coming, or the dental bus is coming, and the hearing, vision screenings are coming. So the schools are made very aware of what is happening. And most principals send out a, a message to their entire staff, their entire families, to let them know that the screenings are happening. And we give them like a month's notice, so it's not, they're caught by surprise, it's well in advance that they're made aware, they are made aware of it.
Thank you. It sounds like it's very good for some of the students that don't have, are not able to take advantage of maybe seeing a routine doctor, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Ms. Burnett. Ms. Haynes?
The only thing, I had a question about...
You need to speak a little closer, there you go.
The only thing I had a question about was, under the part where it says the maximum number of school days to conduct exempted fundraisers, I see that we've done it on a staggered approach, but is there like a real reason why we only give elementary five days? You know, then we go to middle and junior and give them 10, senior, you know, our high schools get 15, and then it says, but if you're a combination school, you get 10. Is, is there some reason why there's not some consistency with that? Because I know that the fundraiser piece, you know, brings in addition, you know, brings in additional money for things that they can do on campus, or they can take kids on field trips, or it helps supply some of our athletic things. So what's the reasoning behind, you know, having it as a staggered instead of everybody having the same amount?
I don't know if there's a reason that it's staggered. They usually give more to the secondary because you're dealing with more students in the schools, and so they kind of add more days to it because of the number of students that are in each school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Some of our wellness policy activities show up at the fact fairs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that's a great source. If you've never been to a fact fair, we have four per year.
Yes.
A different, two on the west, two on the east side. And I've always gone to the one at New Smyrna Beach Middle School, and it's fabulous. All the programs and the giveaways, I mean, people walk out with big grocery bags full of things. It's, there, there's an awful lot of really nutritious, educational, I guess, programs that the county, the school district offers, programs that I didn't even realize that we supported, and also some of our affiliate business partners, like Easter Seals, and what are some of the other companies?
There are usually 50 to 75 vendors. Easter Seals is there, we have, um...
Police departments there.
Yeah, yeah, sheriffs departments, police departments there, hospitals are there.
Library.
So library, so there's a ton of visitor, vendors that are at those events, and the families really do appreciate it because there are bags of grocery, there are bags of school supplies, there's different things they can get at these fact fairs. They get information about schooling, about college, and so this high schools come and put boards up and express what they have at their schools, their academies, you know, the advanced programs, whatever they have, they display it at those fact fairs. So the parents can go to that one place and get most of what they need while they're at those fact fairs. And there's employees that are there to answer their questions on the spot if they happen to have them while they're at the fact fair.
Yeah, you, usually they're in the south and northwest side of Volusia County, and the north and southeast side of the county.
They're on both sides of the county, yes.
Yeah, we do four a year. And also, some schools, like Reed Batello Elementary, has an excellent nutrition program. They've won national awards, they've made it a focus. I think Sugar Mill Elementary does the same thing with their homegrown gardens.
Right, they have a homegrown garden.
Yeah, and I, I got to be part of there. They got a, a nice award, state award for their participation. So a lot of schools have embraced this wellness policy and made it a focus of their students and their, their driving force of the community. So it's, it's, it's really good, really good. So any more concerns, comments, at least two? Okay, Dr. Fritz?
Superintendent recommends the authority be granted to advertise proposed amendments to the school board policy 521 Wellness Policy.
Okay, now, this is just a board action item for permission to advertise. Okay.
No, no.
I'm sorry, yes. To advertise, request to advertise, policy 521 Wellness Policy.
It shouldn't be advertised, but that's what it says.
Oh, we are. Request to advertise policy.
Sorry, I'm staying corrected.
Okeydoke, so we're okay? All right, thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent for board action item 20.04, request to advertise policy 521, which is our wellness policy. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it is, the motion's been made by Mr. Persis and seconded by Ms., Mrs. Burnett. Any cards? Okay, thank you. All those in favor, any more discussion, Board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is carried, five to nothing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Five points, 20.05, board action item, adoption of proposed amendments to school board policy 217, student appearance, dress, and uniform code.
Mr. Penley, take it away.
Hot topic.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this request at the board's pleasure to amend the policy 217 to eliminate the uniform requirement from the dress code. You will see there that in the title, uniform has been stricken. Any reference in general statement to uniform provisions have been stricken. In general dress code provisions under section two, we did include the language concerning no flip-flops in the schools are permitted to be worn, and there was a change in paragraph B4, section two, concerning hats, caps, and coverings. And of course, elimination of section three to repeal the uniform requirements. This policy has been advertised for the appropriate amount of time. No change has been made since the board's June 22nd hearing, the first reading, and it is ripe for adoption.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penley. Mr. Persis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to get back to Dr. Fritz's comment, I think at the very end, we were, we were going through this, and I was wondering if in our policy we need to have, or if Dr. Fritz thinks it'd be worthwhile to have a definition of a flip-flop, so that, because there is the slide, and I know it's popular, and when I think of a flip-flop, I think of that shoe that has that little thing in between your big toe and the next toe.
That little rubber thing?
That little rubber thing that irritates you after a while. So, I mean, that's what I think of as a flip, a flip, flip-flop, and I didn't want, I didn't want principals to have to go through the, well, you know, you said no flip-flops, but you didn't say you couldn't wear these, and, and then somebody's going to say, well, what's the difference between a slide and a flip, flip-flop? And, you know, I just want to make it harder.
I, I had the opportunity to talk with seven principals the other day. We were, we were talking about athletics, but this came up, and I really would like to share some insight with you. The slides are, are a big deal, because when they're, the athletes, wherever they go, they're wearing slides. And so most of them are wearing socks, and, you know, this was a sticking point for them. I'll share with you. They, they, they don't want to have to police that, at least the seven principals I was with, because they feel like those slides are something that has become pretty much standard. And so they, they really were concerned on that. Now, the only thing I thought about is most athletic events, you know, there's a transition, there's a period. I mean, when you're dressing out or going to, that's where they can wear the slide, you know, if that's something the board was okay with, rather than maybe walking around the hallways. But it was something, and it really, it was just recent. I would have shared with you beforehand, but I had an opportunity to talk to principals last Thursday, and that was something that we talked about. And it was only seven of them, but it was, it was a sticking point.
Right, so, so, given the way the policy is worded right now, is there wiggle room to allow the principals to say, yes, it's okay to wear the, to wear those?
I mean, you could leave it as it is, and we could exercise common, common, we could common sense when it was an athletic event transition, if that, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that, that works, but is that something that you would have to...
We, we could communicate that very clearly, that there's an athletic transition, or that, that apparel would be okay.
And would it be, I, I just don't want to make it seem like we're favoring ath- ath- athletic things. I mean, is it, would it, is it act, extracurricular things? I mean, could...
The conversation we had, because we were talking athletics, really, it was around athletic events.
So are we only talking to Piggyback High School, or, you know...
Well, I had four, I had four high school and three middle school principals, so we had both.
Yeah, I, I remember even seeing it when I was still there, as a, a middle school prin- principals, the basketball players would like to wear them.
I mean, the way the policy used to be at elementary was because, like of PE and everything, that they needed the closed-toe shoes on to go out to PE, so...
It's a, it's a secondary thing, for sure.
Oh, yeah. It's a status symbol.
Yeah, yeah, it's a secondary thing. But, other than that, I mean, I'm fine with everything, with everything, you know. I just want, I just don't want to cause another gray area where, you know, some kids are getting in trouble and some kids aren't.
Okay. Mr. Cologne, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think it's something that we can, that the district can further define, because I had never heard of the term slides until I Googled it two minutes ago, and those are sandals. But are they flip- Um, but are they flip-flops? No, they're not flip-flops.
No, they don't flop.
Flip-flops, you know, I mean, I thought this was, I thought this was the kind of shoe that Carl only wore, that I've never worn, 'cause I've never owned a pair of slides, they don't come in my size, but, yes, they do now. Um, after those glitter shoes the other night, those were pretty dazzling.
Oh, yeah.
So, but, but I think there, I think with this policy, there is room for the district, the same way it was passed the last time, and then they defined it, I think there's room for that, and we could use best judgment for that, and I don't think that, 'cause it doesn't necessarily speak to slides, however, um, you know, our principals know best, and, and I'm okay.
I think we can handle it, you're right.
I mean, we want, we want butts in seats, and that's really the aim of what we're trying to accomplish, and, uh, and I guess I'm gonna have to get myself some slides.
Yeah, you'll love them.
I think you'd look great in them.
Thank you.
I really do, they're really cool.
They wear them with socks.
Yeah, wear them with socks, great.
You wear them with socks.
You wear them with socks.
Oh, yeah.
Follow me onto my truck, I got a pair in there.
If you don't wear them with socks, you're not cool.
What size?
Oh, yeah, yes. Isn't it nice to come to, uh, an educational function and learn something? That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Uh, thank you, Mr. Persis, excellent question. Uh, ladies, Ms. Burnett or Ms. Haines?
I'm ready to move forward.
Okay.
No, I'm not, I, I do have a comment.
I have to say this. I said it last time when this, you know, when we started talking about this, and we didn't start this discussion until June twenty-second, and I said even then, we've not necessarily been considerate of all of our families. I, I don't know where you guys stand on emails, you know, but I have to say, at least fifty percent to maybe sixty percent of the emails I've received have been from parents stating, why, you know, why did you push this to the last minute? Like, why have you put us in this situation? They've also stated that they had already bought, which I said was going to be a problem, they had already bought polos, you know, there's families that have shared stories about the lack of income this year, you know, because they lost jobs during COVID, and, you know, what are we doing? So, I, I said all that on June twenty-second, I said, you know, are we being considerate? But where I'm at, um, is what I've said to every one of them, I hear what you're saying, I brought that up, but by moving forward on this, basically what we're doing is we're giving an option. So, we're not saying that, 'cause I'll be honest with you, those little elementary kids look so cute in their little, like, school polos or little school t-shirts and their shorts, I mean, they do, they look, they look adorable, like, they, they come on campus that first day and it, you don't loo-, like, you know they're yours, you know what I'm saying, in, in a classroom or whatever. Um, this is an option, I mean, by moving, if we move forward on this tonight, you may choose to still wear the same bottoms that you've been wearing. You can change your shirts, you can wear the same shirts, you can, I, I mean, realistically, there are things I think that, especially high school kids, 'cause I've received some emails from high school kids going, oh, no, you know, go with this, 'cause I should be able to express myself. I'm not saying you can't express yourself, but I want to say to them, did you read the policy, because it's not anything goes.
Right.
And, and I, and I think that's where I still come back to you, Dr. Fritz, part of why we're in this situation is a policy was developed prior to, I mean, Ms. Cuthbert was the only one on the board when this policy was developed, none of the rest of us were here, and nobody, nobody supported the policy. I, I mean, I think at elementary, it started out they did, but it, it's, high school's been a joke, okay? So, my thing is, if we vote tonight, and we're going to these general dress code requirements, which is where we were before the uniform piece got added, are we going to enforce this, or is it still gonna be an anything goes? Yes, I want kids there learning, but at the same time, there's just some, there's some attire out there.
Well, let me tell you what we'll enforce, okay, 'cause I want to be very clear, um, we will, we will make a student be compliant in dress code, we will have things like other clothes, but what I won't do is this, I won't suspend kids
No.
for dress code.
No.
And, but, you know, you say that, and I know we're all being logical, but I'm telling you, it's happened in, in the past. I won't do that, I won't support that. If that ever gets to Ms. Rowland, Ms. Rowland's gonna say no, um, because we need them in school.
Yes.
And, you know, that's, that's really important. I, I think what you're doing, though, let me, let me applaud you on this, because this, this is a common sense approach. The county I came from has a uniform policy, and I remember when I got there in two thousand eight, I got there days before they were gonna implement, and I thought, this is going to be something, 'cause I was coming from a county where there was no policy, I said, how's this gonna work? The reason it worked is because it was a very poor county, and ninety-five percent of the families were behind it, because they were gonna be able to dress their kids for eighty dollars. There was no resistance, and it worked, because ninety-five percent of people were behind it. If you don't have a large majority, a uniform policy just does not work. It just doesn't work. It was an epic fail when I was a principal in Hillsborough County, I, I remember they tried it at a pilot, and immediately they started doing waivers, and when you do one waiver, you might as well do twelve hundred. Because within a week, I had six hundred waivers coming in. And so, I think what you're looking is a common sense approach. What I've heard from each one, you want things that are covered up that should be covered up, you want pants pulled up at the waist, and you want kids to look like they're supposed to be going to school. And so, my, my administrators can enforce that, they absolutely can. The guidance they're gonna get from me is, don't put kids home because they're not in dress code, and let's make sure that there's some type of closet that's, you know, and it's really important, you don't want to embarrass a kid either. I've seen that approach too, and I don't like that.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure we do it right.
That's good.
Yes, Ms. Burnett?
Sorry, I changed my mind. Um, you, you spoke of making sure that we're doing things right, and, and you spoke of some financial impact, and, and I've had many of emails just like you, and there's been on both sides of the coin, um, but I've also, there's, you know, it, when we talk about the bullying aspect of this, that people still know when you buy a polo from a discount store versus a polo from the mall. So, there's no, there's still that, I mean, there's not gonna change anything with the bullying of, of what clothing you're wearing, 'cause that still happens whether you're buying your polo at the discount store versus an expensive store. Um, I just wanted to say that, 'cause I know that that's been communicated as well, but that still happens, so, teach your children to, to be kind to others, whether they get their clothes wherever, whether it's a polo or a regular shirt.
Yes, Mr. Cologne?
So, I wanted to share my thoughts, 'cause I know I'd spoken to the slides, that was, yeah. And so, I, I, I actually went back and listened to the board meetings from when the board made
Oh, gosh.
this decision, and it was hours and hours of meetings. Thankfully, on YouTube, you can make it go one and a half to two times to catch the things that you wanted to hear. And the way I, the way I looked at this was, what did they aim to accomplish? Number one was, they thought it would decrease bullying, and I think that it has not, because, and, and that's probably because of our society right now, I'm not saying it all has to do with uniforms, but that didn't happen. We thought it would improve academic outcomes, well, for whatever reason, in our high schools it was never implemented, yet our academic outcomes are amazing. And so, that didn't accomplish that goal either. And so, you know, I, I, you know, would, would it improve behavior? Well, it actually caused more referrals. So the goal was, we said, if all the kids looked the same, we're gonna have less referrals, and, well, that didn't happen either. And so, I'm not a fan of doing things just because we do it, this, this is the way we've always done it. When you look at what the board and their mind pro- thought process was at the time, along with the incentives from the state to adopt this, and money that, some of which never came, okay, I, I, I wanted to see what their mentality was, and when you look at the goals that...
The way that, you're talking about me there.
Yes, ma'am, you were the only nay. Um, yes, right, okay, and so, um, I watched that video too. And so, with that being said, I thought to myself, what did they aim to accomplish? And after five years, did, was it accomplished? And the answer was no. And so, why would we continue to do the same thing over and over, expecting a different outcome? We know what that is.
Yep.
And so, that's where my thought process is, that's what I've shared with families, and, you know, this is not just about getting rid of uniforms. And this is not, it is, there was a, we did something that I tried to get into the mind of the board members at the time, not questioning, you know, what were they thinking? And, you know, I, I'm glad that after so many years, uh, we are looking at it and deciding, did this work? Did this not work? And we realize that, you know, I think that by setting a, a standard that is attainable, now we can better, because what happened was, it wasn't an attainable standard, so the truth is, a principal could sit at the door and basically send dress code every kid to the auditorium for suspension for each, for the day. The other part of this that, that, you know, is when we talk about those referrals, now we have administrators who are gonna spend half their day, and I've heard this, dealing with referrals. We, you know, we're, we're all about teaching and learning. We need those administrators, 'cause that's the only way they're gonna become great administrators, is to be in the classrooms. And so, instead of them being in the classrooms, they're taking care of referrals for dress codes, you know, and not to mention, you know, teacher, you know, kid's been in school all day wearing the same thing, he gets to sixth period, now the teacher says, bye, Jimmy, you're not dr-, you know, you're dress coded, go to the office, you have referral. And so, you know, looking at all of that and seeing where our focus is, which is teaching and learning, in order to teach, the kid's gotta be in class, and in order to learn, the kid's gotta be in class. And so, that's my thought process, and that's why I'm very supportive of this.
Okay. All righty, what was going on back then? Um, you know, remember, this was before a lot of our fencing initiatives, it was before a lot of security cameras, and now we're going into security cameras. It was before we had a lot of the protective, um, sheeting, this, the stuff in, on our front offices. Um, plus, it was somewhat political, too. There were some outside political pushes for uniforms. Um, it, it was a huge discussion, I mean, I've never seen so much explosion, explosion. I was against it because I knew it was an enforcement issue, it wasn't a dress issue, it was an enforcement issue. Um, and having a husband who was, uh, an AP in discipline in facilities, that's always, you know, it was very obvious. So, and that's why I insisted on streamlining this and making it real easy, because then it's so much easier to enforce. If it's easier to enforce, it's easier for our kids to follow, it's easier on the referral list, it's just, we just want everything covered, so the attention is on the, on the textbook, and the teacher, and the learning, and not in, what are you got on? And it's an option, correct? It is an absolute option. If somebody still wants to wear the, the polo, please do. Wear your school colors. I think it's a great idea, it's just an option, so.
Like options.
Okay, any other discussions, yes? All right. Sir, in just a second. Okay, um, Dr. Fritz?
The superintendent recommends the adoption of the proposed amendment to school board policy two seventeen, student, I'm sorry, my glasses fogged up, appearance, dress, and uniform code.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent of, um, twenty point oh five, board action item, adoption of proposed amendments to school board policy two seventeen, student appearance, dress, and uniform code. Is there a motion? I'll be with you in just a second.
I came here to talk to this issue.
Uh, sir, in just a second, I'll be with you in just a second. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, policy two seventeen.
Okay, uh, it is, uh, the motion has been made by Mr. Cologne, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Mr., uh, Ms. Burnett. Any more discussion of the board? Okay, now, sir, we have time for public participation, it has to be a motion on the floor for you to address it first.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay, sir, that's no problem.
Is that my name on the card?
Yes, sir, it certainly is. Pull yourself up to a microphone, are you a climber or a climber?
It's climber, like mountain climber.
Okay, I was just missing the beep. All right, sir, you have three minutes, please announce who you are, what area of town you're from, you have three minutes to speak.
I am Ron Climber, I live in Ormond Beach, and the very first sentence of this two seventeen says, responsibility for the dress and appearance of the students enrolled in the district, first primarily, rest prim-, their dress and rest primarily with the parents and the students. And I think that's the most important sentence in the whole thing, and you could stop right there and have a good program. But in the second sentence, you say, however, there's that dreaded word, however. I think of my eighth grade English teacher would just X that word right out of my composition and say, Ron, don't use that word, it's halfway between pejorative and useless. But however means, forget what we said so far, here's what you need to know. And in the second sentence, we say, we realize that some of you parents and students are incapable of making proper decisions, so we've got some fashion and grooming suggestions for you here, that we're gonna call ro- rules. And you've got all this stuff like appropriate size of the clothes, if you got belts, you gotta have belt loops, and no hats, and that's the reason I showed up tonight, no hats. That seems un-American to me, is there anybody in this room that doesn't own a hat and wear a hat pretty frequently? But you can't wear one at Volusia County Schools. And no sunglasses. This is the Sunshine State. I, I could see a Morgan and Morgan lawsuit from that. I mean, no sunglasses? I can also see an abuse of that with the, it's good for thee but not for me. I don't think the coach is gonna stand out there in the Fizz Ed Field all day long with no hat and no sunglasses. I may be wrong, but I bet he doesn't. And so, the students can't wear hats or sunglasses, but the coaches can, something wrong with that picture. And flip-flops, you can wear flip-flops to the White House, you can wear them to church. And by the way, Madam Chairman, your daughter had the best pair here tonight. There was about ten pairs in, and hers were A-plus.
She's very much the shoeista, shoeista.
You can wear those anywhere except Volusia County Schools. So, and also, you got a thing for, no clothing with tears. Have you turned on your TV? Alan Jackson, Ellen DeGeneres, they all wear clothes with tears in them. No tattoos, that's got to be the enforcement problem of the century there. And haircuts, correct me if I'm wrong, it is none of your business how anybody wears their hair. Am I, am I right or wrong? And, um, why do we need all these rules? My thoughts are, we don't need these rules. Just leave that first sentence in there, it's the responsibility of the parents and the students, vote no.
Thank you very much, sir. Not only that, you did the perfect timing as well.
That's it.
All right, any more, uh, further discussion from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. I'm sorry, sir, we disappointed you.
I swear to God. You give me three more minutes, I'll tell you why you should buy that property.
I, I do believe our district will be contacting you. Yeah, I've asked them to do that, so, all right. All right, um, thank you. So that, that concludes our board action items, um, twenty point oh one, public participation.
This is Cuthbert, before you start public in, um, input, I have a question. I understand why at six thirty to, or I, I think I understand why at six thirty tonight, for, um, the specific time for public input, you followed and only did the fifteen minutes, but I know in the past, if we've had parents here to speak, we've allowed them to speak. So, my understanding is now for this, you know, like, if they stay for the end of the evening, but my understanding is, even if they've stayed, we're still limiting to five now for the end of the evening.
No, I'm letting, if somebody's willing to stay with us this long, they, they deserve to speak.
Okay, all right, I just, that's where I stand. I feel like if they have been here and done the long haul, they should have an opportunity.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
So it's already in place. Okay, Dr. Pam Schreger? Uh, okay, and then that's first, and then Lisa Duba is second. Um, please state your name, and, uh, tell us what, uh, part of the county you're from.
I'm Dr. Pamela Schreger, um, I'm from Deland, resident of Deland, I have two kids, um, in, in, uh, the Volusia County Schools, and, um, am a, a doctor of twenty-six years' experience.
You know, one thing, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Can you hear me?
There's, there used to be a TV here, correct? Wasn't there one? So, one thing I just thought I'd better realize, and something, it's my own fault, I neglected. You can see your own time over here.
Yes, yeah.
I didn't know if you knew that.
Yeah.
And also on the side as well.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I just, I apologize.
Thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it.
All right, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's just to help you out a little bit.
Thank you. Um, so I've come to you guys tonight, I'll be brief because I know it's late, um, to ask you to reconsider the mask policy in schools. I know it is a debate that you guys, obviously I've heard from discussions tonight, have put a great deal of time and effort and research and thought into. And I wouldn't waste your time unless I thought that there was reason to look at it with new eyes. Um, and that reason, um, is, um, with the rise of the Delta variant, which, um, statistics are changing all the time, but suggesting that it's as much as 86% of the current caseload. The thing that is different, that I don't think that we've talked about tonight, is the incidence of high viral loads in vaccinated individuals. What that means is vaccinated individuals can become asymptomatic carriers, which is different, and it's a game changer. Um, in the past, the vaccine not only protected you from, um, disease, but also, um, protected you from spreading it to other people. So that people that can't get vaccinated had some degree of safety if they were with people that were vaccinated. Um, all of us have heard the people say, "It's okay, I'm vaccinated," suggesting that I'm safe, I'm not going to expose you, and that goes away with the Delta variant. Um, the, the evidence is early, and it needs to be followed. Um, I don't think it's definitive yet, but, um, that means that everyone at school, um, kids that can't be vaccinated, or even the vaccinated kids, um, they all can be asymptomatic carriers, um, which changes up our policy entirely. All of the people that those kids come home to, the kids are going to expose them, period, um, if masks aren't in school. Um, so every teacher, every staff member, every student that has anyone at home, um, who's at risk, um, it doesn't matter if the kids are vaccinated or not, they can bring it home. So the only way that we can protect them is to have them in masks. Um, and it's different. Last week, um, I personally can't get vaccinated because of health issues and I'm high risk. My kids thankfully are both vaccinated. So I can send them to school, and they need to get back to school. Please, they need to get back to school. Um, but I could send them to school and not risk my life. But that changes, um, with the Delta variant. The simple thing that we can do to keep my kids from bringing home a disease that could kill me is to ask the kids to wear masks. I know your job is to protect the kids and not protect me. Um, I get that. Um, but I do think we have a responsibility as a community if, if, not only to protect the kids from further mutations, but also, um, to protect the staff, the family, the community at large. And if the kids are going to be spreading, if everyone that's there can, can spread, um, then I think that's a concern, and it warrants revisiting. It's basically like going back to school without the vaccine. Because your kids, your kids weren't really the ones getting sick to begin with. The vaccine didn't change that. What the vaccine changed for you is that the kids no longer were contagious, and that is different now, so I ask you to look at it again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you staying with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa Duba, and then Kim Short. Lisa is no longer here. Okay, then Kim, and then Phyllis Stoffenberg.
Uh, good evening. So, on a happier note, I got a chance to go to the Florida PTA Leadership Convention, and I just wanted to do a shout out because they did an absolutely amazing job. It was, um, four days. And for anybody who hasn't been, uh, anybody who's listening, if your PTA has never been, I highly recommend that you spend, um, the money and the time to attend. They have, they had five sessions jam-packed with tons of great information on how to look for grants, on how to build a website, um, how to build your membership, on how to build relationships. You know, there's the normal ones of treasurer and, and other leadership-type ones. But there was one that, that caught my eye, it was actually in the last session, the fifth section, fifth se- session. Um, and it was done by an, Vaughn Green, who's the College and Career Specialist with Broward County Public Schools on leveraging peer influencers to build a college-going culture. And they do something in Broward County called, uh, they have a program called Brace Cadets. And what they do is, um, they basically decided that, I'm going to read it because it's so perfectly said. "Students need guidance and support throughout the college-going process, but with student-to-council ratios in Florida hovering around 450 to 1, many students aren't getting that support. To address the need, Broward Public Schools created the Brace Cadets, a peer-to-peer cohort of students who are trained to help their peers with college applications, vast for completion and scholarships among other steps. Attend to learn how peer influencers are preparing students for life after high school and how you can bring the program to your school." So they had 500 students apply. They picked 60. It's about four to six a school, a high school. They put them through real training on how to sit with students and how to help them. They, uh, had, they used Title IV funds to give each of the students a fi- $500 stipend. So if you do the math, it's $30,000 to, for 60 students. And the impact was massive. They, they basically, they, they said that where they would get 20, maybe parents show up or children, whatever, to, to come to a session to learn about these things in a school, they'd have 70 or 80. That's the impact of student voice and having students involved. And I know everybody in this room knows that because you've been around long enough and you've seen it. So I just, I, I was so impressed. I mean, the, the other woman, I don't know if I said her name, Kathy McDonald from the Florida College Access. She was the other person who taught this, um, who was the presenter who taught this workshop. And I, I mean, they talk about, you know, the programs they use, Naviance and Zello, and I know they're expensive, but I, I just, I, the Brace Cadet piece of it was just so awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, would you terribly mind giving us some of that information or just sending an email?
Not at all, I'll, I'll send an email.
Greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Short. Uh, Phyllis Stoffenberg? I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
Oh, that's, you're fine.
Oh, good, thank you. Uh, welcome, thank you for staying. Um, speak into the microphone, state your name, where, area, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much for affording me the opportunity to speak at this board meeting. My name is Phyllis Stoffenberg, and I live in Deland. I don't know how many of you can appreciate how many parents watch and are attuned to what goes on at these board meetings. It's astonishing. I am very involved, as a couple of you know, in local, county, state, and national affairs, programs, clubs. Parents are very, very involved in what goes on in these meetings. They call me, I'm representing a large number of parents. I believe God gave us our children. He gave it to us to protect them, to guide them, to raise them to the best of our ability. He didn't give them to the school board, he didn't give them to the Department of Health. He gave them to the parents. They're only loaned to us. And then we do the best we can, and we clip the wings and let them fly. The statistics that you're getting from the Department of Health, we all know as adults, statistics can be juggled any way you want. I know that. I did that in my career for 34 years. There's also false positives that the Department of Health gives. Instance is, they had deaths, one I know of a family that had a, a mother die from cancer. On the death certificate, they tried to put COVID. On another one was congestive heart failure on a dead. Again, they put COVID. The families literally had to fight in order to keep that off the death certificate. Reason being, and we all know it, the government pays you, or pays to get so many statistics. And they also pay for the funerals. They are now reimbursing up to, I believe, $9,000 per person that passed away from COVID. I have been advised by these parents, if in fact, and this is not an ultimatum by any means, it's simply a fact, that there is a large group of parents, if these parents, these children have to be masked, and it's mandated by the department that they get vaccinations, these parents are prepared to pull their children out of the school system. They are well, um, versed in how to get tutors. They have even gone to the point where they have, uh, grouped together to have homes that these children can go to in order to get an education, if in fact this comes to fruition.
Thank you for your message tonight, we do appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for sticking around.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We wish you well. Uh, and Elizabeth Albert, you're bringing up the rear. No pun intended.
Thank you, Mrs. Cuthbert.
I get a little, when I get tired, I get a little slapstick.
I, I know, and, and I'll try to be brief. So, um, Elizabeth Albert, Holly Hill. Haven't said that in a long time, so, interesting. Anyway, good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Fritz, members of the audience. A little bit off-topic for a moment, only a moment. Uh, it was mentioned earlier that tomorrow there's a ribbon cutting at Pine Ridge for the HVAC Academy. I want to thank you so much for that. And I want to encourage you to continue to see the value in the trades. My husband is a lifelong, 30-plus-year IBW journeyman electrician. My son is a third-year apprentice in the IBW apprenticeship program, and my daughter is almost halfway through the welding program at Daytona State. They will always be able to figure out how to make a living. They will have skilled, uh, trades that they can work in. Dr. Fritz, I believe you know the value of the trades. And so what I am, and the reason I'm sharing that is because we have a great opportunity. I know that we're spending some money to make sure that all of our high school students take certain tests. But for children like mine, uh, those tests, they didn't really mean a whole lot. Although they were both enrolled in the Science and Medicine Academy at Mainland, and they got through, but that's not where their heart was. It took my daughter almost four years to figure out this is what she wanted to do. Um, but she's now there. So I'm really asking that we focus on children like mine, who are not going to go to a four-year college, or even two-plus-two. I paid all that prepaid money, ugh. But the point is, we have to be diverse. Okay, now I'm going to shift. So I, I think that went over really well, so hang on. It wouldn't be a school board meeting if I didn't talk to you about, you know.
Concerns.
The payment, right? Um, I, I was happy to see that our financial forecast is, you know, with the numbers that we're, we're working through for the fiscal year for '21, uh, we're not in a negative number. Uh, we know that the governor has requested the information for the classroom teachers and the principals that was sent already. So we have an idea of how many folks qualified for that payment plan. At this point in time, we should be able to get, um, an idea of what we're looking at in order to recognize the loyalty and the commitment that our folks gave during the pandemic. I'm asking for recognition, a monetary recognition, I'm not going to use the B-word, but the $1,000 that, uh, that we believe, and I know you have a desire, to do something for our folks. Um, I'm asking that we, we start to make some decisions here. And I'm going to leave with 25 seconds on the clock. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Albert. Um, that concludes public participation.
Do you have our cards? Three cards left.
Um, I don't have any other cards. Ms. Schultz, do we have more cards?
Yep, they were on the radio.
Okay. Um, we'll continue. Rebecca Swary will be next, and then Kristi McClure.
Uh, they're not here. I'm, I'm getting by in line with Rebecca's.
And Crystal McClure?
She's not.
All right, thank you. Uh, there's no name. Volusia County resident? Is that permissible?
She, uh, she can't, she doesn't have to say her name. It's permissible.
It's permissible, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For this time, my name is Sharon Miso, I'm a Volusia County resident.
Uh, ma'am, would you speak into the microphone so we have, so we're able to hear you? Yes, you have three minutes, thank you.
Sure. So there was a lot of talk this evening about, um, risk and deaths, death. And I would just like to point out, in 2020, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the eighth-leading cause of death in Florida. That is, one person, um, dies by suicide every two hour, hour, every two hours in the state of Florida. So on to mask mandates which implicate constitutional issues. Um, I lead to read the Florida Constitution, Section 2, Basic Rights. "All natural persons, persons, female and male alike, are equal before the law and have inalienable rights. No person shall be deprived of any right because of race, religion, national origin, or physical disability." I also read Section 3, Religious Freedom. "There shall be no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting or penalizing the free exercise thereof." I also choose to read Section, um, 23 of the Constitution of the State of Florida, which is right to privacy. "Every natural person has the right to let alone and free government, and free from government intrusion, excuse me, governmental intrusion into the person's private life, except as otherwise provided herein. This section shall not be construed to limit the public's right of access to public records and meetings as provided by law." underneath the school board, we have School Community Relations Policies, which is number 811, Family and School Partnership. The introduction reads, "A, the school board believes that the opportunity for a student to be successful is strict, is greatly enhanced when there is a strong link between the student's home and the student's school. Um, Part 2, Exceptions of the School Board and District. Part A, the school district will involve and work collaboratively with all stakeholders, including parents, students, employees, professional associations, et cetera. B, the school board will continue to maintain involved family and community." Which leads me to read the House of Representatives Staff Final Bill Analysis, which is HB 241, Chapter 1014, Parents' Bill of Rights. "The bill prohibits the state, its political subdivisions, and any other governmental entities and other institutions from infringing upon the fundamental right of a parent to direct the upbringing, education, healthcare, and mental health of his or her minor children without demonstrating a compelling state interest for such actions. Effective changes, constitutional principles. It is well-settled that the interests of parents and the care, custody, and control of their children is perhaps the oldest of the recognized fundamental liberty interests protected by the due process clause of the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution. The right of pri- privacy is a fundamental right which we believe demands the compelling state interest standards. The test shifts the burden of proof to state to justify an intrusion of proper privacy. So we please ask that you take into consideration that parents have the right to choose when it comes to any sort of, um, medical procedures that are."
Thank you, I appreciate you concluding.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, Kirk Hall is next, and then Dr. Jerry Pickett. No, Mr. Hall? I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. And, uh, Dr. Pickett left as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Willie Williams has left?
He left.
All righty, and Tammy Ming, Minj? I, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Uh, Anna Hannan? Good evening, nice to see you again. Please, uh, talk into the microphone, they're a little more sensitive right now. And you have three minutes.
All righty. Um, I just wanted to address a few things that Patricia Boswell from the Department of Health talked about. Um, there is a, from the Department of Health, there's a School Health Administrative Resource Manual. And that was updated in June, and it hasn't been updated this week. So on page 32, uh, under Mask Use in School Settings, it says that mask policies should be voluntary. So I'm not really sure why she contradicted herself there. I understand there's a spike in variants, but that's what the policy says as of today. Um, you know, we all knew about the possibility of virus mutations and spikes, and, uh, we need to learn to live with this. Um, you know, living with a mask is just, uh, there's no real proof that it works. There's a lot of debate about it. I just don't think that we can just go on forever, year after year, as the virus mutates, kind of like the flu, and wear masks and have all these, you know, excessive restrictions. I think we need to learn how to live with this. Um, you know, these are our kids, and we need to make those healthcare decisions. Um, just because they go to school doesn't mean that we relinquish our rights whenever we drop them off. Um, as far as the quarantines, uh, I just don't know what As far as the quarantines, I just don't know what authority the Health Department or even the school board has to quarantine kids excessively if they're asymptomatic. So I would really like to understand where that authority comes from. I think last year, we all kind of went, we rolled with the flow. But now we need to get serious about catching up, and the kids need an education. And I think, you know, there's probably gonna be some more pushback. We want our kids in school if they're healthy and they're not sick. As far as the Parents' Bill of Rights, I just don't think that we can even, after July 1st, when it became effective, I don't think that we can really re-implement a mask mandate. I don't think that it's gonna be within the law to do so. I don't think that the current policy, as it is, if we don't have a requirement about written parental consent, I don't see how we can re-implement that and stay within HB 241, within the Parents' Bill of Rights. So I think, I don't think that Policy 503 is in alignment with that. And then, of course, there is the possibility that if any school board implements a mask mandate, the governor said the other day, and turned to Speaker Sprouse, that he will call for a special session. So I just don't see why we need to address re-implementing a mask mandate. So I hope you all take that under consideration, and let's get back to a good school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and a good school year for you two as well. Jennifer Dixon, and then Elizabeth Hall.
Elizabeth Hall left.
Okay. So Ms. Hall and... Good afternoon, or should say, good evening.
Good evening. It's definitely evening now. I've been here for quite some time. My name is Jennifer Dickinson. I am from Deland. I really did not want to come here tonight to speak to you.
You need to speak a little carefully into the microphone so we can hear you.
Okay. I definitely did not want to be here. I was definitely not happy to see the article in the newspaper that we were gonna be talking about masks on our children again. I work in education in the preschool. We did not wear a mask, not one day, all last year. We had zero children get COVID last year. Not one. And these are little kids. These are kids in your face. These are kids touching me, sneezing in my mouth. You know, I work with two-year-olds. They're gross. I know a lot of teachers that are dealing with the kids in the elementary. You know how gross. I just, I just feel like I want you to know that it is our right as parents to make those decisions, whether we have masks or not masks. And that's all I'm really here to say tonight, is that it is scary. We are all afraid, but we have been living this for a whole year. I hope after a whole year, we have learned how to keep ourselves safe and healthy. As for me, when I found out about COVID, I got healthy. I ate better. I worked out more. That's what we should be educating our children on, not scaring them that we're gonna kill Grandma, we're gonna kill our neighbors, we're gonna kill our friends. My nephew won't take the mask off. He's terrified. Teach him to take responsibility for his health. That's what we should be educating our children, not scaring them. So, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much. That concludes public participation. Now for board comments. Who would like to begin? Mr. Cologne?
So, once again, tomorrow, we will be having the ribbon cutting for the HVAC Academy at Pine Ridge, and you all know how excited I am about that. I am elated because, you know, our students will have the opportunity to take advantage of it. I had the pleasure of walking through there, and let me tell you, you all are in for a treat. So I'm super stoked and look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow, or in a few hours. Although, we're pretty early today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Ms. Burnett?
Yeah, it is early. I was expecting a midnight-er here. I won't be able to make the Pine Ridge event tomorrow, but I know we're all excited about that, as well as we received an email about an electric, electricians program that I know you responded, that you were gonna meet with them. And I think that's exciting, and we've talked about many different opportunities for our students in that, in that realm. And I know we've talked about getting a plumbing course around, too. So I'm kind of excited about that. I think we all would be. But tomorrow, I am gonna get the opportunity to go to meet one of the principal, meet the principal day for the Sugar Mill, and so I'm excited about that. And next week, I believe we have a ribbon cutting for our new school, or groundbreaking.
Yes, groundbreaking on the second.
That's kind of exciting as well. New for me, so I'm excited about it, and I am gonna make that. So I hope we all have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burnett. Mr. Persis?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not gonna be at that ribbon cutting, but I am gonna be at that Food Brings Homes, no, Food Brings Hope.
Hope.
But it's Homes, I think. It's, I'm putting on words, because it's at ICI Homes.
Yeah.
This is what Farouk's doing to help people get into their first home.
Right, right.
And that's in the morning as, as well. And that's over here on Bevel Road, so that's what I...
I don't know that one.
We didn't know anything about that.
Well, I, see, I have that on mind, so I don't know. I'm gonna check on that to make sure I have the right, the right day.
Yeah, Mr. Persis?
Did you know anything about that?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit. It's, it's through Food Brings Hope. It's Mrs. Housini's program, where she's working with, to try to revitalize the community around Campbell and Turi T. And so trying to work with helping a few teachers, like maybe our first-year teachers or teachers that are working in our system, to try to find residence and to look at some programs to be able to live in the community. And she's not just looking at teachers, but that's what obviously one of our components is, and it's starting very small. And tomorrow's just kind of the kickoff. Mr. West will be there as my representative, because I'll be at the HVAC. But he is gonna be there to kind of, Kristi Mahaney is the one who's really been working with that.
Maybe that's where it was. Yeah, maybe that's where it was. So anyway, just wanted to say that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Ms. Haynes?
So, Ms. Albert, I want to thank you for coming up and talking about the trades tonight, because that's been, you know, something that I've talked about for many years, even when I was back in the classroom. Because I'm not saying that every child shouldn't have the opportunity if they want to go to a college or a university, but we've got kids out there that, that's not the path they want to take right now. And my own son would have loved, you know, a trades program when he was in high school. A former secretary of mine, her son, you know, couldn't get involved into the electric program until he got out of high school, and then we connected him with someone, but he would have loved to start. My son had the chance to work on a construction site the summer he was 16, and he was like, this is what I want to do. But we've not been offering anything for kids. And so here he is, 28 now, and it was last year in November, when he just said, "I'm moving forward finally to do what it is that I want to do." And he's now working for a company, and he's been trained in everything, and he runs all the wiring. He's down doing a school in Orange County right now. And he's just as happy as he can be on what he is doing. And, but it took to this point because we didn't have that opportunity. So I am so excited about tomorrow's, you know, ribbon cutting for the HVAC system. I, too, you know, with the electrician and the plumbing, there are so, there's a need for that here in Volusia County. And, you know, I think whatever we can bring in that these kids get excited about, and that helps them stay focused on learning, and they find that passion of what they want to do. And I'm so excited your daughter finally figured it out, like my son. But I'm, I'm looking forward to the future for our students that are coming up, and the fact that we're going to be able to offer them additional paths. So, thank you.
Thank you for saying that. And let me just jump in real quick, just so that you know. We are working, Mr. Cologne actually visited with me, with ATC at Daytona State. We will start second semester transporting students to Daytona State facilities for their specialized programs. So for example, even in New Smyrna, they have a manufacturing program at the Daytona State. We're working to coordinate those schedules. And it will start small second semester, because it's second semester. But it'll ramp up for starting next fall. And so, you know, we're working on things like this. It's the logistics you have to work on. The kids still have to get their core classes, so you go first and second period. You go away for the hours in between, and you come back sixth, seventh. And so we're in the process of working on that with Michelle at Daytona State. But that is our big project. And then August 3rd, I believe it is, Gabe, we have all the guidance directors going to ATC to learn about this, so that we can start scheduling for kids. I understand this, the importance of the trades. And I gotta tell you, if you don't think that those folks use higher-order thinking skills
Yeah.
to fix a Toyota
Oh, yeah.
or to figure out how to build a latest and greatest kitchen, I just gotta tell you, there's tremendous respect there. And so that will be an area that we keep pushing, and that's part of one E for us. That's acceleration. That's why we are doing what we're doing in the guidance. Well, we, we're doing eight touches with every kid, minimal, with the guidance counselors. We're making sure that the first thing they do is that career survey when they get to the start of the school year. Because I just, and I know it really isn't my time to talk, but this is the stuff I get excited about. This is the stuff that's gonna put the kids in Volusia on the right path. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
It is your turn to talk.
Thank you, ma'am. I used it. I'm done.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
May I just quick clarify, because Karen Bishop just sent me a text and everything? So yes, it's, it's Homes Brings Hope. Homes Brings Hope. And it pulls together assistance from private donors, the city of Daytona Beach, to federal government, Daytona Beach Housing Authority, to transform renters into homeowners. The program's goal is to help 12 renters close on homes purchases by the end of this year, and then double that next year. And it is, you know, obviously funded and founded by Farouk Housini. Yeah.
I don't think there's anything she can't do.
Yeah, that's true.
Mrs. Cuthbert?
Yes, ma'am.
I just had one other thing. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Fritz yesterday. And, okay, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Fritz yesterday, but you and I were there for, and Mr. Persis was there for my associate, the presentation yesterday. And one of the things that I know that everybody's still waiting to hear, because you put that slide up that said, like, by tomorrow, administrators would get information to kind of know where we're moving forward. But you and I had a conversation about that, and, you know, and I talked about this earlier today. So the intent is, you know, we're still gonna provide hand sanitizer out at the schools, on our buses, along with the wipes, because we had already made the promise.
And additional masks. Mr., I know Elizabeth mentioned that earlier, I believe, but Dr. Shanoff has already got the mask ready.
Okay. So we're gonna have those at schools, so that whoever wants to wear one at any time, you know, or the face shields, or, you know, or whatever. Because I know that a lot of teachers, especially our speech teachers and our primary teachers, did a lot with the face shields last year, so that they could work on the sounds and all that. Because if you can't see, and the kid can't see what to do with their mouth, they can't learn to read. So I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that after we talked to her this afternoon, we're planning on still continuing on with having available, or making available at the schools, all of those cleaning supplies, the hand sanitizer. There'll be masks in the event, you know, a child or a teacher wants to put on a mask and they have forgotten it. And, and that's what you're gonna be sharing with them tomorrow, because that's been the question. People are just asking, you know, are the items still gonna be available? Because I think truly, when you talk to a lot of teachers, what they learned is, just by setting up those constant routines of having kids wash their hands, use hand sanitizer, wipe the desks down, the tables down, you know, that kind of stuff.
So yes, all those things will be available. And Ms. Haynes, you know, as you were walking out, I was jumping on a superintendent's call yesterday
Yes.
with all the superintendents. And the number-one concern from every superintendent on there, and it was voiced over and over and over and over, is we want guidance when it comes to quarantining and contact tracing. And the reason we want guidance, is you gotta remember, the governor, the governor has the Department of Education, and they have the Department of Health. We're getting conflicting messages. We're getting messages from the Department of Education to open things up, and then you have the Department of Health coming along saying, close things down. And we're very candid that that really puts school boards and superintendents in a very difficult situation. And we pushed really, really hard, not just to give guidance, but to put it in writing. I didn't feel overly confident that was going to happen, but there were 67 superintendents pushing pretty hard. And I'll share with you, I think there's gonna have to be some, some work on our end. As I researched and talked to other superintendents in our areas, we know that this is a year that our kids have got to get back to work. We've got to get back to work. I do not envision having kids out 48 days like we did last year at times. There are still some things that we're going to have to do. You're going to have to do some type of contact tracing with kids. You know, we're gonna have to figure out, we're gonna have to utilize good strategies, like you and I talked yesterday about seating charts. You're gonna have to have seating charts on buses. You're gonna have to have seating charts in classes, so that when it, a kid, if a kid does get COVID, then we can really look to see where they were sitting around, and is it an issue? And some of the things tonight that I didn't hear, that I was hoping to hear a little bit of, is there were scenarios that were described to me when I was talking earlier to the Department of Health. One of the things that was said to me was, if one child has a mask on and the others do not, and the child with the mask has COVID, the mask would keep them from having, have anybody else go home. And so the other thing that I heard is if a child has a mask on, or if one kid has a mask on and the other kid doesn't, the one, the one that would have to go home would be the child without the mask. Those were all scenarios. And so I don't think those are hard, and I don't think those are defined. It was not discussed this evening at all. I think those are some of the questions that we're gonna have to wrestle through before school starts. I'm hoping to get some guidance. Obviously, as a superintendent, I don't want to be out there on our own, our district, doing our own thing. I think it's really important for us to make sure that we get that type of guidance. As of where we're at right now, I will reassure principals tomorrow that those safety supplies will be at their schools for when all teachers come back. There will be some type of contact tracing, and as we get closer to it, more details will come. That's what I'm gonna say at this point, because that's what I've got. You know, I'm hoping that we, again, we get some guidance, and if you can help us with the Florida School Board Association, I think we all need it. We're all on the same page on this one. We're on the same team. You know, right now, what other school districts are, is they're maintaining what they did last year with that contact tracing and quarantining. But I don't think any of us want kids out 48 days.
There is a FSBA leadership meeting on Friday, which I'll be attending, so I'll ask that question. Okay, sorry, if I ask a question?
Please.
What about buses?
Right now, on buses, Dr. Shanoff, I'm gonna ask him to come up, because I asked him to get some details from surrounding districts, what the plan is. Dr. Shanoff reached out to Orange County, Seminole County, and a few others. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cuthbert, board members, Dr. Fritz. So at this point, all of the other, there's, there's only one district that didn't respond to our request. That was Flagler. But Brevard, Seminole, Orange, Osceola, Hillsborough, all responded. This point, with the exception of Osceola, Osceola is still going with masks on buses. Every other school district that responded is moving forward with just enforcing their policy, which would be either no masks or mask optional on their buses. Cleaning protocols would be the same. So these are things that we've discussed with our team. I'm really pleased that, that Mr. Moyer is cued in to the Florida Association of Pupil Transportation. They coordinate very well, so we were able to actually look even outside the Central Florida Coalition to see what other districts of comparable size were doing. And the only district out of about 25 that responded that is moving forward with masks on buses is Osceola. Every other district is optional or no.
So I wish, I wish I had more sunshine news to share with you, but I, but I don't. So if you're asking me today to commit, we will have to continue with some type of contact tracing. And there may be situations where kids would have to be quarantined, but we're going to try to minimize that, so it's not anything like it was last year. And I'm seeing heads nod, so I need to, you know, because that was my whole thing. We wanted, you guys wanted me to bring this back to you, so I'm, I'm trusting... We wanted, you guys wanted me to bring this back to you, so I'm, I'm trusting that you're either good with that, or you're gonna tell me pretty quick.
I'm good with that.
Minimize it, that's all I wanted to do, just...
What do the bus drivers say? Because they're the ones, I think we heard from bus drivers that they want masks.
I think we can have available, like, certainly the bus driver themselves can wear a mask, but I, I think that's why it's important for us to have some type of seating chart. I thought that was a really good idea. I think, you know, in our schools, that that's just another safety protocol.
So, we will have the hand sanitizer on the buses, just like we will in every classroom. We have plenty of supply at this point in our warehouse. Our supply chains are good, they're healthy. So, when we need to go out and get more, the availability is there. Masks, hand sanitizer, wipes, and deploying, the PPE kits were very, very popular last year, and we are deploying those PPE kits to every one of our classrooms for the upcoming year.
Thank you. You have a question for Dr. Shanoff?
Well, Dr. Shanoff, I think you were here on June 22nd, and maybe not at that time when we did vote, you know, for the masks to go optional, because Carol, who represents the bus drivers, came up and spoke that night. And I felt like she gave a pretty accurate, you know, accounting of what happens on the buses. You know, she talked about, they wear them off their ear, you know, not even on their face, they wear them as a chin guard, you know, she talked, and, and what she said that night was, please, she said, you know, it'd take, the bus drivers have spent how much time trying to enforce kids to wear masks correctly, and she said they're not, which, you know, their, their focus should be on getting them to and from school safely, not did the kid take their mask off. And the one thing she asked that night, which, you know, she represents that group, was the hand sanitizer and the wipes to stay on the bus. And so, you know, I appreciate the fact that you reached out and found out what over 20, you know, districts were doing, and that they're basically doing the same thing we're doing, or they're just saying no mask at all, so...
It's really, you're either optional or not. I mean, it's really hard to, to try to do mandatory here, but not there. And I, you know, I would encourage an optional approach. And we'll just make sure that we have the PPEs for everybody.
We'll, we'll make sure that the PPE is available, and we will be implementing the seating charts. We're, we're gonna do this out of an abundance of caution, but we are going to comply with, with the mask policy, which, at this point, we're gonna move forward with the, with the mask optional on the buses.
Okay, and the drivers can protect themselves if they so choose?
Pardon me?
The drivers can protect themselves if they so choose.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, anybody at any time can, can wear a mask. They can wear a face shield, they can wear a face shield and a mask, if that's, if that's their choice.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cologne?
There was a question about a federal mandate, and whether or not that applied to school buses. Have we learned whether that is accurate or not?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penley actually had to leave, but he did, he did analyze that today, and he replied back, I think, to Ms. Burnett, stating that he did not think that that was a mandate that we would have to comply with.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for the thorough investigation, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more thing. I forgot, I was kinda...
So, board members, just so you know what I'm gonna do, my, my team and I, on the, on the drive over to HVAC, my team and I are meeting tomorrow morning on Teams. And what we're going to do is talk through an FAQ. And once we prepare that FAQ, we will share it with the board, and then once we're feeling good, I'm gonna send it out to schools so that they have it. But again, you know, there's gonna be a general theme on this, masks are optional. We are, we are going to make sure that that's known for transportation as well. And we are going to have contact tracing and quarantining with the intent not to have as many kids be out as they were last year. And we're gonna have PPE available for all staff.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. One thing I wanted to piggyback on what you were saying about the trades. You know, I was involved in the birth of Career Connections 26 years ago, or even closer to maybe 30 years ago, and it was, it's been wonderful to see the development of CTE in our district. One thing that hindered us was the liability, because in high school, children are usually under 18, and it's that exposure to, to high-powered equipment, to electricity that could injure them, and we've always had difficulty with insurance and liability. So, things are beginning to get, there are programs being developed to work around it, and we've even talked about dual enrollment on the trades. Because we can do it with academic programs, we can certainly do it with the trades as well. So, it's, it's a little slower, but there's more movement happening now. It's funny how it's beginning to accelerate, and it's really good to see. So, with that, I'm gonna turn everything over to Mr. Doran. Okay, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, if we didn't have enough to do, we, we are so lucky to be in the year 2021, which is the year following the census data collection, which means that we collectively, all governments around the country are required to reapportion our districts, to ensure that the representatives are representing roughly equal numbers of people. So, to compound the problem, historically, the data would have been released this past March. In fact, and I don't know the source of this information, but the county understands anyway that it will be released no later than September 30th, but possibly as early as mid-August, which would be in a few weeks. Any way you slice it, we've got about 90 days to accomplish this, because it is legally mandated that we reapportion in odd-numbered years. There's been a lot of analysis on the law to try and figure out whether you could go into January or February. As I understand it, there are some counties and districts that are thinking they're gonna do that, basically on the thought process that, oh, well, you know, who's gonna sue us? And, but if they do get sued, I think they're gonna lose. So, we don't want that. So, what we've got is a December 31 deadline to accomplish this. 10 years ago, when we did this, we worked with the county. The county is offering that same thing again, very gracious, very generous. They have people, we have people, they have software that can create these maps. It's my understanding, once the data comes out, there may be a rough version of the data that they can kinda gin up some, you know, representative example of what it might be, and then there'll be the final data potentially that comes out, which was what we'd actually have to work with, but when the data is received, it's my understanding that it takes about four days for them to produce a map, or multiple maps. So, I, I don't know what that has to do with, maybe it has to do with getting it in the computer or something, I, I'm not sure. But, anyway. So, we have roughly 90 days to accomplish this. Now, I, Mr. Penley and I have been in conversations with both the county attorney's office and in a meeting with people that went beyond that group, meaning county representatives. Sabrina Slack, who I know well, is the assistant county attorney that's been designated to be in charge of this. And again, she's just been, she's a wonderful person, and she's very easy to work with. We clearly want to take them up on their offer to work together with them. But in the course of the conversation with the county, a couple of things struck me as issues that, you know, I wanted to present to you all, recognizing that, you know, I wanted to protect you in the sense that, and it may not be, and, you know, your feedback may be, we're fine, you know, we don't care. But I have sent you a number of dates that they've proposed. I don't know how you feel about those dates, they're meaningless to me, other than I do think it's gonna be like herding cats to get seven county council people and five school board members together. So, everybody's gonna have to be flexible in accomplishing this. I know some of you want to meet after 5:00 PM, and I think that's, you know, something that we need to impress upon the county. The location of the meeting that they're suggesting right now, but it's not carved in granite, they're not saying, you know, this is it, they're proposing that we meet in the county council chambers. That would, they say that they can get everybody up at the dais, all, what would it be, 12? That's kinda struck me, you know, I just know 10 years ago, I was laughing with Mr. Persis, because he was in the county council 10 years ago. So, I remembered seeing him sitting at this meeting, I just kept visioning him there, and I'm thinking, he wasn't on the school board, how, why am I seeing him as well? He was on the county council. So, the 10 years ago, what we did was, we got a big room at the old courthouse, and we created a square of tables with chairs, so that everybody was looking at one another. That's not what's being proposed. Maybe you care, maybe you don't, but I did want to, to bring that to your attention, so you could give me some feedback on, and I think, you know, what's following this presentation and our discussion is going to be, I'm gonna obviously be contacting the county and giving them some feedback on what you, you guys said tonight. So, that's, that's one issue. Another issue that struck me is that the way I understand they're approaching this is they have staff, person, or persons who are going to use some criteria that they've come up with to pump out some maps without any real involvement from any of the elected officials in advance of those maps coming out and becoming public. Now, they certainly can be modified, you don't have to accept any of the maps, and I get all that. It also can be politically sensitive, if, you know, one of these maps takes in a part or all of a city, or something that, you know, you're not happy with, and then that becomes politically kind of difficult. So, I don't know that you want to accept their best shot at five districts, or if you want to talk about some criteria and have our people or someone representing you make sure that those criteria are more implemented, because you could have very different maps. One goal that is, has been stated, and it would be a good thing, but certainly not required, if the five districts were mirrored one another, it would be, you know, make it simpler on the supervisor elections. That did not happen last time. The school district did not go along with the county's approach. So, you know, it's not required. Some of the criteria they're using, first and foremost, that the elected official be in the district, reside in the district. That's, you know, pretty important. The second, you know, or I'm not, there's no particular order to this, but they're talking about drawing lines consistent with community interests. I think that probably talks a little bit about municipal boundaries, it talks about rivers, it talks about roads, and, you know, that's, of course, I think, a good criteria, one of the criteria to apply. So, you know, these, these are some of the things that I need some feedback on. Let me see, what else I've missed here? I, oh, just mentioned this, 10 years ago, because we had so much time to work with, we made a very concerted effort to bring community in on the process. We invited chambers of commerce, we invited cities to comment. It was, as I recall, important to some cities to try and, you know, have their, their city entirely in one district versus another, and not split up. Obviously, that's not possible to accomplish completely, because there's just no way to divide them up and not have some cities get divided, but you may have some other criteria that you want employed. So, first question in my mind is, aside from these dates that I've sent you, is how do we feel about the location of the meeting, joint meeting? The idea here is, I'll just add this, if the census data comes out in September or August, sometime early October, there would be the maps created. And then in mid to late October, there would be at least one, if not two, joint meetings with the county, where you guys would be looking at maps, giving feedback, they'd go back and create more maps, and may have, and may have to have a second meeting. And then, of course, from there, if we can, you know, we gel on a particular map, and then we start the ordinance process and bring it back to you in, like, mid-December for a vote. So, I throw that in as well. But in my mind, the first question is, how do you feel about the proposed location of the meeting, the arrangements for the meeting, so that I can respond?
Ms. Burnett, we'd like to start with you.
Yeah, so I think that we all should be on the same playing field, we should be equal. So, sitting at their dais is not a big positive, in my opinion. I think we should all be eye-to-eye equal. And you mentioned at a square table before, I think that's where it should happen. I know, for me, I work during the day, as well as Mr. Cologne, so some challenges there with timing, and so I would definitely appreciate 5:00 in the evening to start. And, and I definitely think we need representation, we shouldn't just give them carte blanche for, for making decisions for the school board.
Okay.
Ms. Haynes?
I, I totally agree. I think that I'm not in favor of meeting in their chambers, you know, and all of us just sitting around where you can't even look at people. I, I think we need to be level, I think it needs to, you know, be set up as a square rectangle. I'm perfectly fine with it being at that time of the day. I also, I really don't want to have them generate maps before we have any input, because the minute they generate them, they're gonna be released somehow, and then that's just gonna open up, you know... Yeah. It, it's gonna be like a can of worms, and, you know, if they're, if they generate them and they're happy with them, why will they even want us to come to the table, you know, to have a discussion? So, I'd like to see a discussion, and us to have the ability to have input on the maps prior to, you know, maps being released to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Mr. Cologne, Mr., let's do Mr. Cologne, that came out of my mouth first.
So, I agree with all of that, and I'm also concerned with the fact that we're gonna be like sardines in that room. It really, the chambers is not really big, and when you're bringing two bodies together, I don't think there is the space there. I think we should be willing to open up one of our schools. I think we may have schools that have a large enough learning commons.
Auditorium.
Not that I'm particular to anyone, where folks can come and, and be a witness to it, should they opt to. You know, I think there's actually more involvement with school board and county council in the last few years than in years past, seemingly. And so, I think we may generate a crowd that, and so, to have 12 people sitting on top of each other with, you know, COVID and no end in sight, I don't know how smart that would be. And so, that's why, that's why I, you know, and so I also agree in having the representation, but, you know, and I'll suggest this, and maybe I'm the only one, but, you know, I think we should workshop this, just to understand the process from top to bottom. I've gotten bits and pieces, I spoke to Lisa Lewis, and it just happened that that same day was the meeting with Mr. Penley, Lisa saying, I mean, you know, you haven't heard anything, and I'm like, well, not since they asked for our address, and it's like, so I think, understanding the process, but again, I agree with you on the maps part, I think, you know, and, and again, going to the politically sensitive part of it is, you know, what if there's a community? My understanding was that 10 years ago, you know... you know, Lake Helen wanted to be a part of Deland, now I'm ten years, I mean, I wouldn't even pay any attention then. And so that's how I, you know, the map ended up going around where the person who represents Deltona Enterprise O seen also represents Daytona Park Estates way on ninety-two in Deland. And there's, and so there was a story behind that, and so understanding the process, understanding the timeline, understanding, I, I think will be import, I, I would ask for that because you know, it's not a matter of just what do I want versus, you know, what's the process and what's the right way to do it, so that's my thought, thank you.
Mr. Persis.
Well, since this is my third time doing this, cause I was, I was the mayor of uh uh Ormond in two thousand, and even all the cities have to go through this.
I thought you were still in elementary school.
And the, uh, yeah, and I can, let me just put you all your minds to rest, it's, it's, it's a wonderful process, actually. It's a, it's a learning process, and they, the county has, the the county will be able to tell you how many people live on each block. They will get that map and they, and you might say, you know what, I've represented that street for that, I, I need that street, well, they'll tell you, well, if we add that street, they're gonna add twelve people, you know, and they'll come up with a map first that will um put well, first thing, the first thing they'll, they'll do is show you how the population has changed since two thousand ten. And while maybe Volusia had five hundred thousand people and maybe Volusia has five hundred and fifty thousand now. So your district has changed, and they will try to make each district down to within five people different from each, each of us, now, we are allowed to go a little bit beyond that, but really, they wanna keep it as close as possible to each five of you. And uh, it's, it's just fascinating how they can, they'll come up with the, the first map or two and you'll look at it and you'll go, wow, that's, that's pretty darn good, I mean, you know, I can, I can live with that. There will be give and take, there has to be, there's twelve of us, so it's not like everyone's gonna get exactly what they want. But they will do everything they can to keep each city intact, and they will uh try to keep your district pretty much as close to what it is now, but given the fact that your district probably has more people in it now, uh, so they'll have to massage that a, a, a little bit. Personally, I've talked with my county council uh person in the same district that I, you know, for, who was Heather Post. And uh, uh, I said, Heather, I already know with the growth in L P G A a- area that, that our district is gonna change, our district is almost the same now, except I pick up DeLeon Springs, which nobody can understand why, and Jamie picks up Pearson, and it's just like, why doesn't Jamie represent both? And, you know, so.
I know, I drive past the one to get to the other.
So, I mean, you know, that's a correction that can easily be, be made, and I've talked to Heather and I just said, you know, we, I can, either way, you know, I mean, i- i- a couple of blocks here, a couple of blocks there, it, it, it isn't going to matter. I think uh there is a, there was a number of Volusia County Council training rooms, uh Ted, that if you're suggesting, and I agree with e- e- everyone, the, the official dais isn't the best place, so, but there are uh training rooms there, Ted, where we could all so- circle around, they have the, the visual screens and uh we'd all be uh looking at that. And it isn't, it isn't, it won't be the county telling you anything, the county will just say, here's one way that it would be pretty even and get your r- r- reaction to that, so they would just and everyone just keeps talking, talking through it. Uh, there isn't any, you know, strong arm thing, but at some point, it's kinda like, well, if the district four people, school board and county council, they agree, this could work for them, then they'll go to district three, you know, at some point, at some point, all twelve of us ha- have to say, okay, I, I can live with this, but if it gets to the point where the school board folks and the county council folks aren't, you know, that they, someone's not gonna give, uh, then they'll say, okay, fine, all right, then they'll just go to school board and say, okay, school board members, what are the five districts, how do you want it to look? And they'll, they'll do that, I mean.
So that's why we're, that's why we look the way we look now, because I've got DeBery split in half for county council, but not split for a school board. And then, like you said, you come over and grab McGinnis, you know, and Ruben goes up and grabs Daytona Park Estates.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, it's ki- it's kinda crazy.
Yeah, it is, and, and, and they will, I know, know that, and they'll probably, the first thing you'll pro- probably see is a more concise district, that's what they try to do. Uh, but it, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be interesting, and I can't remember, Ted, how many meetings it took uh for us to, to, to reach, it wasn't, it, yeah, it, it wasn't long, I mean, I mean, cause there's only so much, you know, I mean, it has to be equal, and you wanna kinda keep where you are now, but correct anything that just seems like, eh, you know, I don't need to go there.
I anticipate Ruben's city of Deltona is gonna be oh, way over a hundred thousand, and I think that's probably gonna drive, that's probably gonna drive the rest of us.
And see, when, and when he has the density like that, then his district in, in the geographic area can be small because so many people li- live there, I mean, that could work out great.
And I'm spread out, you're spread out.
Oh, I, I go from, I go from the Astor-Seville line all the way to the DeBery-Seminal County line.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I too agree with all of you, I don't think the dais is the proper place, it should be on neutral territory, I wouldn't mind the old um courthouse, it's kind of official and it has the ambiance of, of that. Training room is fine, uh, and a school would be great, uh, is it going to be a public meeting?
Yes.
I'm sure a lot of people might wanna come, so.
It just struck me, but what do you, what do you think of a basketball stadium?
Basketball stadium?
You guys could be, you know, one of, at this, one of the high schools or something, you guys could all be in the center and then the public could be sitting up in the bleachers, no?
Probably better on a stage, like at Deland High School.
Deland High, Deland High School.
Deland High School Auditorium.
Is it big enough?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I, I will, I, I, it, it won't generate that much public interest. Trust me on that, there may be a few people who are thinking of running for office against one of the twelve of us, now, now they may be interested, you know, to see where the lines are drawn. But it's, it isn't anything particularly in this year that I think is gonna.
Yeah, I just.
I think it's more important for us to be cozy and look at each, each other and be able to see the screens really well and be with the, with the um, the uh facilitators of it.
So I agree with that, what Ms. Burnett said at the very outset.
Yeah.
You have your consensus.
Okay, well, I mean, help me, because what I hear Carl saying is inconsistent with the other four, potentially, certainly, I hear we're not meeting at county council site, fine, I get that. Um, to what degree are we going to be a part of the initial process? In other words, we have an employee, I understand, named Josh, that is really, really new. I think you've assigned him to this.
No, that's the guy from the county, he's the new one. Whoever, whoever was retired, there was a person who'd done it forever, I don't have retired.
The district has somebody uh involved, Mr. Pendley said he didn't even know who he was, he was so new to the district.
I have no idea.
I don't, the only Josh I know is a brand new principal.
Josh is from, Josh is from the county, he came from.
Oh, he's from the county.
So he came from Lake County, but this is the guy, the guy who traditionally did the census.
That was Harrington, I think his name was.
He, he, he uh, uh retired in June, and so this new guy is working this process now, and so he's learning.
So I, I heard four of you say you weren't comfortable with the county just running the show, but then Mr. Persis kind of said, don't worry about it, so I didn't guess.
Full confidence, it's, you let, let.
Okay, but we haven't done it before, you've, you've, you've done it before.
I know, but it, it is, it is a, it is a, it is a Lisa Lewis Elections Office that kinda, you know, oversees this, and she uses the, the county, um, Volusia County em- em- employees who are involved in all the maps and data and all of that.
So, Mr. Persis, since this will be your third time, you, you were there the last time.
Yeah.
So, but you were on the county council at that time, so is, I mean, the outcome was the school board and the county couldn't agree.
Yeah, we had, almost, we almost had it, and then, I don't wanna call out names, but there are some people that just dug in, you know, said, I just wanna keep my school, I've always represented this school, and I was just like, oh, please, you know, I mean, it was, you know, some of it got really.
See, all of us are elected officials from our districts, but we represent the county.
Yes.
They too represent the county, and I think we should all participate, because we're all equally elected officials representing the citizens of Volusia County, so we should all be equal and, and find a, a nice place that's neutral for all of us to talk to one another and look at each other and be part of the process. Agreed. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying we, the district is not going to have anybody involved
I, I think.
during the writing of the lines.
I think we should.
I think we should.
No, I think we should.
I'd like to be involved.
Well, I'm saying, this is what he's saying, no, but you guys are saying yes.
Yes.
So I need for you to, to solve, resolve that.
I, I don't know who it is that could represent all five, all five of us.
Ted.
Well, can't we all go?
No, I mean, Ted's not gonna know what you want for your geographic areas.
Well, that's why I say we should workshop the idea of.
You can't, it's not gonna be that hard, I, I know you guys is, you started worrying about it.
But see, we would like to learn too, you already know, but we would like to learn that as well, we would like to have your experience, so allow us to have that experience by participating.
Yeah, it, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty simple, I mean, there aren't too many options.
Okay, I, I don't mind simple, but let us participate.
Well, I mean, I understand you said there's not a lot of options, but there's.
They didn't agree last time.
There's a lot of options in the sense that you could, you know, I mean, the districts can be, look, from what I understand, and this is all speculation, but everybody agrees that uh District Five is gonna be substantially geographically shrunk, you know, in size.
I, I don't know that he'll shrink, but he's, he's, Ruben's gonna have the most people, I mean, they were close to a hundred thousand ten years ago.
A lot of his outlying areas are gonna get given up, and his, and geographically, his district's gonna go down in size.
But.
Because there's more people in the city.
But I don't, I don't think he's gonna be upset, I mean, listen.
No, I didn't say he'd be upset.
Yeah, no, but like, he's got, he's got this little Daytona Park Estate part, but those kids actually go to George Marx, Deland Middle and Deland High, but yet, they're like cer- it, it's like.
I love Daytona Park Estates.
Huh?
They will make it, they will make it as concise as they possibly can to where you live and, and without dividing cities, that's, you know, that's what.
But the county divided cities.
I, I, but what they would prefer to do is not divide, cause it makes it easier for the, for the electorate that are voting, and that's why they try to match up.
I mean, Mrs. Burnett in particular is gonna, you gotta have divided cities, or you're not gonna be in your own district. So, you know, so I mean, there's gonna be divided cities and some, you know, I, I saw some squirrely stuff in there, like you represent people on the south side of Mason Avenue in Daytona Beach.
No.
You actually, yeah, it's in the map, you actually go across Mason Avenue, now, you know, it probably was just a necessity to bring enough people over to you.
Yeah.
But there's, there's gonna be.
Well, it, it's even this, it's like, it's like you take the city of DeBery and half of the, like, I'm talking elementary, half of the city of DeBery goes to DeBery Elementary, the other half of the city of DeBery goes to Enterprise.
Right.
Well, Enterprise is represented by Ruben, but DeBery Elementary is represented by me. All of DeBery votes for District One, the school board, but DeBery, but where it's split this way for the elementary schools, it's, DeBery is split this way for county council.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's weird.
And that isn't good, I mean.
Well, and how many different runs do you want, I mean, they, they could do several, like, I think there were two or three options where they said this, or they said this, and it was very different from the first one.
Yeah, and they do it best they can to keep like, you know, major thoroughfares, you know, like ninety-five or
or seventeen.
Seventeen, nine-two, this side and that side and block it, but they will show you.
Because I even think for McGinnis, you have this side and I have this side.
I know.
What does it you need from us tonight?
Well, I need two things, yeah, because I'm, you, what you're saying is I'm, I'm getting close to midnight. I need two things from you, I think, one already is very clear, where we don't wanna sit at the dais with the county council, and we need to come up with another location and everybody on equal footing and looking at each other. The second thing is, to what degree do you want to just turn this over to staff, uh, basically on the county staff and just let, let it fly?
It sounds like the majority says no, they don't wanna do that, so let's go.
Then, then how do, have, you, you, do you have any thoughts on how we would accomplish that?
Tear drop.
We'd be there, we'd participate.
Yeah.
We wanna be there.
Well, you can't, you, you can't sit there while they're drawing the lines, I don't think. Um, when you say participate, I mean, they're, they're gonna be, it takes four days to come up with one map. So you, basically what we're saying is, is somebody from the district gonna be there understanding what each of you wants, or, you know, it's interesting.
So, so Mr. Persis was saying that, that Lisa Lewis's team draws the maps and then we look at them. Why, if, if it's Lisa Lewis's team drawing the maps, not the county council, let's let her do that.
Oh, yeah, it's not the county council.
And then, and then let's, let's review it.
As a county council member, I didn't see anything until the school board did, I mean, we all walked in the room and said, okay, here's where we are.
Yeah, now, I, I feel better with that, like Lisa, I feel great with Lisa if her team were drawing maps and, and both sides saw them together.
Lisa is definitely is the one that tries to guide this whole thing.
Cause Lisa's, Lisa does a wonderful job with everything she does.
I trust her.
I trust her also.
Yeah.
Okay, so then.
And then we'll, and then we'll get together and we'll.
Basically, what I need from you then is, uh, the only other thing is, if there's a date on this list that is just an absolute no-go.
The, the, the September twenty-third is a F S B A meeting.
Oh, September twenty-third.
It's the twenty-third and twenty, twenty-third and twenty-fourth, yeah.
Okay, so that's a no-go date?
That's a no-go.
Um, okay, well, I think that's what I need, then, I think I've got everything I need.
They had, um, November eleventh, I can't imagine they would meet on Veterans Day.
It's Veterans Day.
Yeah, that's a good point, but then these are, these are their dates.
I know, I know, someone was just.
They probably forgot.
Yeah, they probably did.
Okay, I, I only, I do apologize, but I have, um, there is a date in October.
I couldn't meet October fourteenth, was that a date, Ted?
October fourteenth is a date.
Yeah, October fourteenth.
Looked like they were picking Thursdays, as we.
They're all Thursdays and Fridays.
Okay, I'm not available because of the Florida School Board Association, um, October sixth through eighth.
And those days aren't on there.
Are they on there?
Yeah, they're not on.
October sixth through eighth is not.
Okay, but do you wanna make a note so that they don't like choose this?
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, cause October sixth through eighth, I have to be at the state board of directors meeting.
And the fourteenth is the teacher of the year nominee ceremony.
Ted, can you call out the October dates just real quick?
Yes.
The tentative.
Tell us the dates again.
Yes, here, here, here are all the dates, if this is, if the census data is released mid-August, they're proposing September sixteenth, September twenty-third, September thirtieth. If the census data is released ni- on September thirtieth, they're proposing uh, October fourteenth, October twenty-second, October October 22nd, October 28th, November 5th, and November 11th. And they're, what they're talking about doing is having two meetings in this flurry of dates.
October 22nd, yeah, for me too.
I hope it comes out in August.
I'm, the sooner, the sooner it comes out, the better off we are.
I can't make those October ones.
Ted, did you want that October 22nd? I will be out of town.
Okay, October 22nd is no. All right?
The only one I, um, I can, I can go to any of them except the 14th of October. I don't think any of us would be able to go to the 14th, because that's our teacher of the year nominee reception.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, is there a day of the week that if they shifted these from Thursdays and Fridays to Tuesdays and Wednesdays, does that make it easier?
Tuesdays is not a good idea, because we meet.
I think they meet on Tuesdays.
Yeah, they meet on Tuesdays as well.
They meet on Wednesdays.
Tuesdays.
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 They used to meet Thursdays.
I'm okay for, I'm okay for Wednesdays.
Okay, well, I'll do the best I can with that and just get, you know, by email, I'll start getting some data.
I think they gave like a slew of dates, because they knew it would be so hard to line it up with 12 people. But Ted, if I recall last year, it was just two meetings.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think it'll go.
I mean, once you get in there, it's like, well, it's either this or that, I mean, you don't.
Yeah, I think the first meeting, if you, you just give feedback, and then the second meeting, they come back with the new maps based on the feedback.
Yep, 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 if not right then. They'll, they, they, they will try to please everybody.
Yeah. Okay, unless anybody has any questions, I think I've got what I need.
That's great.
To at least send her an email tomorrow and tell her what our thinking is.
Madam Chair, I'd still say I'd like to have a workshop to learn more about this whole process. I don't know how anybody else feels, but, you know, we're kind of, I know you know Carl.
I know, but what's, I don't know, what is there to, what is there to learn? It's just the map. And, and they draw, and they tell you how many people live.
Well, would somebody from the election official's office be able to come into the workshop and explain the process? Maybe that would be.
Absolutely, Lisa Lewis's office could.
You don't have to come, Carl. You're excused. Experienced.
Yeah, I mean, Carl, Carl's already experienced. I, I, he can be excused, but I'd like to learn.
It's fascinating.
You just know how many people live in every house.
So, so how are we leaving then? Are we doing the workshop, do you think?
I'm in favor.
See if they would just come out and, and just see if they would come out for half an hour and go over with us during the workshop.
Maybe our next workshop.
Explain it.
The next scheduled workshop.
That's what I'm gonna explain.
That's the 10th?
At our next scheduled workshop.
At the next scheduled workshop?
Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe, maybe, maybe she could be first, that way Carl can come in after.
Well, I do wanna, I do wanna say.
I was trying to.
Thank you.
I do wanna say, remind everybody, we're gonna be, the next workshop's gonna be about setting the goals for the superintendent.
That's fine.
So, everybody needs to be thinking about that. And of course, primarily based, if not exclusively based, on the strategic plan. But that's, that could be, you know, a lengthy conversation. So, just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Plus, I think there's, isn't there a third issue, Dr. Fritz? You guys threw out today at agenda conference, that you're gonna squeeze into that workshop?
Well, no, we, we have, this, you guys are gonna give me my goals.
No, there was a separate, whole separate issue that you said at the agenda conference, Mike.
I can't remember.
Do you remember that, Mrs. Cuthbert?
No, I don't, Aaron, Mike.
Oh, the legislative proposal, they, they want to throw into that workshop as well and get you guys to tell them what you want.
Kevin, Kevin was gonna do that at the board meeting. I mean, we could do it at a workshop or a board meeting.
How about the end of August?
It's, it's up to you.
This morning, you guys said workshop.
Yeah, but we could, I mean, really, it's about getting, getting your concerns for the legislation. So, I mean, if you wanna do it at a board meeting, we could do it at a board meeting. If you wanna do it at a workshop, you could do a workshop.
So, just so I can be clear, so you were thinking, asking Lisa to come like at 10:00 a.m. and give, and just inform the board how this all works? That'd be great, that's a good option.
Okay.
All right, I'll find out about that.
Okay, thanks.
Give you peace of mind.
You're so generous. Okay, is there anything to come before the board so we can all go home?
Nope.
Let's go home.
All right, thank you, we're adjourned. Good night.